Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We had some technical difficulties. This life in the world of Zoom sometimes gets a little challenging, so thank you for your patience. You are now joining us for the Yountville Town Council meeting, special meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. I will go ahead and I'll call the meeting to order, but before we go into roll call, I will read the following information about our teleconference meeting. This rate, this special meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to Government Code Section 54953B, related to teleconferencing of meetings. In addition, this meeting format is pursuant to the Governor's proclamation of a state emergency and executive orders where certain sections of the Brown Act relating to teleconference meetings have been waived. Town manager is present in his office. I am here in the council chambers. Vice Mayor Dorman and council members Moller, Dornbecker, and Durham, along with staff are participating remotely by audio and video in conformance with the Governor's executive order. I'd now like to invite the town clerk to conduct roll call and ask each member of the town council to confirm that they are able to hear the proceedings and they have today's agenda. Michelle?
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Uh, yes and yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Yes to both.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller?
Yes to both.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes to both.
Thank you. And Mayor Dunbar?
Yes to both. I am here. In general, members of the public may provide public comment via the following email, publiccomment@ytownville.com, and we know that we have received several emails. We will be reading those during the appropriate agenda items. Separate email comment is also available on the town's website by selecting the meeting agenda videos and eat comment button, which we have also received a couple. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to, I'd like our viewers to know, any vote taken during this teleconference portion of the meeting will be taken by a roll call, audible vote by the town clerk. In addition, public hearing administrative regular items that have representatives that are not staff will provide presentations as they would during a typical council meeting held in council chambers and will be called upon to join our, our virtual meeting to speak during their agenda item. So with that, and we have confirmed our role, if you could all join, and I'll invite our town manager Steve Rogers to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Steve, who celebrated his birthday yesterday, so we would like to acknowledge a happy day after birthday to Steve.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on now to adoption of our motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I believe Vice Mayor Dorman moves, seconded by Councilmember Dornbecker. Please roll call vote, Michelle.
Thank you. Count, Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to public comment on items not on today's agenda. We do have two that I'm aware of. The first one, Michelle, the town clerk, will read into the record a general public comment from, from Doilyne Marchbanks regarding gas leaf blowers.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, it is from Doilyne Marchbanks and it, and also signed by Sherri Brighte-Gyam, Janet Claire Gottsch, Penny Proto, Mariko Shigio, and it's Dear Mayor and Council, we request that you read this email as part of the general comments at the August 4th meeting on our behalf. On October 1st, 2019, the Committee to Ban Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers gave a presentation based on one year of research, listing all the reasons for the ban. A petition signed by 214 residents of Yountville was presented as well. In the 10 months since this presentation, we have not heard any official opposition presented to the council. Excuse me. We are requesting the council move forward with the ordinance and then consider delaying enforcement so residential and commercial businesses have time to change over their equipment. We are aware of the financial impact this may have on the small landscaping businesses in our town. We further request the budget be amended to allow a nominal amount for any licensed business that feels this is a hardship. Time is of the essence for our health, environment, and peace and quiet. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for our next public comment, I'm going to go ahead and put my mask on. I've invited Steve Rogers to join me here in the council chambers. And there he is. I'm gonna go ahead and stand, Steve. So what we want to do now, and hopefully you all can still hear me behind the mask, is we want to recognize Steve, not only for his 13 years of service here in Yountville, but his 35 years of local government service throughout the state of California. So with that, let's see if we could both get in the, in the shot. There we go. Staying socially distanced. This is a proclamation in recognition of 35 years of local government service by Stephen Rogers. Whereas Stephen Rogers was born and raised in the small town of Williamson, Michigan, and moved to California after college. He received his bachelor's degree studying political science at the University of Michigan. Do you have to do something now?
Go blue.
And his master's in public administration at the University of Kansas.
Rock Talk Jayhawk.
Whereas Steve was hired as Yountville Town Manager in October 2007. Previously, Steve served as General Manager and CEO for the North Tahoe Public Utility District. Past professional experience included Assistant City Manager in San Bruno, Assistant to the City Manager in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and Santa Paula, California, as well as Administrative Services Director in Indio, California. Whereas Steve is an International City County Management Association, or ICMA, credentialed manager, he also represents the town on several boards, including the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California, known as CARSAC, where he serves as the treasurer, the Regional Government Services, RGS, Joint Powers Authority, League of California Cities as the City Managers Department President, and Board Member of the Napa Valley and Yountville Tourism Improvement Districts, among others. Whereas as Director of Emergency Services, Steve has managed disasters and emergencies, including earthquakes, massive wildfires, floods, power outages, water line breaks, a mass shooting, and now a public health pandemic with COVID-19. Whereas Steve is active in the local Yountville and Napa Valley area, volunteering on the Boards of Directors and working with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, Yountville School Foundation, Yountville Kiwanis Club, and Leadership Napa Valley Program, Class of 22. In 2012, Steve was named Citizen of the Year by the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. Steve also has a reputation for donning colorful costumes in support of special events, holidays, and celebrations, always also wearing a smile. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, on behalf of the entire town council and Yountville community, congratulate Steve Rogers for 35 years of local government public service, including 13 years as Yountville's Town Manager. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, let's take a picture. Hold it up? Come on now. Okay, and we still smile even behind the mask.
And I'm just gonna be really brief and say it's indeed my pleasure to continue working in this organization and also to call Yountville home. I'm really, really proud of the organization and the employees we built and our commitment to doing what's best for improving the quality of life for all of the folks here in Yountville. So thank you very much. This means a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple things to put back together here, but I think we can, again, just on behalf of the entire council, I know that we could spend a good portion of this afternoon showing our appreciation for all the things that Steve does for our community. We will encompass it all in a great big thank you and a job well done through this proclamation, but also each and every day, let's make sure to show Steve and our entire team here at Town Hall the appreciation for all the great work that you do for all of us. I'll just get reconnected here. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay. We're gonna move on now. I don't believe we have any other public comment. Michelle, did anything come in while we were just doing that? All right, no? We will move ahead to our consent calendar, and we have items 6A through H. Believe we may have a conflict. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the advice of the town attorney, I need to recuse myself from item G, no, I'm sorry, item F, due to the nature and location of my tenancy here in Yountville. So I would ask, I guess we would remove it maybe for a separate vote, but other than that, I can vote.
Correct. If, I don't believe we have any other conflicts, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt consent calendar items A through H, except for F.
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Moller, second by Vice Mayor Dorman. Michelle, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we will entertain item F for a separate vote.
Moved.
A second.
Thank you. Motion, Councilmember Moller, second. Councilmember Durham, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
And let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Dorman recused from that item due to the location of her residency. We have no presentations, item seven, item eight, no public hearings. So we will go to our first administrative regular item, item 9A, Emergency Notification System and Supporting Infrastructure Presentation, Discussion and Possible Direction to Town Council Wi-Fi Ad-hoc Committee and Staff Regarding a Proposed Emergency Notification, Video Surveillance, Public Wi-Fi, and Cellular Communication Enhancement Systems Presented by Installation by Illumination Technologies. Before we go ahead and hear a staff report, I will just acknowledge that I did have a very brief conversation with Mr. Chris Canning, one of the presenters, just to confirm that he committed to a rather succinct presentation and that we were prepared to receive the information that they had to present. So with that, I will entertain an initial staff report, and then we'll move into the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and I really want to stress what this is not tonight. What it is not tonight is a proposal for action or adoption. The information that's being presented tonight is actually a starting point. Information has been shared with the Wi-Fi Ad-hoc Committee and the comprised of council members Moller and Durham, and they felt there was enough merit that this should be considered further. So again, I want to stress this is a starting point. The council would be asked if there's an interest, if this type of concept should be vetted further, and if so, they would come back to the Ad-hoc Committee, staff, the town attorney, council would figure out a process. What is proposed is a, a concept that they'll go into more detail, but it would be a lease of public right-of-way and a provision of various benefit, which they will go for and explain what they're starting with in discussions. And then it would be up to the town to determine if this project makes sense. In other words, do the benefits that they're offering to the community warrant the consideration in providing them access to use the public right-of-way? So they're providing potentially, and again, this is a proposal, a starting point, not an end product, of a variety of things, which includes a enhanced cellular system capability, emergency siren notification, license plate reader cameras at three key points for law enforcement, and an improved general cellphone service. So they will talk about their concept and their proposal, and I will turn it over to the Chris Canning, who is the CEO for Illumination Technologies California, to walk through a PowerPoint. And then what we will also do is this PowerPoint will be put onto the town's website after the meeting so that people can actually see the more detail. And again, I'm gonna stress, this is not high detail. This is really a starting point conversation in which we would go back and fine tune if the council finds that there is interest in doing so.
Thank you very much, Steve. Just, am I gonna be driving this? Do I have access, or are you driving the slide, Steve? Ah, there we go.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I assume you can hear me. I was having technical issues earlier. All right. I'm intending to give today my capacity as CEO of Illumination Technologies, not as a mayor of a up-valley city. And this is my first time in front of the town of Yountville, the town council, even though my original residency when I started in the Napa Valley almost 15 years ago was on Burgundy Way in the town of Yountville. So thank you for having me. If we could go to the next slide, please, and I will be brief to adhere to Mayor Dunbar's request. Illumination Technologies is the US division of a company that was started almost 20 years ago, 18 years ago to be exact. We have been in the telecom infrastructure industry for that period of time. We are a passive infrastructure provider. We are not a telecom or telecommunications provider. We basically build the infrastructure that supports telecommunications. But in our inception, our founder and the owner of the company, they're still the same person today, wanted to create a space for public safety, public benefits because of the situation that had occurred in his family. So everything we've done for the last almost 20 years has some sort of public safety or public benefit in the communities in which we operate. We currently have, coming up on almost 5,000 telecom structures throughout the world, and we are a little bit unique in the fact that we partner with municipalities, counties, towns, cities, before we actually partner with telecom providers like the AT&amp;Ts, Verizons, T-Mobiles of the world. And what we bring in our partnership is a no-cost solution for public safety or public benefits to a community. Products and services, we do a build-to-suit from start to finish. It's a turnkey operation from engineering through design, license permits, et cetera. In addition, we provide co-located facilities. We are carrier or telecom provider neutral or agnostic, so we play with all of them at the same time. So when we do put up a structure of ours, we can host multiple carriers on that structure. So instead of having three different structures, they can all be housed in the same one because it's not theirs to be had. And the multipurpose structures, you'll see in a moment what they can carry. Next slide, please. Our municipal program, our business model is quite simple. We're very upfront about the fact that we are a privately-held, for-profit company that operates in the telecom sector, providing zero cost benefits to municipalities. And as I said briefly, we come to a community, find out what their needs are. A couple of things need to be in effect for us to be effective in our model, and one is there needs to be a public safety benefit. There needs to be a necessity for enhanced cellular communications, and there has to be an interest by the telecom carrier for that particular geography. We provide all of the public benefits, and then we go out and lease the, the space that's housing or containing the public benefit to the telecommunications carriers. Next slide, please. Our wireless infrastructure that we provide is, there's a myriad of options that are out there. In some communities around the world, we do community alert sirens, we do security cameras, we provide free public Wi-Fi, street lighting, smart city sensors, things of that nature, and it varies depending on what a community's particular, particular needs are. Next slide, please. So the town of Yountville project that we're proposing, and the next slide. I'll explain this in one second. So what we have already done is we've done an RF, or radio frequency analysis, of the town of Yountville, and probably not to any surprise of anyone in this meeting or listening, the town of Yountville has at best weak cellular communications, regardless of who your carrier, carriers are. So the town of Yountville certainly would benefit from enhanced cellular communications, regardless of the carrier, but we do have the option for multiple carriers. We've also analyzed sound, this, a sound study of the town of Yountville for propagation of alert siren sound. And we have identified three locations, and well, there's a slide later on that'll show you kind of how the sound mapping works, demonstrating where the town of Yountville would best place sirens or could best place sirens to have the maximum effect on alerting the community to any potential emergencies. So on the map that you see here, the three red pins, those are what we refer to as our monopole structures. Those would house the sirens. They're about 60 feet high with the siren on the top. The siren is a spinning 360-degree audible device triggered by public safety officials. The 10 dots, yellow pins you see in between, those are 18-foot-tall streetlights that you already have running along your main street through Yountville. And these would simply replace the current, a few of the current lights that you have, and this would allow, the entire network strong together, would allow for downtown Wi-Fi in your downtown quarter, as well as your three major parks in the town of Yountville. So it's a total of 14 locations, two of them being at 60 feet in height. They would be stealth, camouflaged, look like trees. And then the other 10 sites that you see on the yellow pins are about 18 feet high, and they're designed to replicate the streetlights that you already have and be consistent with the look and feel you already have in your downtown. Next slide, please. This particular location, which is kind of at the northern end of town, is just to let you know where it falls relative to where your community park is. It is, all of the sites that we propose are in the right-of-way for the town of Yountville or fee-simpler controlled property in the, in the town of Yountville. This particular pin would be at the 60-foot-high level. It would have, and it would be adjacent to those trees, which would help hide it, if you will, but that would also be one of the points for a siren. Next slide, please. So the value proposition and the benefits to Yountville, first and foremost, in our almost 20 years of existence, we have never and we do not take any funds from any municipality or public agency that we work with. And the reason we're able to do so is because we take funds from the, or revenues from telecommunications carriers who desire to be in certain locations. We provide that venue on which they can place their equipment. And in exchange, they fund us to provide these solutions for different communities. So first and foremost, to be clear, there is not anything we're asking from the town of Yountville other than access to your public right-of-way. There are no costs associated. We pay all permit fees, all building permit fees. We don't ask for forgiveness on any of that. We will be constructing, proposing to construct mid-size to small wireless facilities, including the multipurpose poles, all in your, your town right-of-way. We will provide, has been cited to us as a strong level of interest within your community, a public wi, the equipment to have a fully-engaged Wi-Fi network in the three town parks. We will provide all the infrastructure. The actual provider and the relationship with the data carrier will be directly between the town of Yountville and that provider. We provide the hardware, if you will. You go to talk to someone and work with them on the data. We never want to be in a position to have any access to any community's data. We'll also offer the Tree CCTV, closer to television, and LPRs, which are license plate readers. These can be used for the purpose of crime investigation, or they can also be used for assistance in evacuation management, should that need to be the case. We, again, will have no access to any of the data collected through CCTV or LPR. That will be at the discretion of the town and of your law enforcement officials. And then you will have control over what these look like and where they go. We're simply proposing the best locations based on the sound mapping study and the radio frequency analysis study. What we can absolutely tell you is you are a desirable location for improved cell coverage by all of the major carriers. Next slide, please. What you'd be agreeing to in exchange for that is to provide us access to your right-of-way. We're looking for a term or an agreement of 30 years. There is a significant amount of upfront funding and capital improvements that we need to make, or capital investments that we need to make, even in advance of having tenants on our structures, if you will. So there is some risk to that. We do take care of everything from the acquisition of the technology to the installation, all the way through its maintenance and upkeep, and in some cases, improvements to the technology during the course of whatever agreement we come to. And in a 30-year term, it can be done in a 15-year, two 15-year renewals, or any variation thereof, as long as the first term is a minimum of 15. You would recognize and grant us the ability to enter into third-party relationships or agreements with AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. Again, we are agnostic to the carriers. We do not do exclusivity agreements. So that if your residents, you know, some of your residents have AT&amp;T, some Verizon, et cetera, nobody would be disadvantaged. It's just up to which of the carriers are interested in acquiring locations or replacing their equipment on locations in Yountville. And again, no need to tell you guys, regardless of who your carrier is right now in Yountville because of your circumstances, all would benefit from it. We would help you in seeking out a bandwidth provider for your Wi-Fi service. Again, we provide the hardware and then just the legal title to the facilities in terms of placing that equipment there, but beyond that, any of the data collected or anything of that nature is all yours. Next slide, please. From a project completion timeline, this is just a rough layout of how long it takes. The longest period of time we have, once we've partnered with the community and they've chosen which design element they would like, is the fabrication and delivery of the actual structures. And that can take up to 90 days just on that part, and then we put another 30 days in there to get it up and running. So it is relatively fast in some universes. Others would like it faster, but the reality of the situation is it's a 120-day turnaround from approval to design selection. Next slide, please. Some of the designs that we have available to offer, from left to right, left is the most basic, and these do show the siren on top. So to the left is the most basic. It's just the pole. And then moving over from there, we have a pine, we have a cypress, and we have a, on the far right, cedar, which looks to be the most, tends to be the most popular in Northern California. Next slide, please. And again, these would just be on the three locations on the outskirts of town, not the poles center town. This is actually a live photo, or a real photo of a structure that exists today off of Petrified Forest Road on the northern end of Napa County, just above the town, of the city of Calistoga. This is installed, active, and the siren is actually functioning at the top of that. Their first test for their citywide system is tomorrow at noon. A quick note on the sirens. We all unfortunately live in a PSPS-impacted area. The siren systems that we've chosen do not, and that we choose to work with, do not require PG&E live power. They are solar-powered battery backup devices. So they are independent of the normal power grid that we all operate off of, and that's for obvious reasons there. The actual cellular devices inside or equipment that inside or equipment that would be placed inside, those would be powered, um, and there would be, in some cases, alternate power required according to the California Public Utilities Commission. Uh, we use a monopole concept, which means all of the kind of equipment and technology goes on the inside of the pole, uh, versus the outside, uh, with the exception, some locations, we, uh, if the CPUC requires a generator, then we would have to find placement on the ground for that, um, all within the, uh, again, the public right of way. Um, and also in the placement of the poles, we've, were suggesting for the town of Yountville, they are as far from residential properties as we can get them, and they are not adjacent to any school or playground. And that is not required by law. That is just the best practice that we follow. Next slide, please. This is a cypress tree, also up in the northern end of the valley on Rosedale Road. Um, there you can see a little bit more demonstrated, the solar panel and the siren on top. Um, while there are cypress trees scattered throughout the county of Napa, uh, certainly they're not indigenous, but there are enough of them that this is a design element we have, and that some communities, uh, are interested. Next slide, please. So the pole, uh, that would, the poles that would go through the center of town, um, would be replacing some, and there, it's not every light structure. Um, they would be replacing, um, alternate poles throughout your town. So it's, as you're looking at the image to the right-hand side, where you see the crosswalk, um, it's the second pole back. Um, you can see kind of the imagery on the left hand of this slide where it shows you what that would look like. Uh, and forgive me, because I didn't mention, on the line with me today to answer questions as well, um, is our project manager and engineer, Richard Bobzell, and then my colleague Mar- uh, Marcela Hernandez as well. Um, but Richard, if you have questions about these specific, uh, locations or types of design, uh, he's certainly better suited to answer that than I am. Next slide, please. This is just, uh, an overview of the parks, um, that would be receiving the wifi coverage. Uh, the coloring is a result of signal strength, and what we'd be doing is placing enough of the wifi hardware to allow your enti- each of these parks to have entire, uh, entire footprint covered for public wifi benefit. Um, what we're offering up is one gigabyte worth of service to the entire, uh, town for these three parks in your downtown district. Um, how much is a gigabyte? Um, according to, uh, the broadband provider for a public wifi system, it, it's quite significant, unless you're going to allow your community, uh, to stream Netflix or other various sources with no limitation. Obviously, that's going to eat up bandwidth. Um, free public wifi systems, and it's important to point this out, are not intended and are not designed to replace home or business wifi service. This is a, uh, free public wifi systems are designed for the common area, um, parks, again, downtown, Main Street, et cetera, for the convenience of your residents and visitors to surf, uh, on their smartphones, et cetera, if they're in the park with their laptop. Uh, they're not intended to replace home systems. Um, if that were the case, um, and Yountville would want to be one of the only communities to do that anywhere in the Northern California area, uh, one gigabyte is certainly not going to be nearly enough to, uh, to cover you guys. But it is plenty of coverage, uh, and for the average user, can accommodate up to a thousand users at once. Next slide, please. This is a, uh, sound map study, and this shows, you'll see the three red dots again. Um, those are the macro poles, or, uh, the poles that will have the sirens on them and holding the cell antennas on the inside of the poles. Um, this is just showing you kind of the ripple effect of sound propagation. Um, for maximum propagation, you want to have a, a minimum of seventy decibels, um, being able to be heard by any resident, um, anywhere in proximity within your, your town limit. Um, one interesting comment we did get from, uh, a public meeting we did is, well, aren't you concerned about noise pollution when you activate the siren? Um, sorry, but the intent and purpose of the siren is to disturb you, and is to be annoying, and is to get your attention, seek further, uh, information. Um, so three sirens would be more than sufficient to cover the population base, uh, of the town of Yountville, and as you can see, will carry well into the veterans' home. Each of the sirens can be ac- activated independently, or all at once. Um, however, your public safety would so choose. And this is something also that our organization does not participate in, in the decision-making as to who or how you activate it, but we can share best practices from FEMA and CALOES. Next slide, please. The wifi information, as I mentioned quickly, it's a ga- uh, one gigabyte of data. You can't ask for more. Should you so choose, you would. Um, the town is entering into that arrangement with the broadband provider, and you are paying for that service. Um, it can cover up to, up to a thousand users at once. Um, and the town can't set the limits on, you know, how it's used. Do you allow streaming, live streaming or not, et cetera. Um, and we can help you with that, and partnering you with, uh, the right provider for yourselves. Next slide, please. Um, this is just an example of how you could set it up as a landing page. You know, you can have a different sign-in for visitors versus residents, that if you wanted to set different parameters for who can use it for how, powerful. Next slide, I think we may be at the end. Oh, there's one more, I think. Sorry. There we go. Uh, on the video surveillance, I wanted to put a specific slide on this because you have, you have expressed interest in it. Um, obviously, uh, especially in the state of California, this can be, um, problematic for some people, um, but we want to be very upfront, very clear that the data that you collect via the video surveillance, CCTV or LPR, license plate readers, is never accessible to us, never accessible to the general public. It's accessible to who you, as the town, decide should have access. Our recommendation is always you, to, to give it to, allow access to the public safety officials for the purpose of, um, solving crimes, um, looking back on. Uh, to do it live and in person all the time, uh, requires you some staff that you may not, uh, be interested in doing, but from an after-the-fact, or also from a evacuation management tool, um, it's very useful. And with that said, I will, um, be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Canning, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, and also appreciate your, uh, colleagues being with us today for potential question and answers. I'm waiting to see if the council has any, uh, hands they're going to raise with questions. Uh, yes, I believe we have Vice Mayor Dorman and then Councilmember Dornbecker.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Canning, for your presentation. Um, very interesting to see some of the details on this. Um, so you are proposing a total of thirteen poles within the Yountville town limits, correct?
Correct.
And the wifi reach, which you've shown the sound, is basically now for our three parks. It's not really up and down Washington? Or I didn't really know how to read the map with it. It had yellow, blue, green.
Sure. Um, Richard, if you can just, uh, clarify, and Richard again is our project manager and engineer. Clarify the reach of, the primary focus, uh, uh, Vice Mayor was the parks first, and then, uh, to get to the downtown area. Richard.
So with, with the parks, um, as far as the blue, the green, and the yellow, uh, those are the sound waves of the sirens themselves.
Oh, sorry. That's the siren. Sorry, I got my-
Yeah. Now, on these ones here, this, yes, this, this is, um, basic wifi coverage and what was proposed for covering the parks.
And so to cover the, our business district, we would have to have some additional poles? Is that how it would work?
Um, no, that, we could do it on the ten poles that we have currently.
Okay. And so now, um, since we're to it, the slide with the sound waves for the sirens, um, I noticed there seemed to be a swath of town between the two yellows. So does that mean that they don't hear the siren, or they don't hear it as well, and also up to the vets' home?
Um, so the yellow line, uh, on the outside of it is eighty decibels, and the blue line on the outside of it is seventy-five decibels, and the green line is seventy decibels. So the gap in the middle, they'll, they'll definitely hear it.
Okay. Um, I think that, Mr. Canning, you, uh, mentioned that there may have to be some equipment on the ground, and one thing that you mentioned just in passing was a generator. Is there a way to figure out upfront which of our poles would have to have ground pieces with them, and how big those would be, or does that come as you do your leasing?
No, we can actually, if you're expressing interest in looking forward, we'll do a full design and layout, um, for each of the locations. None of the downtown locations, so the short, the eighteen-foot poles or the street poles, streetlights, will need any of that backup. It's just the three, uh, potentially the three, uh, poles on the outskirts of town, uh, which carry the cellular communications, would have to have, um, back, alternative backup energy, and that's a recent decision, uh, which we happen to agree with, um, by the CPUC, uh, because of what, uh, we've experienced, um, in fires in the past. And that, that ruling by the CPUC applies specifically to areas that are considered in the tier one, two, or three fire-prone areas, and certainly the town of Yountville falls into that.
Okay. And so that, uh, I think that answers my next question, that on the taller poles, uh, there's going to be something besides the siren. Those are also multiple, multi-use poles.
Correct. And inside of those would be, those poles could, could house up to three carriers, or three providers, the AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. Um, but their equipment, because we're using a monopole concept, their equipment is hidden inside. So it's not going to be the case where you're, it's a, you know, bare pole with antennas hanging off of it, like we've seen in other parts of, uh, the valley. Um, these are all contained in camouflage. Should that be your choice? You do have the option, if you just want to go with a straight plane pole, to which we would have fixed the antennas, but there will be visibility in that.
Okay. And then the CCTV, that's, is that on one of these, I think you said, uh, that we would have control over what they look like and where they go? Would those be in addition to the thirteen monopoles?
So we would, whenever possible, we would put all of the technology on already an existing structure. Where we may have a unique element is if your desire is to, to have CCTV or LPRs coming into the community, and where there may not be one of our proposed structures, it would just be a freestanding, almost like a light pole, that you could have fixed that to. But I don't know if Steve wanted to address that.
If I could also, you're getting into some details, and I want to point out that there's still a little bit more work to do if this was to go forward, um, in terms of some of that. One of the things that I want to remind everybody is, some of these things, we're, we're using our existing light poles, so it very well could be that the license plate reader may be mounted onto an existing, um, streetlight. Um, the ITC team knows that they've been, they've heard from staff that less is more in Yountville. Um, we, we recognize that, but it does also, a- and I think you can see that we're trying to get a, a range of consideration while addressing some things in a way that, you know, at the end of the day, it has to be a determination if this package makes sense for both parties. But I do want to say, I, I want to be really clear to everybody. This is a, this is a starting point. A, a lot of legwork has went in to see if it makes some sense, but there's a lot more work to do, a- and neither party is willing to do the work unless we get a little direction from the council that this is something they, they want to pursue, because, you know, there's some fine tuning on locations and things like that. So I don't, you know, you're seeing a really good depth overview, but you, you know, when we go through, you know, depending on more meetings with the ad hoc, there could be some revisions and refinements based on your all's feedback and direction that comes back as we go through this process.
Thank you. And so I think this, uh, this last question I have, I think, is, is broader. Um, I know that there are a number of reasons we're looking at this, and a number of reasons it might be attractive. Um, one of them is to keep us in compliance with federal rules, as I understand it, and to give us maximum discretion in going forward in a compliant manner. Um, I noticed that on the little dots, the yellow dots, it said four G. Um, I thought part of the federal push-down was five G, and how that would be located. So does this take care of us on that scope?
In the short term, yes, yes, sir. And then let, the first thing I want to say is, what this does do is give the town a level of control, because we've entered into, and now we can tell a telecommunications provider, we have these facilities, go use them. I want to be really clear, um, AT&amp;T could come to town and say, we want to slap these things on fifteen of your streetlight poles. And there's a process, really in about ninety days or less, that we have to go through and potentially allow that. So Vice Mayor Dorman, you're correct that part of this is an attempt to manage that relationship. Uh, we do require stealth, but there's, you know, the FCC has done a really good job of taking away local control of, um, small cell site control and placement. So that is the one advantage that something like this has, is we make the determination of how that would go. Um, I think as we all learn, I, I'm not a four G, three G, I mean, I can't, I can't get anything more than LTE on my cellphone here in Yountville. Um, so, you know, we're probably going to be at six G before the, um, too long. So I, I don't know from the technology standpoint, I'm going to assume that the technology is scalable, and that's really more of a ITC question. But, um, you know, I certainly know, we've heard from a number of people that would like to see more reliable cellphone service.
But I, I think that could, it could also, oh, I'm sorry, Steve, it could also be addressed. I think, uh, uh, either, uh, Richard or Chris could probably address that technology. Uh, the, the, the reason for the four G, how it relates to five G, and what that all means to the literal and figurative bandwidth in town.
So there's, yeah, there's, there's obviously a lot of discussion around five G. There's two type, two different types of five G. There's five G broad, and there's five G millimeter wave. The millimeter wave is the lower-profile poles that you see tend to be more densely, uh, uh, more dense throughout the community. They can't be, I think, Richard, any more than five hundred feet apart. Um, the three macro poles that you'll see, they're five G carried on the four G bandwidth, so they're able to carry more data, but it's a different, um, basically, it's a different concept of pushing the data. Um, this will, hands down, improve the situation for cellphone coverage, without a doubt. And that, while that's a public convenience from a day-to-day, it's a necessity when we get into the emergency situations that we've been experiencing over the years, um, which is also, you know, we call it, uh, it's a kind of a dual public safety benefit and improved cell communications, as well as the public safety benefit of the siren or the camera. Um, but at a future date, um, should this community want to be a five G, uh, lead, um, millimeter wave, then you will have that ability to make that move.
So let me just, thank you. Let me just clarify that if we would go with this program, uh, and a carrier came in and said, hey, I have the right under this federal law to put a pole here and do my thing here, we would be able to say to them, no, sorry, you have to use what we've already set up?
So, uh, let your attorney answer, but you can, as long as you have an alternative under the FCC Act of October two thousand and eighteen, as long as you have a viable alternative for placement of their telecommunications equipment, you are off the hook on that. Now, if all of these were to be filled, and a new provider, a new carrier showed up, you know, Vice Mayor's Telecom Services, um, and all of your options were filled under the FCC Act, they have a hundred and tw- you have a hundred and twenty days to approve the placement of their structure before they're allowed to just, in effect, go ahead and place it.
Well, let's, uh, let's hear our town attorney, Gary, follow up on that.
Yeah, that is correct. So the town's ordinance will still be in place. This is going to be a separate process by agreement. The point is to have some system in place for them to use the infrastructure, and this would be the system in place to use it. Um, but Ms. Randy is absolutely correct, that if this system did for whatever, fill up, and didn't meet their specific need, then it's conceivable that it could happen.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Ah, yes, thank you. And, uh, thanks, Chris. It's great to see you with a different hat on.
Nice to see you.
I'd like to also refer to the, um, slide that we looked at with the, you know, yellow, green, and areas where you were talking about the, uh, the parks. Could we look at that slide again, please? Because I, I'm trying to visualize, it looked to me like you were talking about thirteen poles that would go down Washington Street from, uh, south to north. But on that, on this particular slide, it looks more like, um, they are arranged closer to, um, that there are a, a whole bunch of them on Oak Circle, looking at the, uh, Vineyard Park. See, in here, are those all poles? See, in here, are those all poles that, yes, those. Are those all poles that will contain these, go back, please? Yeah, thank you. Are those all poles that would contain the, the?
No, those would, those would simply, those would simply, that would not contain any telecommunications equipment. That would only contain the hardware for Wi-Fi. So there's small antennas, that I believe Richard affixed to current structures you already have in your park.
That would be your, the city of, or the town of Yountville's poles. So that's just for Wi-Fi.
I see. And I'd like to know, are you saying that AT&amp;T, Verizon and T-Mobile are the only telecom communications companies that you would deal with, that you would allow on the poles in the town of Yountville?
Yeah, we don't allow, we're not exclusive. We're carrier agnostic. So whoever wants expresses interest in these, we would make that available to them. We do not come into a community and say, you can only be an AT&amp;T or a Verizon or a T-Mobile community. They would all have fair, fair and equal access to the structures.
Does the town of Yountville have any input into the decision as to whom to accept and who to reject?
The FCC actually takes that out of your hands. You're not allowed to make that decision.
And?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
And the, the three cameras, can you show me again where the three cameras are intended to be placed?
This again is under discussion, but the, in consultation with our local law enforcement, they would be at the key entry points into town and they would be focusing on the license plate reader. So that would be the intersections of Washington and California on the south side, Washington and Yount in the center of town, and Washington and Madison. And the technology's been reviewed. We would actually, the, the town would actually have very little access to this. The anticipated use and the policy would be for, you know, solving an incident and, and managing the traffic flow. So, I mean, I want to be really clear, we're not, we, we don't have the staff or the interest in live feed monitoring. So this would be the type of situation when there's, something happens, they go look at the cameras to see if vehicles during that time period. And we've done some preliminary research on policies that we would put in place. So it would not be an intrusive surveillance camera or anything fairly common that's in place, including really technology that's in place already in a number of businesses in Yountville.
And I also want to, sorry, Maureen, I want to also remind everybody, we're not trying to figure out what kind of tree and whether it has pine cones. This is a very general kind of first look, very much the same as a recent presentation that I watched at the Napa County Board of Supervisors, where they were given direction to continue the conversation and potential negotiations for terms. That would still have to happen. We're not looking to try to settle terms or details. We're, we're, we're getting a broad look at, at the concept that we have had very much without any structure at all for several years now, when we said, oh, yeah, free Wi-Fi. People like the idea. This gives us an actual skeleton structure of what it could look like. And we have plenty more evaluation with our subcommittee to do. So i- if we have additional questions about kind of the general broad scope of this, that's what we're looking for today. Details to come. So, Councilmember Dornbecker.
Thank you. And I noticed that in the staff report, it did talk about having public outreach and information, an informational kind of meeting for the, our residents to learn about this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, I know we have three public comment emails that were sent in, Michael Bork, Pam Reeves and Rob Wiley. If, Michelle, you could read those into the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did receive one additional public comment from Stephen Miller, so I will add that to our list of reading. And the first one that I'll read is from Michael Bork.
And sorry, Michelle, before you go on, a reminder that we do have a three-minute public comment time limit for entries. Michelle will read them in a very appropriate and normal manner, just as would be presented live by the author. I will be very fair about that. If they are a little bit over three minutes, I'm certainly comfortable with extending, but not if they are significantly over the maximum time limit. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. I read the staff report on the above with interest. I think this should be approached with careful consideration and only with significant public participation. While the ability to provide emergency notifications and information in a crisis is a laudable goal, I believe the proposed solution outlined in the staff report goes further than necessary. Some of my concerns are that there are unresolved questions about the possible harmful radiation emanating from cellphone towers. Two, that towers, even when disguised as fake trees, are an eyesore. Three, that there is no good reason to add a surveillance capability. This is a slippery slope to be avoided by not getting started. Four, there is no need to develop a public Wi-Fi capability for residents or visitors. Adequate technology to access the internet appears to be almost universally available within Yountville. Finally, I suggest the town should pay for this if it considers it important. Technology providers have shown themselves quite adept at monetizing what we freely consume. Much has been written on this, this subject. It's worth reviewing before moving forward. Thank you for listening.
And that was Michael Bork, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Next email is from Pam Reeves. Councilmembers, I am concerned about the insulation of Wi-Fi poles in Yountville. From the staff report, it is not clear how many poles are actually being considered, nor where they would be located. In a discussion last year on this subject, it was also not clear that this is really a project to benefit the residents. At that time, the discussion was focused on creating a Wi-Fi corridor along Washington Street commercial area, including the south and north parks. If this were truly to benefit the residents, coverage would be aimed at areas where people who cannot afford Wi-Fi could enjoy it. But this is not intended for anyone but visitors and guests to make the town look upscale and technologically hip. What these poles will look like and how many services will be allowed to use them is also a concern. Would there be a limit of how many gadgets can be affixed on each pole? Also, with respect to any ancillary equipment, will it just be poles or are there supporting structures or boxes involved? The aesthetics of having these poles along our streets is questionable. I am opposed to having any kind of surveillance cameras or recording devices of any kind on the proposed poles or anywhere in this town. The use of cameras does not project a friendly vibe and is just unnecessary here. Surveillance for surveillance sake creates privacy issues and infringes on rights and liberty. If we are interested in a warning system for emergencies, that is a separate issue from Wi-Fi poles. It is not necessary to have Wi-Fi poles to have the emergency warning sirens. The subject of the public right-of-way is also front and center with this proposal. This town seems to be very enthusiastic about using the right-of-way for a bargaining chip. The kind of agreements and the term of use often seem to favor the applicant rather than the town, and the town right-of-way is tied up for excessive amounts of time. The future councils may be very disappointed by the long terms of these agreements. I am not in favor of proceeding with this project at this time. There are too many other projects that the town has dropped that could use the time, energy and manpower it is spending on this. Even if this has no upfront cost, the contract with a Wi-Fi provider for the town will certainly require funds. I would rather see the town provide a small fund for, for gas blower exchanges and spend the manpower on a ban which would benefit the whole town, as demonstrated by the petition and the work of the citizen committee and the planet. This Wi-Fi proposal is a pet project that can wait. Again, that was from Pam Reeves. The next comment is from Rob Wiley. As a newer resident of the town and as someone who would like to see more broadband competitions as well as better cell service in town, I was interested to reach, I was interested to read more about the potential public Wi-Fi slash communications infrastructure being considered in today's meeting. I have a very, I have very strong concerns about this proposal, including the fact that sixty-foot monopoles disguised as trees would be erected on town property. If one level of a building is approximately fourteen feet, we are looking at constructing multiple structures that exceed four stories. When I ran this by a CEO of a large inter-provide, internet provider in California, his comment was, and I quote, "Interesting. Cell tower company just trying to buy off small-town leadership with, quote, 'empty benefits' while putting huge fake trees on city property with no ground lease paid. Not a great deal for the public," end quote. Given his knowledge of the communications infrastructure space and his openness to progressive communications policies such as net neutrality, his comment immediately raised red flags for me. I do not think sixty-foot monopoles disguised as trees are in keeping with the character of the town. I certainly don't want one near my home. I am sure others will focus on the alleged slash potentially negative health impacts of that type of radiation. But so far, I have not read any studies which have confirmed the radiation emitted from such large structures is harmful. The aesthetics concern me as well as the, quote, "bad deal." For the public, if this right-of-way is to be donated, I do believe the town should be compensated for any space that is leased to a large cell provider. I believe the same functionality could be achieved with a mesh network with small transmitters affixed to the poles up and down Washington, much like the infrastructure you see in shopping malls and other venues. The reason for installing enormous cell tower, it, towers is so provider can rent the space on these towers to other cell companies, driving a huge revenue stream. I also find it somewhat strange that this proposal is cloaked under the guise of, quote, "emergency notification system", when frankly, there are a number of other means current and planned for notifying residents of emergency situations. In Marin County, I noticed for a while that every new tax proposal was cloaked in emergency preparedness. Let's avoid that here, please. I would ask that the council very carefully evaluate this proposal. To me, it smacks of the companies who volunteered to install, quote, "free red light cameras" in, in intersections of major cities, that turned out to be a disaster. I do appreciate that, that the town is looking for ways to improve our communications infrastructure, but I am concerned this is not the best path forward. Sincerely, Rob Wiley. And then our final comment submitted by Stephen Miller is, number one, Franken-trees do not belong in the heart of Yountville. Utility poles, quote, "disguised to look like trees" only appear as trees to people who don't know what trees look like. I would go with something that looks like a utility pole, so as not to cater to the few that don't know what trees look like. I strongly oppose surveillance capabilities and/or renting space to companies that use facial recognition. Please identify the light source and associated metrics: lumens, color, temperature, cone of illumination. Are there options that would allow for the town of Yountville to make decisions that would reduce light pollution and make the light suitable for stargazing? And that is by Stephen Miller, and that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Michelle. I don't believe we have any other questions. Are there comments from, because I'm going to hold my questions until a comment. Are there any additional comments from the council on this item? Basically, what we're looking for is determining if we want to continue the dialogue with our ad hoc committee and this company. So any thoughts from the council on that? Maybe from our ad hoc committee, who have been and will be potentially involved in that. Councilmember Muller?
Um, I just, we heard basically the very similar, if not the exact same, presentation from Mr. Canning after the staff looked at several other possibilities. And we thought that this was something that we should bring to the council and get their input.
Okay, Councilmember Durham?
Yeah, we saw the same exact presentation. And based on this presentation, we thought it'd be a good idea to move forward. I want to be clear, too, that a lot of the discussion from the presentation that they had, the ad hoc committee, was about cellphone service. You know, that's been a huge topic ever since the fires and the Wi-Fi is a nice aspect of it, but given the quality of wireless service, that was a big consideration for me because of all of the concerns. Ever since the fire, there's been issues because all the poles, so many poles burned down. So this is a reason we want to move forward. And as Councilmember Dornbecker brought up, there's public forum moving forward to have a discussion. This isn't something that we're just doing. And also, I think the public comments have brought up some valid points that can definitely be discussed and be assuaged. A lot of those concerns are topics that we discuss in the future as well. So I, I support moving forward with it.
Thank you. Other comments from the council before I offer mine? Councilmember Dorman? Our Vice Mayor Dorman, sorry.
Thanks. I agree with Councilmember Durham. I think the public comments brought up some really good points. And I think we will have some public dialogue on this. We are committed to that. I think it's worth looking at simply if it can help us avoid some pushdown from the federal regulations that will give us more control over our future, because I think it is coming. And if we can make it as palatable as possible, and that remains to be seen, but I think this is what this meeting is about, is let's start the process. So I'm, I'm pretty well suited to start the process, at least.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker, additional comments?
Yeah, I, I'm very keen to have public input from our residents on this issue. I personally have already expressed that I'm not, you know, really in favor of having cameras that, that are keeping track of citizens. And I understand that having them at the entry points of the town might serve a purpose. I'm still on the fence about a lot of these issues, so I guess the most important thing is to continue to talk about it. I, you know, I would not be ready to commit to going forward at this time, but I'm, I'm willing to commit to continue the conversation.
Okay, thank you. I'll offer up some points that I would like the ad hoc committee and the applicant or presenter, I should say, to consider and have conversation. I certainly, my first concern was the height of the monopoles. With a thirty, potentially thirty-five-foot height limit for construction in town, sixty feet is significantly higher than any development we have in town, at least to date. And even camouflaged, placed adjacent to other trees while it might help, I think there needs to be serious consideration given to what that visual impact would be. I'm curious about what the cost would be to the town roughly to negotiate with a provider for the value that we would get out of the, what I'll say, the, the main Washington Street poles, to get that public Wi-Fi capability also in the parks. I think there's absolutely no question there's a benefit to the residents to have better, certainly better cell service, but Wi-Fi access, especially given these days we're in right now, that outdoor activity, and that means being able to go sit in physically distance away from others in a park and actually be able to get work done. distance away from others in a park and actually be able to get work done, get schoolwork done, or just be able to do some work, activity remotely, wirelessly, makes sense. Absolutely. And, and for anyone that says this is just about tourists, that is, I think, a very narrow-minded and misguided focus. Our parks are our parks, as well as those of the folks that come visit, just as we go and visit other parks. You know, anyone with a dog that goes to Alston Park knows. So, I, I think that there is absolutely definite value to the residents as we talk about the, the park technology aspect of this. Looking at my notes, I was also concerned, we had the same conversation with solar panels when we built the solar array above the Yountville Community Center parking lot, about what would happen to infrastructure when technology outgrows it. And that's something that I, I listened to the County Board of Supervisors' presentation a couple of weeks ago. With that in mind, there were some concerns about the, the hardware and what would happen in the future. Using these basically as replacements for our streetlights makes total sense. We don't notice the streetlights, the street, the poles. We changed those poles out. They looked really different for a while. Now they blend right into the landscape. But, you know, the, the very tall monopoles I worry about, when I used to take longer drives and, and travel by car, could almost play that game of locating those, those towers. So, really concerned about the aesthetic and how that might evolve. Also, what the value is, there's, there's talk about, you know, your company, for example, gets all this value by putting your equipment in the right of way, and then you get to sell the, the service access to those poles. What the cost of our benefit is, the physical cost, the installation, the materials, if we were to try to build a wifi infrastructure, are we looking at multi-millions of dollars, several hundred thousand dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to try to do something like this ourselves? Or by entering into an agreement with an outside party like yourselves, what are we saving while still getting some community benefit? So, I'd be curious to have that, just general estimate offered up during the additional conversation. So, you can tell, I absolutely agree that we should continue the dialogue. I know the county is, I believe, feeling the same way, where they want to learn more before there's any kind of commitment, but I think it's absolutely worth looking more into. So, and I appreciate the time that you spent with the presentation today, and then I count on our subcommittee to learn more for us.
I appreciate it, appreciate your time. Sorry. And there, whether it be the public comments, the comments raised by the town council, not a single question was raised, that hasn't been raised to us before, and we certainly do have answers, options and solutions to all of these. Again, we're approaching almost five thousand of these around the world, so we, we have solutions and answers and options on all of that. All we're asking for at this point, as the town manager suggested, it takes resources to continue this dialogue. For us to continue that dialogue, and you, we just wanted to make sure that there was, see if, if there was interest in doing so before we commit more of our resources than we do in exploring this. There is not a shortage of interest because of what we're all facing, compliments of COVID-19 and the stresses on telecommunications, public safety.
Councilmember Mueller, your hand is raised?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make one final comment because the issue came up in, looks like three, two out of four comments, and that's related to health effects. I think that that is something that, when we bring back some more information, I would like to suggest that that be discussed. There's a couple issue here. It's not only the physics of how this works. I know a lot of people roll their eyeballs about little physics lessons, but I think it will be very informative. And then regarding the biology and the health effects, people tend to hear the word radiation and get very nervous. And some information, too, about, there's two very different types. One is ionizing radiation. That is a concern. It breaks DNA bonds. This is non-ionizing radiation. So, I will bring some information back about the physics, so we can all be on the same page, how this actually works, as well as some basic health information about what it is and what it is not.
Thank you. That would be appreciated, I'm sure, by the council and our community. Mr. Canning, any, any final thoughts, or are we, we all, we good for now, and then I'll ask for action?
No, I, again, sincerely appreciate the opportunity to, to share this today. We've had the benefit of working with your subcommittee and your staff to this point. They've been great to work with, and it's just a point where if your council would like to continue, then we'll commit resources to that. If not, understood. But again, not a single question or concern has been raised, and it gives me pause.
Okay, thank you. So, Steve, how much direction do you need? I think you've heard that the council's interested in additional communication. Do you need anything more formal than that?
Um, it probably would be best just for everybody involved to have that confirmed.
Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to the effect of, we'd like to continue the ongoing dialogue with our subcommittee members, which is councilmembers Durham and Mueller, to continue communication with elimination technologies on this topic. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion. Just with the change of sub, I prefer ad hoc over subcommittee.
Well, you, you can discuss that and make a presentation at the next meeting. Councilmember Durham motioned as second by Councilmember Mueller. Michelle, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Doran Becker? Is that a yes? Vice Mayor Dorman?
Aye.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes, I do think we need Councilmember Doran Becker's audible vote, so if you could find that, there we go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, it's five zero affirmative. Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sorry, Marcel, we didn't get to hear from you, but I appreciate you being on here as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. We will now move on to our next item, which is item nine B. Sport courts at Vineyard Park sound deadening. This is an item to considering adoption resolution approving a budget adjustment for purchasing and installing the sound deadening materials for the sport courts at Vineyard Park. And with that, we will start with, actually, I believe we have
I was gonna say, we have
Some conflicts of interest, yes. Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Again, I have, on the advice of the town attorney, will be recusing myself from this item due to the nature and location of my tenancy here in town.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
I, too, will be recusing myself at the, at the counsel of the town attorney, and I, am I to also leave the room or turn off the sound so I cannot hear? Yes.
Gary, what is the protocol for them to remove?
The requirement is to leave the room, and in the age of video conferences like this, I think that means to leave the meeting.
Leave the meeting? And then come back?
Until the item has been considered, and then we can reach out and have you rejoin. And as you know, it's your ownership and lease interest in real property that requires the refusal for the record.
Right, I live too close. Thank you.
And, and Carrie, I can place you both in the waiting room. You're not able to hear the meeting or contribute from there, and then I will put you back in after, just so you don't have to log off and log on.
Thank you.
Right, and, and I believe Yeah, we have to hear from our town attorney as well, our town manager as well.
We have one more disclosure. While I don't live in the immediate five hundred feet, I live within the five hundred to one thousand foot zone to this project, so I will also be recusing out of an abundance of caution.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to put you all in the waiting room and promise to invite you back. And Samantha, if you can just confirm that they are all out of our virtual room?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Thank you. So, I believe we're going to go ahead with a staff report. Joe Tegabashi, is this you?
This is me, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council who are still in the room. I appreciate your time this evening to consider a budget amendment, approving a budget amendment for purchasing and installing the sound deadening materials for the sports court at Vineyard Park. So, just to give you a little bit of background here, the, the sports courts at Vineyard Park have enjoyed increased regular use since reopening two years ago. The pickleball courts, four of them, and tennis courts, one court, court are open for play from eight AM to sunset seven days a week. Residents who live in the nearby area have commented that with the early start and increased participation, there is significantly more noise. In particular, the pickleball courts that are, are most often mentioned, which could include up to sixteen players max versus the four-player max for the tennis courts, are, are mentioned most often. Next slide, Sam, please. Staff has been doing a little bit of research. We found a product that helps reduce this noise considerably by up to twelve decibels on average. Product is commercially known as Acoustifence. So, just to give you a little background on sound metrics, fifty-eight to sixty average decibels for pickleball and tennis. Using Acoustifence will help reduce that by eight to ten decibels on average. The material, to, to purchase the material for installing the sound deadening is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and four dollars. That includes tax and delivery, and it'll take staff about three days to install, or one day per side for each of the three sides, and that's three staff members. That's around eight thousand dollars roughly estimate for the staff time. Next slide, please. The total decibel, so this is just giving you idea and, and trying to compare something to, to try to give you guys a, a little bit of a, an example on, on what we're talking about sound-wise. So, concert halls are pretty quiet, around twenty decibels. Conversation, sixty decibels. Air conditioner at sixty feet's about the same, and then a blender in your home is around ninety decibels. So, just to give you kind of something to compare what we're talking about. Next slide, please. This was some tests done at a court down in, I believe, Carlsbad. So, they were working with the same types of concerns that we have here in Yountville. So, in the evening, ambient distant traffic, which is what we have here in Yountville, and, and the other noises that are around, around forty-four decibels in the evening. Not much difference in that later on in the evening at ten PM, and at ten AM, a, a few decibels higher with the little bit more traffic at forty-nine decibels. Again, the normal conversation is somewhere in the sixty to seventy decibel range. Next slide, please. Pickleball noise without, with and without Acoustifence. So, without the Acoustifence, about, and this was thirty-two players, so about sixty-one decibels, and then with the Acoustifence, forty-eight decibels, so significant drop, somewhere in the ten to twelve decibel range. And their, their guidance was fifty decibels. That's, that's what they were trying to aim for. Next slide, please. This is just kind of showing you some examples of sound absorption, some of the test results and sound, sound transmission loss results. Next slide, please. This is what, what the courts looked like before the install. Next slide, please. This is what they're gonna look like after the install. So, the material is about a quarter inch to three-eighths inch thick. It goes from the very top of the fence to the bottom of the fence. It hangs with some stainless steel hardware. It, it is relatively thick, it is opaque, and that is what helps with the sound deadening material. It is all from recycled material, completely made and manufactured in the US and shipped out of Florida. There's about a, a three-week lead time, I think, on the material right now. I think it's important to note that we also had a discussion with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee on July sixteenth. We asked for a couple of things at the time from the recommendation and, and some advice from the P-Rac Committee. We, as you mentioned earlier, the start time is currently eight AM. Staff was recommending a nine AM start. And and some of the neighbors had asked for that, and so we thought their request was reasonable, and we recommended that we have a nine AM start time. However, the P-Rac on a three-to-two vote decided not to amend the hours and leave them as is. I think there was a question earlier about why the P-Rac decided maybe to not amend the hours, and I think that some of the practitioners of pickleball and, and tennis players as well, when they were commenting, asked that it be left to eight o'clock because of the cooler weather, and earlier start allowed people to, to get started a little bit earlier, and those who had maybe work or other considerations were able to get a game or two in and then, and then go on with their day. And also, it was a little bit more beneficial to have the earlier start. They did recommend on a four-to-one vote to approve the Acoustifence material to be installed with the one, uh, no vote, think, her, the consideration was that it was a bit too expensive for, for the time that we're in with COVID and all the other cost considerations we have. I think it's also important to note that the pickleball group is committed to contributing twenty-five hundred dollars of their funds to offset the funding for this project. Funding is going to come from a capital improvements projects fund, Fund Fifty. There is a current fund balance of three hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars in this fund at this time. The funding for this project will not divert funding away from any projects planned at this time or in the future. It is for that reason that we recommend you adopt the resolution approving the budget adjustment for purchasing and installing the sound deadening materials for the sports court at Vineyard Park in the amount of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and three dollars and seventy-eight cents. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Joe. Questions from the remaining council members at this time? Councilmember Durham?
Yeah, do you, do you see a possibility of setting different times for the tennis court versus the pickleball court? Would that be an undue stress on the staff?
Yeah, I think, I think we, there, there was some talk about some, that, that type of alteration or amendment, and I think any, any of that type of split shift or, or timing differential is, would make it tough to provide code enforcement. I think we'd be relying on the neighbors and, and other players to help provide that, and it's just not the best situation. Given, I, I think if, if, if that's where council is headed, then it might be better just to amend the start time to nine o'clock for both rather than for one or the other.
Very good. And then, who is the expert on pickleball balls to talk to in this, on the town staff?
Well, we, we did, uh, I, I thought I provided a couple of slides with some, and I, maybe I neglected to do that with some, it wasn't in this package, and I apologize.
That's all right, that's all right. We can just
There is, they did, yeah, they did do a little bit of, of research, that same group from Carlsbad did some research on different types of pickleball paddles and pickleball balls. There was a little bit of reduction in the noise, but I think the sound i- is from the, the playing equipment is one thing, but I think the main thing that we keep hearing is the participants, that the noise from the participants is, is much more of a problem, or, or equally as a problem as, as much as the sound of pickleball. But there are different foam balls and such that are available and could help reduce that kind of pickleball specific sound.
So, in your professional pickleball opinion? So in your professional pickleball opinion, then, and Samantha chime in at any time, it's not just about, the balls could be replaced. That's not going to make up the difference for this noise deafening material or quieting, absorbing material? What is your opinion on that?
Yeah, I think based on what we've done in research and what I heard with both the P-RAC committee and the public comment, it's as much of the noise and the exuberance of the participants as it is the sound of this equipment that is being, sports being played with. And Director Holland may be able to support or not support that.
No, it absolutely is. I think from a lot of the neighbors, the concerns that we heard were, you know, obviously, there's the kind of consistent thought of the ball, but it's also the noise that the players make, and they can even be respectful, and it's not necessarily screaming and yelling, but you know, when the courts are full, that's up to sixteen players because you can have four on each of the four courts, whereas tennis courts, you know, would be a maximum of four people. So, you know, I think that we're fully responsible for, you know, creating an amazing project out there that we're really proud of, and people are coming to use it, and that's part of why we're having this discussion is that increase in use. But definitely, the noise from the paddle and the ball is really only part of the issue that the neighbors are experiencing, so.
And I will say that we have done some independent studies of our own with our pickleball court using a a sound app, and it we went at different times during the day and the week, and it's on average around seventy decibels, and that's all of the noise, including the players and the balls and whatever else is going on. So, you know, it's sound is, it's, I don't live next to the court, so definitely different for my perception would be different, and my bias is different, but that's just for you all to consider as well as all the other information we've given you.
So can you speak to only doing three walls then? I don't know noise, but it seems like why wouldn't we want to contain it and just absorb it all instead of allowing it to escape in one area then? I understand it's to keep costs down, but is that the best way to still remove a lot of the noise?
Sure. So we relied on the vendor who, you know, provides this to a variety of installs for both pickleball, tennis, and other noise, sound projects as well. And his advice was to start off with the three sides, both to save a little money and for the fact that the side that is out towards the vineyard isn't really going towards anyone who lives there and won't generally be providing any nuisance to them. We thought about only doing the two sides and leaving the one side towards the restroom and out towards the north end of the park open. Two things happened. We thought that maybe we would open ourselves to trying to be accused of just not going the extra step that we could have initially. And the other part was the vendor said probably not a good idea because sound, the way sound behaves, it's going to bounce off some of those harder surfaces where if it's going out to the vineyard, there's not a lot of hard surface out there for it to bounce off of, so the echo effect wouldn't be as pronounced as it will be with the other three sides. So that's why we thought the three sides would be a good place to start, and if it's still too noisy, we can always go and get that additional side if need be.
Thank you very much. And this is for the meteorologist on the town staff as well, so please, anyone chime in. What is sunset? Give me a rough idea of what sunset is in the fall and what sunset is right now.
Right now, I think it's anywhere between eight forty-five and nine fifteen during the summer. In the fall, when the time changes, that decreases to between, you know, five forty-five and six fifteen.
And then in the deepest part of winter, you know, December, it's five fifteen, five thirty.
Thirty, yeah. So currently, our ordinance for all of our parks is sunrise to sunset. And just to give you background, when we renovated the sports courts out there, they were sunrise to sunset as well. But during the conversation of the project, the P-RAC discussed the need to set play times anticipating that increase in use and set the eight A.M. start time to sunset at that point. So that's how kind of the history of that has gone.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all the answers.
Councilmember Mueller?
I was just going to ask that exact same question regarding sunset. So I was, that's exactly what I kind of assumed. So when you discuss the hours, you just discussed the start time. You changed it from sunrise to eight A.M. And but was any of the sunset discussed at all? Because I know some of the neighbors have commented on that, too. What they're, I think what we're trying to do is find a balance, at least I'm willing to try to strike a balance on a temporary basis to see how it all works out. Was there any discussion about the closing time for pickleball?
That hasn't come up in, I thought I read all the public comment. I'm not sure if I, maybe I missed it of someone having concern about the end time as well.
For some reason, it seemed like the early time was what the folks that are asking for the sound deadening material, the early, they wanted the early start time amended. I don't recall them saying anything about the later playing time.
Sorry, Councilmember Mueller, I need to check with our town attorney. I'm not sure this falls within the scope of the item, which is about the sound deadening acoustics.
It's also about the time as well. It's also about the timing.
I'm asking our town attorney to confirm that.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so the question is whether or not a discussion of operating hours is relevant to approving the sound deadening equipment or the fencing. So I think it is relevant enough to have the discussion because hours of operation, I think, is what's led to some of the complaints and the need for the fencing in the first place. And I think that was part of the discussion in earlier committees in town as well.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that because it's not listed as what we are discussing on the agenda. As long as it falls in the scope, then that's fine. So Councilmember Mueller, go ahead. Thank you.
No, I think all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to just more follow up a little bit on the two sides, three sides, four sides. Joe, I would assume that there's a concern with ventilation. If we were to fully enclose all four sides, a warm day becomes a hot court, then we create a different potential problem. Is that? Have you heard that from the vendor?
I have not. The vendor said it will definitely stop, you know, it's going to be warmer inside that than it currently is because there's not going to be any breeze passing through there, but that wasn't a complaint that I was able to come across in either any of the research I did from the vendor or from the Carlsbad site. And that had a lot of information on what they went through and some of the, both the pros and cons of installing, and they did a four-side install, I believe. So it's definitely going to be warmer in there, but it's also going to be quieter outside, and I think those concerns, that outweighed the pros of having less sound for the people around the courts outweighed the inconvenience of a bit more of a temperate zone inside the courts.
And just to be clear, the noise is the people playing more even than the actual equipment being used to play. Is that accurate? Because there are more bodies, more people involved, either actively playing or in the adjacent area. Is that, is that correct?
I would say yes. So if you recall, we had put temporary lines and court nets out, so there was pickleball play going on there for quite some time before we fully renovated that facility, and we didn't have the level of participation, though, and we weren't receiving this level of complaints. And so I definitely do think it's not just the ball. I'm not, I'm not willing to say it's the people, it's the voices and stuff that outweigh the ball. I think, you know, they may be equally annoying to the neighbors, but they both definitely come into play with the conversation, so.
Yeah, I think the comment was the ball is a sharper sound, Mayor, if you will, and the voice is kind of more of a sustained level. So the combination of the two, I think Director Holland was spot on when she made her comment.
And I just want to point out, too, so the Carlsbad facility, and then I also reached out to someone in Arizona. You know, those facilities, when they opened, had this material, so the people didn't know any difference as far as the heat or wind impacts. And so that is potentially, you know, an impact that we brought up or that, you know, the pickleball folks are aware of. They don't seem to share much concern over it, but they're definitely, you know, the material itself is not permeable. It's not like the fence cover that we have now. It definitely will stop that.
No, it's much denser. It's three-eighths thick.
So it really is a wind barrier as well as a sound barrier for basically the same reasons.
Yeah, and I think one of the, yeah, one of the comments from, I'm sorry, Mayor, one of the comments from one of the pickleballers was that the wind was also a consideration for them, which is why they preferred playing earlier. So this will stop the wind, which will, you know, potentially help those who, wind makes a difference in their game, I guess.
And I'm trying not to go too far with this idea, but what I would hate for us to do is create a new sound. If we're talking about wind, and is there any evidence from the research you've done that there are now wind noises, you know, hissing, rattling a fence and things that don't currently exist? That, you know, we're going to have this conversation in two months after we install this, that now they're hearing something else?
I didn't read any evidence.
None that I'm familiar with. And I asked the vendor if it had any detrimental effect on the fence or the fencing material, and he said none that he was aware of. So that was something we asked.
Last point I wanted to ask about, is it a commitment from the pickleball committee that twenty-five hundred dollars is pledged to help fund this, correct? Samantha, I think you're saying yes. Okay.
Yes.
So that would, that would basically be similar to what the Bachi Club has done for ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the courts at National Memorial Park, correct?
Yeah, and just to put it into perspective, so they do have their fund in the Towne Yountville Community Foundation. They don't have a huge balance remaining. A lot of that fundraising happened when the new project was built, and it helped provide the covered bench out there and some other amenities. And so the twenty-five hundred is a large portion of what they have remaining. So just to put it in perspective, they don't have thirty thousand dollars to give us more. So twenty-five hundred was a pretty generous commitment on their part. But yes, it would be similar to how Bachi shares in some of the improvements for those courts as well.
Okay, that's all I have for questions right now. Actually, one more for Gary. When we get to it, because I know we have a long list of public comment emails that have been sent in. But when we get to action on this item, because we're only three council members, please explain what the voting requirement is going to be.
All three of you will need to vote in support of it in order for it to pass.
That's pretty straightforward and clear. Okay. Wanted to make sure, since we have recusals instead of abstentions, we, all three need to agree or else it fails.
Yeah, and it's also because it's a resolution, and that requires a majority vote of the entire council's membership.
Right, budget adjustment. Okay. Great. So Michelle, you've got a list, I know, of submitted public comments, and I'm checking off names that are on my list, and I don't know if we've had Glenn Matsuhara is the only one I believe is added to what you printed. Is that accurate?
Almost. I would add Holly Hansen and James McDonald to that list. I think I may have missed them in my original count to you.
So I have Stephen and Linda Baloo, Stephen Becker, and Denise Stamford, Murda David, Lily King, Jim King, Glenn Matsuhara, Alman Bundy, John Murphy, Cynthia Capchin. Now you say Holly Hansen and Jim McDonald. Is that a complete list?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get started.
Okay, the first comment I will read is an e-comment submitted by John Murphy, and that's viewable on your iPad. Dear council members, my name is John Murphy, and my wife and I have lived on Heather Street off Oak Circle Vintage Owners Association since nineteen eighty-two. I commend the move to put up sound deadening materials at the well-used pickleball courts. In contrast, the basketball court is almost never used. Why? Every other shot has the player retrieving the ball out of the adjacent ditch. No fun at all. I have asked Joe Tagliabashi on more than one occasion to put some sort of fence net wall on the east side of the court to help mitigate this issue. His reply, paraphrased, was can't do it when the catch basins at Heather Street overflow in the winter. The flow down Oak Circle with its debris would be impeded by the barrier. You could even make Joe happy by leaving a gap at the bottom as long as the gap is lower than a basketball. You are spending a quarter million dollars exclamation point for a walkway bridge. Please spend a few dollars on improving the currently absolutely worthless basketball court. My two cents put in, I'll probably get two cents change back, but thanks for listening. My next one that I will read is from Stephen Linda Baloo, for the attention of the Yountville Town Council. We have owned our home at Columbar for twenty years. We love the location until recently the calm nature of our near vineyard location. We have been able to enjoy the growth and development of the town over those years and look forward for more successes in the future. We are concerned, however, at the daily noise and increased weekend traffic that the pickleball courts at Vineyard Park have brought to our neighborhood. We wish to speak on behalf of the town's purchase and installation of Acoustifence for the courts at Vineyard Park. That improvement will hopefully reduce the noise generating generated during play from the racquetball contact and from the exuberant players, which on any Sunday morning, for example, can number up to thirty on the courts playing or watching. We support the decision at the recent P-RAC meeting where this topic was widely discussed, and the committee vote in favor of sending an Acoustifence installation recommended to the town council. We appreciate your consideration of the P-RAC recommendation and urge adoption of their recommendation at the August fourth meeting. Thanks again for all your work on behalf of the town. The next public comment is from Stephen Becker and Denise Stamford. We are long-term town residents who wish to speak on behalf of the town's purchase and installation of Acoustifence for the courts at Vineyard Park. This follows the recent P-RAC meeting where this topic was widely discussed, and the committee voted in favor of sending a purchase and install recommendation to the town council. As it is widely understood, pickleball has become an increasingly popular sport activity. Also widely understood is that pickleball is a noisy activity, both due to ball and racket contact as well as the exuberance of those engaged in play. Pickleball can involve anywhere from two to four players per court. The park currently has four courts dedicated to pickleball. This represents a fourfold increase in the number of participants when compared to the two tennis court iteration that previously existed. We reside on Columbar Way, the fifth home from the easternmost end and in close proximity to the Vineyard Park courts. The noise generated from the pickleball courts is unmistakable, loud to the point of intrusive. This is not simply our observation, but that of neighbors from down Rancho de Napa, Carrigan Way, Oak Circle to residents of Holly Street. Of equal, if not greater importance, is that noise generated from pickleball is not a local issue alone, as it has become a point of discussion and mitigation in numerous communities across the country. The noise associated with pickleball has spawned innovation, and a product specifically designed to abate and mitigate the noise is readily available. This product, Acoustifence, has been purchased with reported satisfaction by numerous localities as was succinctly noted in the town staff report at P-RAC. We are in no fashion in opposition to court games at Vineyard Park, and we are strongly supportive of measures designed to manage and mitigate the noise. Finally, we wish to note that the decibels generated by pickleball are not something that the majority of those involved in play have as a background to their daily life. However, we on Columbar Way and in the vicinity of the park courts do. During the P-RAC meeting, your staff proposed the installation of Acoustifence at the tennis and pickleball courts. We are fully in support of this recommendation, as is the local pickleball association who have commendably offered financial support for this project. We appreciate your consideration of the P-RAC recommendation and urge adoption of their recommendation. The next public comment is from Mayor The next public comment is from Murna David. I am an avid pickleball player on the Yountville Pickleball Steering Committee and also on the Board of Directors of the Vintage Owners Association, the development adjacent to Vineyard Park. As a pickleball player, I want to thank the town of Yountville for all their support for our sport and the installation of our state-of-the-art outdoor pickleball courts. This summer, there has been very high usage of the outdoor courts because we are no longer able to play in the community center due to county orders regarding COVID-nineteen. This includes a high number of non-residents using the courts, particularly on weekends. I am aware and greatly empathize with homeowners in our development who have been negatively impacted by the noise from the outdoor courts. I am also concerned about the potential impact this might have on their housing values. I strongly support the investment in the sound deadening material that has been recommended by town staff. The information presented to the P-RAC indicated that this material would greatly reduce the noise level for the nearby homes and present no downside for those playing on the courts. As a member of the Yountville Pickleball Steering Committee, we agreed to provide twenty-five hundred dollars, representing a significant portion of our remaining foundation monies to help, uh, albeit minimally, offset the cost to the town of installing the sound deadening fabric. I am asking the town council to vote in favor of approving this purchase. The next public comment is from Lily King. Dear Michelle, I live at eighteen seventy-one Columbar Way, pardon for reading the address, adjacent to the pickleball courts. As the P-RAC Commission found in a four-to-one vote, we highly support the installation of the acoustic fence as soon as possible. The sound from the sixteen players on what used to be one tennis court combined with the dissonant sound of ball hit with plastic rackets renders our backyard virtually unusable from eight until sunset. We have observed that Yountville residents are conscientious about wearing masks, but that does not seem to be the case for the visiting pickleball players. Wouldn't wearing of mask also help the exuberant crowd noise as well as preventing the spread of the virus? We hope installing the fence on three sides will help. Once it is in place, we can reevaluate whether the fourth side needs some absorption and whether we need to revisit, revisit the issue of start time. Finally, we ask if anything can be done to help with the pickleball parking, which presently fills all of Oak Circle, especially on weekends, with lots of slamming doors. Thank you, Lily Pratt King. The next public, public comment is from James King, and it says, Dear Town Council, I write in support of the recommendation of the P-RAC meeting on July sixteenth, twenty twenty for the installation of an acoustic fence noise abatement sys, system at the town tennis and pickleball courts. As a resident of Yountville since two thousand and seven, I have observed several changes in the town, one of which the conversion of one of the tennis courts to four pickleball courts in recent years has had a profound impact on the ability of my wife and I and several of our neighbors to enjoy our properties. While participants are exposed to the disruptive pickleball sound as well as the exuberant exclamation of fellow players for one or two hours at the most, we neighbors are subject to continuous noise, particularly on weekends for up to twelve hours a day, non-stop. With up to sixteen players on the court, the size of one tennis court, the noise level is truly overwhelming at times, making sitting in our backyards nearly impossible. Please remediate this situation, which has gone unattended for far too long. The next one is from Glenn Matsuhara. Mister Mayor and council members, I own the house on Columbar Way, which is located directly behind the pickleball courts at Vineyard Park. Because of the close proximity to the courts, my house is one of the most impacted houses from the court activity. As noted by other residents, there is much noise generated by the play as well as increased traffic and parking issues in the neighborhood. Obviously, this problem was recognized by city staff and the P-RAC as they have recommended that the acoustic fence be installed to help mitigate the noise impact to the adjacent residential community. I request that, that the town council approve the recommended accent, actions such that the fence can be installed and hopefully the noise impact will be reduced. As acknowledged by town staff and the P-RAC, noise from the play of pickleball is definitely an issue. While the installation of the new fence will certainly help, I want to address another issue. The courts are open for play from the hours of eight AM to sunset daily. There are no exceptions for weekends or holidays, which may actually see an increase in play. My request, as shared by a number of ma, neighbors, is that pickleball play should not be allowed to start until nine AM. Pickleball noise should be treated, treated as other types of noise generated, generating activities when considering the start time. Construction activities which generate noise are subject to a nine AM start time with additional restrictions on weekends and holidays. Paste it below is what I believe to be the pertinent provisions of the town's municipal code. We, as impacted residents, are subject to constant noise starting at eight AM daily. I believe pickleball, which also generates noise, should be subject to the same nine AM start time. While it would be nice to get relief on the weekends and holidays, I recognize that such a ban would not be reasonable. However, I believe a start time of nine AM is completely reasonable, appropriate, and consistent with the town's regulations regarding noise. I might also add that it is my understanding that a number of those people that use these courts are not residents of Yountville. The Park and Recreation Department Director estimates that fifty percent of users are from out of town. I am unsure of the actual number. While I'm not against neighboring residents using the public facilities of the town, I believe the concern of town residents should come first, and they are entitled to the quiet enjoyment of their properties. I believe the impact to residents should be of major concern, and the later start time of nine should be initiated. Noise is generated from the actual play and also from cars and parking, as pointed out by one of my neighbors. It is unfortunate that these noise impacts were not considered when the tennis courts were converted to the pickleball courts. However, now that we have an acknowledged noise problem, I request that the town council approve the resolution and change the start time to nine AM. If the town council is unwilling to immediately change the start time, then I request that this matter be sent back to staff and/or P-RAC for further consideration, such that you can be better informed as to this issue. However, I respectfully request that the town council immediately cha, immediately change the start time to nine AM, as also requested by my neighbors, as this is definitely an issue that can be partially mitigated by a later start time. Thank you.
Michelle, the, okay, you're, you're wrapping up. The time is over.
Yes, so I'll just reference the two codes, he, municipal code sections he referenced, and you can tell me if you want me to read them aloud. He references eight point zero four point zero three zero, specific types of noise prohibited. And it says, um, B subsection B contracted services. And then the next section of the Muni code is eight point zero four point zero two six, exterior noise standards. And then the bulleted sections of those are general restriction, exterior levels, ambient noise level adjustment, and intruding noise source. If you would like me to read those aloud, let, no.
Nope, it's well past three minutes.
Okay. The next public comment is from Alman Bundy. Most Saturday and Sunday mornings, no later than eight AM, I no longer have the option of sleeping in or to enjoy a cup of coffee on my deck and listen to the birds. These are pleasures I enjoyed since I purchased my home in Rancho de Napa in two thousand and eight until the past few years. The loud, continuous crack of the paddles and yelling with each successful volley interrupts any tranquility, and it does not end until the last glimmer of dusk. In the summer, this is often eight-thirty or later, and then the players sometimes hang out and discuss their triumphs on the court in their outside voices. I live adjacent to the tennis and pickleball courts, and I have had very few issues with the sound of tennis and the tennis players. When the pickleball courts first opened, I did voice some complaints to the recreation department with no real effect. I realize that these are my Yountville neighbors, and I know they are having a good time. Lord knows I know that. So I have accepted the drastic change. I have suffered in silence. I have thought about selling my home, but I realize that I would have to disclose this as a nuisance to any prospective buyer. I believe that my property values have been negative, negative, negatively affected by the installation of the pickleball courts. We have a noise ordinance in Yountville that precludes me and any of my neighbors from making this much noise before nine AM and after five PM during the week and with fewer hours on the weekend. Is there a disconnect here? Therefore, I would appreciate any improvement that the town can offer to reduce the impact on my life and the lives of my family and neighbors. The next public com, comment is from Cynthia Capchin, and it says, Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members, I am an avid tennis player and an occasional pickleball player. I've played competitive tennis for decades on many teams in Napa Valley, including Silverado, Napa Valley Country Club, and Napa Valley Tennis Association. I've also played in pickleball tournaments. I have two comments. One, tennis and pickleball should be considered separately with regards to safety uh, in prevent physical distancing, start times, and noise generated. At most, the tennis court has four players who can easily maintain a distance of more than six feet apart and who rarely talk during points. The four pickleball courts occupy the same physical area as one tennis court and have as many as sixteen players playing at a time. The sound of a rubber and felt tennis ball hitting the nylon strings of a tennis racket is significantly less noisy than up to four plastic pickleballs ping, pinging off of wood or graphite paddles. Tennis courts in Napa are quite often full by eight-thirty AM. We have just one tennis court in Yountville, and those of us who use the court generally make a phone call or two, two other. Yountville players to try to work it out so that it, if someone starts at eight or eight-thirty, the next gr, group can come later in the morning before the temperature becomes too hot. I'm advocating to keeping tennis start time at eight AM regardless of what is decided with pickleball. Her second comment is, I'd like to propose that pickleball be played with a foam ball. There is a foam pickleball sold at Pickleball Central website. It's called the Gamma Quiet Ball. The cost, eight ninety-nine for six balls. They could easily be put into the lockbox that holds equipment for pickleball. When I mentioned this, uh, at the Park and Rec Committee meeting, it was rejected as being quote, unenforceable and not to tournament standard. I would argue that it is enforceable. Over the past few weeks, the courts have been visited by the town sheriff, pickleball steering committee members and town staff. I know motives of the players, and I think they would pass the word along about the ball and give it a go. Please at least give the quiet ball a trial period before spending more than thirty thousand on the fence. Thirty thousand dollars is not a small sum of money, and during the pandemic, I feel the council should be especially fiscally conservative and creative as to alternatives. Thank you. Next public comment is from James McDonald to Yountville Town Council. In advance of agenda item twenty dash twenty-six sixty-two on August fourth, I applaud the attempt to dampen sound at the sports courts at Vine, Vineyard Park. A sound, sound of rackets hitting pickleballs carries some distance. In fact, I have heard it from our driveway, and we're the twelfth house from the park on Columbar Way. This sound is audible on the path between Heritage and Holly. We've heard complaints about the noise from neighbors who live closer to Vineyard Park, and I understand their concerns. I would request you go further than just installing the barriers. While the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission failed to adequately, adequately address the issue, I recommend hours of court use be limited and consistent with those of the noise ordinance, nine AM to six PM. Those hours should be sufficient for most of our Yountville players and minimize issues for the neighbors. Thank you for your consideration. And, okay, this is, that concludes the public comment, and minus Holly Hanson from your list, minus that from your list. This is for a different item.
Oh, got you. Okay, so we don't need that right now. Um, okay. Thank you very much for reading those all into the record.
You're welcome.
And let's see, where are we now? We have uh, additional comments from our uh, council, so which of you would like to go first? It looks like Councilmember Muller, you've unmuted yourself first, so go ahead.
Okay, boy, that's uh, easier than raising my hand. So uh, I am in uh, full support of the uh, three-sided uh, acoustic fence material. I am also willing to um, discuss a change in hours, and my rationale for the change of hours would first be on a temporary basis. Uh, seems like there has been an increase both in the noise and the traffic based on uh, the, the community center being closed. I would um, think that if we change the hours, at least until the community center reopened, that would also give us uh, an extra measure of uh, so, uh, sound mitigation without necessarily making it a permanent change. So that's a question I have for our town attorney. The resolution is silent on the hours. Is that something that we could add to the recitals?
So it's, it's proper for it to be part of the discussion because it's relevant to the decision, but for purposes of your action, it can't be part of that because of how the agenda is described. So it's limited to approving only what's on there, but there can be a separate item that's brought forth in the future. As you probably know, the town council can adopt rules and regulations for parks by resolution. That was something that was put into ordinance last year. So a resolution can be brought forward that adjusts the hours or imposes other rules or regulations that the council wants.
Okay, so right now we are limited to uh, approving the, the material and the um, and the budget adjustment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that would also include any consideration of uh, foam or other types of equipment. That's not on the agenda uh, for discussion today. Or discussion, yes, but not action. Right. All right, Councilmember Durham.
Um, so then, I would like to state, uh, first and foremost that I'm in, I'm in support of the, the acoustic foam uh, material, but, well, not but. And if we're gonna fully talk about this, we need to put the hours on a future agenda because I think it does not serve a full purpose. It's only a half attempt to um, alleviate this issue. So with that being said, I won't talk about hours anymore, but I would, I would strongly ask that we discuss the hours on a future agenda item, on the future um, council meeting so that we can fully um, deal with this issue. I do appreciate the fact, um, and I, it's unfortunate because the tennis court is adjacent to the pickleball courts. And this is a situation where one person in the class screwed it up for everyone else. So we all uh, have to deal with the, with the results, and that seems to be the case with the tennis courts as well. So that's a future agenda item as well, I just realized. So I'm sorry about that. But um, I do support the materials for the pickleball court.
Thank you. Uh, I, I wanna just uh, quickly address um, the comment about the public health concerns about uh, the, the play with pickleball versus tennis. Uh, I know that that's not addressed uh, on our action today. I think it, it relates in the sense of there is significantly more activity, uh, I think, related to the restrictions that the Napa County and the state have put for uh, especially indoor activity. No question, the increase in activity uh, at the pickleball courts uh, is connected to, yes, popularity, but absolutely connected to the uh, restrictions on indoor activity and people's desire to be out even more than ever. Uh, I think it's um, part of the reason for the increase in noise, which is more bodies uh, playing the game, more opportunities for noise. Uh, I also completely uh, support the acoustic fence sound ending mitigation. Uh, we've invested significantly in this recreational uh, activity after not only our, but a lot of resident uh, research and evaluation of the emerging uh, sport activity. Uh, so we need to follow this through, I think. Uh, in terms of future considerations, let's see how this works before we worry about the other moving parts. the other moving parts. I think this could have what we think it's going to have, significant mitigation with the noise. That may solve the problem with equipment with hours of operation. Let's see how this plays out, yes, pun, and invest in this. I think it's absolutely worth protecting the local resident quality of life, recognizing also that they are adjacent to a recreational open space that includes organized sport recreation. We have the interesting, no one seems to be complaining about the activity at the exercise equipment. Not sure if that's just temporary or not. So I agree. I think it makes sense to invest in this. I appreciate that the pickleball club is recognizing their interest and almost an obligation to help, and their partial investment in this is very much appreciated. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-four, zero, zero, six, adopt resolution approving a budget adjustment for purchasing and installing the sound deadening materials for the sport courts at Vineyard Park.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Mohler, second, Councilmember Durham. Roll call vote, please. Michelle.
Thank you, Councilmember Mohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Durham. Say it again, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mayor Dunbar.
Yes, so that does pass, three, zero. So we will make that budget adjustment and invest in that sound mitigation. So thank you all, and thank you for all the public comment. I'll now invite back in to this room Vice Mayor Dorman, Councilmember Dorman Becker, and our town manager. And there they are, or there's one of them anyway. There we go. Welcome back. We are now going to move on to item nine C, tree removal permit request. Consider adoption of Resolution number two-zero, four, zero, zero, seven, approving the tree removal permit, authorizing the removal of five protected trees, requiring either payment of a large inlufi or five, four, five trees, or the planting of five twenty-four-inch box replacement trees on site for the property located at twenty-one eighty Monroe Street, APN zero-three-six, zero-two-five, zero-zero-three. We'll start with a staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is an application authorizing the removal of five protected trees and requiring either payment of a large inlufi for five trees, or planting, or the planting of five twenty-four-inch box replacement trees on site at twenty-one eighty Monroe Street. Next slide, please. The subject property is an approximate eleven thousand one hundred and three square foot lot with one single family dwelling. Landscaping at the property is in the natural state, and the site is covered with twenty-two trees, including thirteen coastlive oaks. Sorry, my screen keeps going fullscreen on my end. Sorry about that, folks. The site is covered with twenty-two trees, including thirteen coastlive oaks, six valley oaks, and three block walnut trees. Prior to purchasing the property in 2019, the applicant retained Denise Britton, a certified arborist, to examine the trees on site and determine which trees are in good condition and should be preserved, and which trees may be hazardous or candidates for removal. Based on the findings of the arborist report, the property owner is considering removing eight trees, three of which are not protected by the town's tree ordinance because they fall below the threshold to be deemed protected, and five trees of which are deemed protected and are before you tonight. Next slide, please. Thank you. The applicant has submitted an application for a tree removal permit for the removal of five trees that are protected by the Tree Preservation and Management Chapter of the Municipal Code because they are larger than ten inches diameter at breast height. As noted in the attached arborist report, most of these trees have grown from seed along fence lines and have received no previous care. As a result, many are crowded with co-dominant trunks that have bark included between the stems. It is staff's understanding that mitigation would not have been viable, given the condition of the trees at the time the applicant purchased and acquired the property. All of the trees proposed for removal have an arborist rating of one, meaning extreme hazards, on a scale of one to six. They feature extreme structure or health problems and are deemed hazardous and/or non-correctable. The staff report and arborist report references these trees as the following. Tree number eight twelve, which is a coastlive oak with a diameter at breast height of twenty-four point five inches. And just making our way right down the list, tree number eight eighteen, which is a valley oak with a DBH of twenty point one. Tree eight nineteen, a valley oak with a DBH of sixteen. Tree eight twenty-two, a coastlive oak, the largest of them all, with a DBH of forty-six point five. And finally, tree eight thirty-three, which is a coastlive oak with a DBH of twenty-four inches. Now, the arborist report does provide reasons for why these trees should be removed, and I want to touch on each of those briefly, just again going right down the list, starting with tree eight twelve. This tree has two trunks with poor structure, weak co-dominant attachment, and included bark to the ground. This condition cannot be corrected. Tree eight eighteen, this tree has two trunks, each ten inches in diameter, with weak co-dominant attachment and included bark. It is crowded and growing underneath the canopies of trees number eight twenty and trees number eight twenty-one, both of which are to be retained and will form a canopy over the yard. Tree number eight nineteen, this tree has two trunks, each eight inches in diameter, with weak co-dominant attachment and included bark to the ground. This tree is crowding tree number eight twenty, which is to be cabled and retained at the property. And we only have two left. Tree eight twenty-two, this tree is the largest tree on site with a diameter at breast height of forty-six point five inches. It has six trunks with extensive included bark. The trunks are beginning to split apart, and this tree is potentially hazardous and could fall apart onto adjacent homes. Simply, its condition cannot be corrected. And finally, we have tree eight thirty-three. This tree has co-dominant trunks with included bark. It is crowded and growing underneath the canopy of trees number eight twenty and eight twenty-one, both of which shall be retained and will form a canopy over the yard. Of the twenty-two trees located on site, a total of fourteen are protected under the Yountville Municipal Code. Eight of these trees fall below the threshold to be protected and could be approved by the, could be removed by the applicant without town approval. It is also noted that three of these eight trees also have an arborist rating of one, meaning that they're the most sick and the most hazardous. Next slide, please. And I believe you all each have this attachment. This is a part of the arborist report. Here are several pictures of the trees. Tree eight twenty-two has six trunks and extensive included bark. This tree is potentially hazardous and can fall into adjacent homes. Next slide, please. Here are several photos of trees eight nineteen and eight twelve, each showing co-dominance and included bark. The weakness can but not be corrected. This condition is also present in trees number eight eighteen and eight thirty-three, which are also requested for removal. The applicant and arborist have prepared a brief presentation as well, which does include additional photos. Now, jumping into the discussion and analysis section of the staff report, staff believes that the arborist report and underlying conditions of each of the five trees warrants approval for removal. Staff also believes that each of the findings highlighted within the attached staff report are met. In summary, the trees have poor structure, are crowded, and declining health, and conditions cannot be corrected. Maintaining trees whose health cannot be corrected is quite costly and aesthetically not a benefit to the property or to the community. Tree removal also promotes the health of other on-site treats, such as those listed in numbers eight twenty and eight twenty-one. Now, if approved by the council, replacement trees are to be considered. The Yountville Municipal Code states that the decision-making authority may attach any reasonable condition to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the Tree Preservation and Management Chapter of the Municipal Code. Where mitigation is deemed necessary, the town shall require and plant on-site replacement trees or the payment of an inlufi, if that is the best option. The code further provides that the minimum size for a replacement tree of a native oak shall be a twenty-four-inch box replacement. The applicant has informed staff that they would prefer to replant trees on site instead of pursuing the inlufi option. The proposed condition of approval within the resolution offers replacement trees on the California Native Trees List per the Yountville Municipal Code, but the council can also narrow the replacement tree species to oaks if you do so choose. Now, last slide. Thank you. The applicant is retaining tree number eight twenty-three in the northwest corner of the property, which is in good shape and is healthy. In addition, all replacement trees will be planted on site. The applicant has spoken with adjacent neighbors who do support the removal of these trees that are also encroaching into existing fence lines. Staff is of the opinion that the removal of these trees is appropriate. Based on the current condition of the trees with respect to their poor structure and declining health, which cannot be corrected, and an arborist rating of one, staff does support the removal of these trees in this application. Now, that does conclude the staff report. I would like to note that staff has shared additional information with the council before this meeting, which is also included in the public record and has been shared with the applicant. Staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant has also prepared a brief presentation with additional photos. I know that the arborist report that you had originally received only included a few close-up screenshots. The applicant does have much better photos for us this evening.
So Curtis, can you explain what additional materials you're referencing that you say you've given the council?
Yes, a little bit of clarification on location of where those trees are on site, the options that I had discussed and elaborated on within the staff report, the options of what those replacement trees would be, how that is calculated per the master fee schedule, so on and so forth.
And I don't remember seeing that information come from you. Was that today?
That was from Director Liston, I believe, this morning or late last night.
I will look for that. Okay, because I know one of the concerns that I had expressed is there's no context to where these trees are located based on the arborist report, and it's really hard to understand looking at dots in a box when you have quite a bit of foliage that basically obscures where the origin of those trees are. So I just haven't seen that. I'll look for it right now. Are there any questions of the initial report, and then we'll hear from Mr. Clopton? Councilmember Durham?
Yes, so according to the email that we received from Director Liston, the applicant would now like to replace the trees on property instead of placing an inlufi. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, the staff report states that it will be difficult to accommodate five twenty-four-inch box replacement trees on the property. Is that still the case?
I would defer the arborist, there are options. The applicant may select numerous different types of trees. That said, you guys can require that they do plant oaks. The fact that nine trees that are of significant size are being retained on property, typically it's staff's correction with other applications as well. Occasionally, we do give that option of either the payment of an inlufi, or if they do prefer to replant on site, we typically lay out both options. Given the initial aerial view of the site itself and seeing how much of the site is enclosed by existing tree canopy, initially, we thought that five twenty-four-inch box replacement trees might not be feasible. I do stand corrected on that.
And now I see Vice Mayor Dorman.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for the report. How big typically is the diameter breast height of a twenty-four-inch box tree?
I would defer to Denise Britton.
Okay, so I'll ask that of her. And you mentioned the word a large inlufi. Actually, it's what we have in our ordinance, correct?
Correct. That's per the master fee schedule. I don't have those numbers on hand, but if a tree is large enough, it qualifies at that dollar amount of about twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and goes down from there depending on if it's the medium fee or the small inlufi. And just an example, a small inlufi would be a tree anywhere from about twelve inches DBH to about fourteen to fifteen inches DBH. Since the accumulative diameter at breast height, when we consider all of these trees is obviously quite a large number, that's why we specifically reference the large inlufi amount.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Thank you, and thank you for the report, Curtis. I'd like to find out, in the realm of what is the most dangerous, you said that they all rank a number one. Is number one the least dangerous or the most dangerous?
The most dangerous.
I see, so it's five is the least and one is the most.
Six would be the least, and then one would be the most, correct.
Okay, all right, that's telling. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I don't see any other councils, so I'll ask my questions. Do we have any written testimony from neighbors for their support, or is it just the word of the applicant?
The word of the applicant.
Not that it's just, it is the word of the applicant?
Correct.
We have, okay, no correspondence with neighbors, and we didn't check.
To my knowledge, no correspondence with neighbors.
All right, but we'll hear from the applicant on that. Were there any mitigation measures taken to preserve any of these trees since the property owner bought it?
Initially, when they were, I'll let Jim and Susan speak to that, but it's my understanding that when they were initially looking at the property before they acquired it is when they had Denise go on site to perform the evaluation. The conditions of the trees upon the time that they had acquired the property, they were already in a state where mitigation measures could not be taken to prolong or enhance the health of these trees.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, I'll be asking the applicant and the arborist about that. We've heard that before, and we certainly held Stewart Sellers to high standards of mitigation to save a heritage oak tree. We've done it before in other parts of the town, so I'll want to hear the explanation for why things aren't being trimmed versus recommended to be removed, things like that. So we'll hear, I'm sure we'll hear that in just a moment. So those are my questions for now. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Clopton to start, and then if we have any questions for the arborist, but please go ahead, Mr. Clopton. If you're able to unmute. There you go. There you are.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I just unmuted.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Yes.
All right, okay. Hi, first of all, Mayor Dunbar and council members, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if we could, hold on just a second, Jim, Michelle, I think you're gonna say.
Allowing us to.
Hold on, just saying, we're getting feedback because of your.
You need to turn off one of the devices. You need to turn off one of the devices.
Oh. Oh, wait, we have the TV on, I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's okay, thank you.
There we go, now we're on the same timeline.
Sorry about that.
Sounds great now, thank you.
Let me turn on my computer now, okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. As I said, thank you, Mayor Dunbar and council members for giving us some time on the agenda to talk about the trees at twenty-one eighty Monroe. As previously stated in the staff report, my wife and I were interested in purchasing this property, but first wanted to seek the advice of a licensed arborist before we proceeded because we understood that there is a very high sensitivity with respect to taking down any oak trees, whether they're heritage oaks or not. And I needed some education about that because I really wasn't quite sure what the definition of a heritage oak was. I clearly understand that the Stewart Sellers oak is a heritage oak. But to compare these oaks to Stewart Sellers oak is to kind of compare two buckchuck to quintessa wine, I think, and to, to, to give an example. I, I, I would want to defer to Denise Britton, the arborist, to say a little bit more about the trees, but we love trees. My wife and I love trees. We are residents of Yountville. We live on the corner of Pedronee and, and Jefferson Street. It's our intention to make significant enhancements to 2180 Monroe. In the meantime, we took the time and expense to improve the little cinder block home that, that sits on the property now, and our daughter, who was living in New York City and needed to get out because of the COVID situation, now resides there with her boyfriend. So it's been a great refuge for them. But with respect to the, the oak trees, these oak trees are, in anyone's definition, just, you know, they're, they're, they're just not significant trees whatsoever. And they're very unhealthy and they're very unsafe. And in fact, one of the trees that Denise Britton recommended that we retain, suddenly, one night during one of our spring windstorms, split completely apart and fortunately didn't land on anything. But it was a Sunday afternoon, and I tried to get ahold of someone at the town, and I was able to get ahold of Joe Tagliabucci, who was nice enough to come over because we didn't want to take down the rest of the tree without getting permission from the city, which we did. They understood that this was an emergency and the balance of the tree could have quite easily fallen on the house. So we took that tree down, but the irony was that that was identified as the healthiest tree of all the trees that were requesting to be removed. And that particular tree has the exact same kind of problems, and I'm not sure if it's a disease or not, but this, this black tar that kind of oozed from its limbs was found once the tree split open. So here we are, we would like to develop the property. We would love to bring in some new, healthy, great examples of California oaks or other California native trees to the property, build a new house, build an ADU, and carry on.
Great, thank you very much for your, your comments. I, I think what I'll do is if your arborist does have any additional comments, that's fine. If not, if, if the arborist is just available for us to follow up with questions if they arise, I know that Sandra Liston has her hand raised. Sandra?
Hi, I've heard the terminology used here tonight, heritage tree and native oak, and I'd just like to provide what that distinction is underneath the town's tree ordinance. A heritage oak is a tree that's been identified and is indicated in the town's heritage tree survey. It's on that list because of its significant size, age, or specimen qualities. Then there are protected trees, and those are heritage oaks that meet at least a 10-inch DBH. Not all native trees become heritage trees. That might be because of their shape or condition, location, a number of factors. Of course, the goal is that we want as many native trees to become heritage trees, but there is a slight distinction. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Britton, I did, I did want to give you an opportunity if you had anything further now, or if you want to just be available for responses. I think you're just by phone.
Yes, I am by phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. For some reason, my computer microphone decided to not work. So, yes, I have looked at these trees, and we did actually prepare a PowerPoint for you if you want greater detail. And I can, can answer your specific questions as well, which might be the best way to go. Or, or we can start the PowerPoint if you prefer.
I think, what I think I will do is invite questions from council, and if that leads us to getting the answers through the PowerPoint, that's fine. If we get our answers verbally, then that works as well. So let's see what kind of questions we still have from, from the council, and then we'll find out also if we have any public comment. So if any council members, I think I see Councilmember Doren Becker reaching forward. Is that correct? I'll save you the trouble, just go ahead and hit mute, hit unmute, Councilmember Doren Becker, and we'll invite your questions.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So I have three oaks in my back garden, and I'm very fond of oaks. On the other hand, I do understand that the deviated trunks of the oaks can cause them to be weakened. Is that the case with these trees?
Yes, it is.
And. Go ahead.
With virtually every one of them. And what happens is that the, as the trunks grow in diameter, they actually press against each other, and they get bark included between them, and that, and so they, they, they don't, the wood doesn't graft, and so it's a weak attachment, and when the wind blows, it can fall apart. And sometimes the growth of the tree itself will push it apart. And that's what's happening on the tree number 822. It's actually starting to push itself apart, and that's the one that we're most concerned about.
The tree that suddenly did come apart and had black ooze, was that sudden oak death syndrome?
No, it was, it was a co-dominant limb that was higher up in the tree. So it was the same condition, but it was higher up. It didn't start at the ground. It was more like about 15, 20 feet up in the tree.
Okay, but that was not caused by sudden oak death?
No, it was not.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you, those are my questions.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Thank you. So Ms. Britton, I think these are mostly for you. There are 22 trees on site now. You want to take out five protected, or the applicant wishes on your advice to take out five protected and three non-protected, which would leave 14 trees on site, correct?
Correct.
And of those 14, it looks to me by my math that probably a majority of them are going to fall into ones and twos. I didn't, I saw like only one four, I'm not sure I saw any five or six on your chart. So kind of what's your plan for those? To make sure that, that these get retained?
That the additional trees get retained? Well, first of all, is to relieve the crowding so that the canopies can in fact grow adequately. They would be pruned and possibly, if need be, in the future cabled. We've asked that one of the trees be pruned to remove a long limb that's extending out beyond the canopy. That's tree number 823. And Mr. Clopton is sincere in his effort to want to care for those trees, and that will include things like additional water and mulching and just general care. All of the trees that we're requesting be taken down are essentially, they're, they're volunteers. They grew up through, along and through the fence line, all of them except for one. And, and so they were just, you know, planted by the, the birds or the squirrels, and no one ever did any kind of pruning or maintenance on them. That's the reason why they're in the condition they are.
And so you, I noticed that your report is dated, I think, July 22nd. I don't have the cover page right in front of me, and I believe the property was purchased in November of 2019. Have there been any changes to your report from November of 2019 till July of 2020?
We've discussed, yeah, we, there's been some changes, yes. We've discussed various ways to go to to make the application, but there's not been any changes in regard to condition of the trees.
Have there been changes in not the assessment of condition, but the assessment of whether or not to remove them, or whether to try to save them?
Yes, there was discussion about retaining the walnut trees. Initially, we were looking at removing the walnut trees as well.
Okay, thank you. And so back to my question of what's a typical trunk diameter on a 24-inch box?
They run about two to three inches.
So we would be looking at replacing over 100 inches with 12 inches or 18 inches. And do you see those trees as being shade trees, landscape trees, or have you discussed that with the applicant?
I haven't specifically discussed it with the applicant, but he's talking about native oaks, so he's definitely talking about shade trees because they will get relatively large.
And if, if tonight, for some reason, we were to say, you know, we, we can't see our way clear to, to remove tree number X, but yes, on tree number Y, for the tree number X that would remain, are there things that could be done to help it along? Could you cable it as you plan to do with sun? Could you brace it up? Are there things that could be done?
Well, as I told Mr. Clopton, it would be like throwing bad money after good. These trees are not in good shape. They're not going to make good landscape trees. It's best to go ahead and start over and get some nice trees in place and take care of those trees than it is to try to, you'd have to cut, you, you literally have to cut them in half in order to reduce the, the situation, okay? And so it's, it would, and that would introduce decay into the base of the tree as well. So the, the options for, for quote unquote repairing a co-dominant stem like that are very minimal, and it's still not going to help the trees that we want to retain on site. Those trees need to have additional sun and minerals and water for them to grow into a good canopy position because they're crowded right now. The other canopies are forcing them to grow in odd ways and reaching up for the sun and, and out for the sun. So it's, it's disfiguring them.
And there's a, I drove by the property. There's a large tree on, and the property's been cleared since the first picture we saw in the presentation. The property's now been pretty much cleared except for the residents, but there's a large tree just on the left of what is kind of the entrance, the driveway. That one is not pegged for removal, correct?
You're talking about the one that leans over the street?
As you face the property, the house is on your right, and on the left, sort of just right on the left-hand side of what looks to be a little drive path, although not paved, there's a large tree, and I did not see.
That is not, that is not to be removed. That's a walnut, exactly.
Okay, so that one is to stay. And do you have an order of magnitude? Like if, if we were to specify a, a 10-inch diameter purchase of a tree, what of, of an oak, what would that cost? Do you know anything about that? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
It would be very difficult to find a 10-inch diameter tree that was transplantable.
Okay, what is something we could reasonably request?
Well, I think that the, the ordinance requirement of a 24-inch box or a 36-inch box is reasonable. The smaller the tree when it's planted, the more likely it is to become well-established quickly and start to grow and provide the amenities that it's meant to provide in the landscape.
Thank you so much.
Any other council questions? I have a couple, if not, I don't see any hands. Ms. Britton, do you already have a plan if these are all removed, proved as requested, and you want to, or Mr. Clopton wants to replant? Is there a plan, a landscape plan for where those go? So we get a sense of, my concern is creating an impact on immediately adjacent parcels that doesn't currently exist just by relocating to other areas. Is there, is there already a site plan considered, or is that not yet determined?
That's not yet determined.
And you're comfortable?
Most, several of these trees are actually growing through the fence of the neighbor. They're, they're, so that's part of it, is to try to alleviate that situation as well.
Yeah, and, and I clearly understand the, the crowding, especially of oaks. It takes decades to get there. I'm sure this was a lot of no maintenance at all in the interest of native growth that has created this set of circumstances, but I also don't want to start a new set of circumstances that's going to repeat this. Granted, it'll be maybe decades away from us, but just getting a sense, if, for example, if a neighbor now doesn't have any shade and new trees are put in place, and all of a sudden, something that doesn't want shade now is shaded, I'm just trying to make sure we're not creating a nuisance in a matter of a few years for an immediately adjacent neighbor. So I mention that as much not as a question even as a comment for consideration as you are looking forward if this does get approved. Mr. Clopton, could you just expand a little bit on your correspondence with your neighbors? Kind of feedback you received? Is it wholehearted support? Is it finally, thank you for doing this? Is it, you know, we've been waiting forever, or is it, we really don't want you to do it, but we can't stop you, or somewhere in between?
He's muted.
Yeah, you're, you're still, you're still on mute, Mr., there you go.
It's, it's all been very supportive dialogue. I've, I've tried to have a conversation with every one of my neighbors, but I did have a conversation with each one of those that was a contiguous neighbor where there was going to be some impact because of a tree that may have been right on our property line. The, the largest tree, which is a six-trunk tree, and most of all the trees actually that are being requested for removal are run along the same eastern property line. And, and if you could just, if you, if, if you walked over there and took a look at the trees we're recommending for removal, I think that this could be a much shorter conversation because these trees are just, they're, I, I don't know what, really what to say, but, but in each case, the, the neighbors have been very supportive and appreciative of the fact that we were going to finally clean these trees up. There was one comment by one neighbor about actually the prettiest tree on the property, which is located on the, on the northwest corner, right at the corner of the property where we want to remove a limb that extends almost at a 90-degree angle out into our property. She wanted to take the whole tree down because it's, she thinks it could potentially move her fence a little bit.
Sam, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Clopton. Sam, can you please switch to slide six, the final slide of the PowerPoint? That's the tree that Mr. Clopton's referring to.
Curtis, I'm going to share my screen. Sam has stepped away, so just one second, please.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
So while, uh, while Michelle is looking for that, Mr. Clopton, you can go ahead.
So, you know, and, yeah, you know, that's just not a tree that we would consider taking down because, like I said, that there aren't many nice trees on the property. That happens to be a healthy, very attractive, um, uh, live oak. And, uh, we just would, we would do, we would go to great lengths to preserve that tree. Um, otherwise, the, every other neighbor, uh, the, the, the walnuts are, are about to, they're in very poor health. And we actually already had permission to remove the walnut, so they're really not part of, uh, this discussion. I don't think, um, because they were approved by planters, uh, in our first round. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, on that, Sandro.
Actually, I was gonna go to Sandra. She's had her hand raised, uh, for a comment.
Well, I thought I would share some information on what the options are for replacement trees. We've mentioned the twenty-four inch box. They come in thirty-six inch box. And Director Tagliabashi has indicated that he's able to source sixty-e, e, inch boxes. Those are about a six-inch D V H, and they cost three thousand dollars. The, the mitigate, or the replacement tree or combination of in-lufy for a heritage oak is fully at the discretion of the council. And so you could consider larger replacement trees plus an additional in-lufy if you believe the, um, the amount of the D V H being lost is so great that the replacements don't adequately cover it. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional. Mr. Clopton, any last, uh, thoughts? We, uh, we probably have talked about it enough and can hear feedback, but.
I just think that, you know, what our plans would be, uh, would be to enhance the property and move some of the trees away from that fence line because the problem with them now is that they're crowding each other and they're preventing, uh, you know, the better trees that we would like to retain from, you know, realizing their full, full potential. So I just don't think that, I hope that there, I'm, we're not treated punitively for cleaning up this property that has just been completely neglected forever. And, uh, looking at this, citing the example that you see up on the screen, we just want to cut off that right limb so that the canopy, we can really show off the canopy that you see, uh, in that, uh, northwest corner. And, you know, we're just going to develop a plan once we get the trees down that are diseased and represent a health and safety risk, and then lay out a plan. What we don't want to do is we don't want to do it hastily. Uh, but we love trees, and we're not trying to get away with anything. We're just trying to clean things up so that we can move forward in a constructive and thoughtful manner. I mean, it's, but these trees are really bad. Joe Taglabucci has been on that property. I took him over to take a look at the, the larger tree, and he went, oh, my God. He said, that's a mess. Well, I won't speak for Joe. I think Joe's, Joe's here, and he can.
We see Joe's hand, uh, covering his, his camera right now, but, uh, right. Well, thank you, Mr. Clopton. And, uh, Ms. Britton, thank you also for your, uh, expert, uh, opinion on this matter.
You're very welcome.
Don't see any other hands from our council.
This is not a steward, this is not a steward seller's.
I only used it as an example, Mr. Clopton, because we have had extensive conversations over the years about mitigation measures. I'm not gonna, uh, compare your property directly to any other actions we've taken. Uh, there was significant mitigation on trees elsewhere. I just bring it up as something to consider.
I totally understand.
Thank you. So, um, Michelle, uh, do we have any public comments that's been submitted on this item?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, additional comments from, uh, council? Who would like to begin? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I, I actually want to applaud Mr. and Mrs. Clopton for their, um, their cust- uh, custodian, um, attitude toward the trees. I understand that, um, there are some situations where, um, if, uh, if oaks develop a bifurcated trunk, it's almost always a sign that there's going to be problems ahead. It's a shame, but it happens. And I support them in their endeavor. I'm glad that they're interested in making the, um, you know, taking care of the health of the others, being good stewards of the, um, trees that they have. So I salute them, I support their, their request.
Thank you. Is there a volunteer for a next comment? Or shall I call on a council member? Councilmember Mueller?
Okay. Um, I've seen quite a few pictures. I think, uh, a score of one is pretty definitive. I really don't have any reservations for allowing, uh, trees to be removed according to the arborist report and the, and the owner's plan.
And in terms of, uh, in-lufy, is there, you have a comment on that?
Uh, if, uh, I, I think, uh, I have no problem with it being, uh, up to the, the property owner.
The in-lufy as presented by the, uh, staff report would be twelve hundred eighty-seven dollars. Uh, but the, the request by the property owner isn't to have the in-lufy. It's to, uh, replace the trees, and then we have to decide, uh, what's the fair, uh, equal, uh, replacement, uh, sized tree. I believe twenty-four, Sandra, a nod is, twenty-four is what's basically on the books as a minimum. Yeah, okay.
And that's what I, I would, if he, uh, decides not to pay the in-lufy, uh, I, I think I would go with what's on the books, a twenty-four, um, box for each tree. Maybe once he finds the trees, he might want a combination of the two, and I'd be fine with that, too. If we don't have to dictate right now, I'm flexible.
That's why I was asking if there is flexibility, the either or with the preference going to the property owner? That, that makes sense.
Those are, those are our rules, so they can choose. So I'm fine with one or the other or a combination.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Excuse me. Um, I, I think since I've been on the council, we like to talk about trees. Um, and we do talk about trees that extend for a very important purpose. This is one of the most detailed arborist report I've seen, and the details that came out in terms of the issues of the trees, the location of the trees, what the mitigation is, issues would be, and how it's been treated in the past. And I very much appreciate that. Um, we take this very seriously, and it's my opinion based on this report and the information that we've received that the applica- applicant is taking it very seriously as well. Um, with that being said, I'm in support of the arborist report, and I'm in support of the, um, replacement trees. My only concern was making sure that, based on the staff report, that, um, it originally said that the replacement trees wouldn't necessarily fit on the property. So I want to make sure moving forward that if we allow this, that, um, that it, the replacements are done properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Um, I also, uh, appreciate the applicant and the arborists coming in, and, um, I do see that probably some trees need to be removed. I do have reservations, uh, that this is the beginning of a number of other trees being removed because you have a lot of ones and twos on the property. I am disappointed that since November, nothing apparently has been done to try to mitigate any of these circumstances. Um, but, you know, we are where we are. So I am more focused on the go-forward, uh, and that, I frankly think because we have discretion to require a greater in-lufy or a larger box, I think this is a situation where that would be called for. I think we should call for thirty-six inch, and they should be protected trees. That's what we're giving up. Um, and I also would like to see something, or at least an affirmation from our applicant, that there's gonna be a maintenance plan. Because I think I am quoting you correctly, Mr. uh, Clopton, you don't want to be treated punitively for cleaning up the property that has been neglected forever. I know, I sort of know you, and I know you would never do that, but I also know that if you are planning on something not being your residence and you're in a construction phase and this and that, um, the things can happen to the trees that are on your property. And I would like to see some accommodation, even if only, as I say, your affirmation of that here, that, that, that you will take care of that. But, um, reluctantly, I could vote yes on this if it was a thirty-six inch, uh, replacement of a protected tree.
Thank you. And what I'll say is, uh, and I alluded to it just a moment ago, uh, it, it's important that we look at all elements of, of the potential of tree removal. Um, and, and we have imposed, uh, pretty significant mitigation measures in the past when appropriate, and when the, uh, life extension of a tree is likely. Nothing's guaranteed. As you referenced, uh, we often have seen what people aren't, the ones people aren't paying attention to can fail more quickly than others. And we have seen that on several occasions throughout town. The initial application had me, uh, greatly concerned about the number of, uh, heritage trees that are, um, gonna be removed. Uh, I had a hard time evaluating initially because the images were all just very close up and the content, the overall context of the, the property a, and the trees and their relationship with each other was not very clear because it was so, um, kind of micro, uh, represented versus a more of a macro. When you look at the aerial, all you see is tree canopies. You don't know where it goes from one tree to the next. So it took quite a bit of evaluation there. Um, but I also understand that, um, the, the adage that we heard certainly when we had our grandfather oak along the Hopper Creek Path about, uh, oak trees growing up for a hundred years, living a hundred years and dying for a hundred years, and understood that, that looking at the condition of the trees in question, um, I'm not going to ask you to, um, as I think Ms. Britton said, um, something like throwing good money after bad, or bad money after good, one of those. Um, they don't look, uh, uh, savable. Uh, that, I understand that, and it's, it's not, it's not on you. I think, uh, you, you are absolutely, uh, smart to be proactive and do your due diligence on, uh, on the property prior to purchasing it. It's the decades of, of neglect that preceded you that allowed these trees to get in the condition they're in. Some of it by nature, some of it by the previous property owners. Uh, so I'm not gonna hold you accountable for, uh, an outcome that has probably taken decades to achieve, uh, with neglect. Um, so I, I can support the removal. I also do appreciate, frankly, uh, the replacement on site. Uh, one thing that's frustrating is usually that's not the option. Uh, the request is to just pay the money and, and be done with it. Uh, but it also scrapes and leaves bare, uh, uh, one of the largest parcels we have in town probably with eleven thousand plus for our feet. So, um, I appreciate that you are interested in, um, not only preserving the, um, kind of treescape of the property, but, uh, improving on it. Uh, but that's also why I wanted to make sure that we weren't creating a nuisance for neighbors that doesn't currently exist. I understand the fact that you're, uh, probably going to be applauded over the fence or through the open fence for taking down some of the, the trees that you're proposing. So I can support as, as presented. Because we have, uh, the sized trees on our books that we do, uh, I think it's appropriate to hold you to that, the twenty-four inch box replacements. Uh, you certainly have the, uh, discretion that, um, if you can upgrade that to provide some diversity and some more immediate, uh, return to tree presence on the property, you might find that that actually is beneficial to, uh, the value and, and the presentation of that site. Um, so I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation as it's presented with the twenty-four inch replacements. Um, I would also, as Councilmember Mueller said, if it turns out that you can fit four larger trees very comfortably, and the fifth could be an in-lufy to allow those more mature trees to be placed, I would certainly, uh, allow that, uh, and, and think it's appropriate, too. So it sounds like you have, uh, support from all of us, uh, to a degree. Uh, the question only remains about how to replace, and, and that's gonna be up to the motioner and the seconder, how, uh, any action is, is offered. Uh, Councilmember Dornbecker, before we take any action, go ahead.
Well, actually, I wanted to, uh, make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Very close to what you were saying. So I would like to move that we adopt resolution number twenty dash four oh oh seven, approving the tree removal permit, authorizing the removal of five protected trees, and giving the, um, applicant the discretion to either pay a lot, the, uh, in-lufy for some or all of the trees, or plant, um, either larger or, 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 uh, either the twenty-four inch or larger trees to replace them. That is my, my, uh, not my.
Your motion? I, I think we probably need you to be a little more specific, uh, with the resolution number and, uh, the information, just for the record. I'm sure Gary was gonna reach for his, his button there if, if we don't. So if you could read the resolution number.
Okay, so adopt, uh, resolution number twenty dash four zero zero seven, approving the tree removal permit, authorizing the removal of five protected trees, and requiring either the payment of the in-lufy for five trees or the planting of five twenty-four inch box replacement trees, or at the discretion of the applicant, larger trees and a combination of trees and in-lufy at, on a property located at twenty-one eighty Monroe Street, A P N zero three six dash zero two five dash zero zero three.
You okay with that, Gary?
Yes, that's clear enough. It looks like in addition to paragraph four A of the resolution. And Sandra, is that enough for you, too? Yeah, I think we're good.
And Michelle, I want to make sure, uh, you're comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, very good. So I'll, uh, do we have a second to Councilmember Dornbecker's motion?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Dornbecker, second by Councilmember Mueller. Michelle, please, uh.
Can I make?
Yeah, Councilmember Durham?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that this was not an in-lufy. My understanding was we were moving forward with replacement of trees on the property.
Well, yes, we are, uh, the applicant has stated that they prefer to replace, but what, what we are offering through this motion is the option they could pay in-lufy if, say, for the example I used, they decide to go with larger trees, they can't fit all five. Then they can maybe plant three or four more mature and pay the one or two others. We're, uh, the motion is allowing that, uh, discretion, uh, by the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, understood.
Okay.
So I'll, she's second, very good.
Okay.
Seconded again.
Michelle?
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Hi, yes.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
Councilmember Durham.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar.
Yes. So that does pass unanimously. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Clopton, thank you for, um, your presentation. Ms. Britton, thank you also for your expert, there she is. Heard a couple murmurs off to the side, but now they're, you're both there. Thank you. Uh, looking forward to you, uh, being good stewards of that property.
Awesome.
Thanks, thanks very much. Okay, we are going to move on, um, to our next item.
What about, uh, would the mayor consider a short five-minute break?
Yes, uh, we will take, and we're gonna hold to five minutes. We're, we're gonna take a five-minute comfort break. We'll be back, uh, at six twenty-five.
Okay, Mayor, please go ahead.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for your timely return, everyone. Thank you for your timely return, everyone. We're going to move on now to our next item, which is item nine D. Parking improvements, North Washington Street adjacent to Yountville Community Park. Discussion and possible direction to staff regarding proposed design elements for the parking improvements on the east side of the Washington Street right of way. Are we starting with Joe or Steve? Joe, Joe Tagliabashi. Joe, we need your mute.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I was well on my way already. Let's see. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. Tonight we have for your discussion and possible direction, proposed design elements for the parking improvements on the east side of Washington Street right of way. A little background, the unimproved parking area on the north side of Washington Street adjacent to the Yountville Community Park has been used for some time for overflow and emergency and employee parking for North Yountville businesses. As that environment at the north end of town has improved, so too has the need to be created with finding suitable additional parking that does not directly impact our neighborhoods. In the spring of twenty fifteen, staff did install some parking blocks on the far north end and the flatter gravel areas at that western location. It provided seventeen additional spots which have been well-used. At the same time, staff installed no parking signs in areas where there were super locations after a notable incident where someone attempted to park the car and kind of ran through the fence there. So it has been try, there are various people have tried to use lots of that area. And as a result, we had to put some no parking signs up to stop some dangerous usage. Also during the same time period, the park was improved with drainage, ADA, some lighting improvements as a part of the Yountville Community Park projects. And during the public meetings in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, some of the attendees who were mostly neighbors to the park opposed any plans to expand parking on Lincoln or Jackson and suggested any parking should only be on the western side of the park away from the neighborhood. The town took that suggestion to heart and began discussions with an ad hoc group in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty where the plans were refined and is what we have before you tonight. In May of this year, the town entered into a settlement agreement with RH Galleries, requiring RH to make these improvements at their cost. Town improved the agreement, town council improved the agreement. And we're on a very tight timeline for this project with the RH Design Group submitting plans and specs and the town having a thirty-day clock to get the comments back to them on some of the design elements for the park parking. With that, I have a short video and then we will get into a short PowerPoint presentation. We can run the video. So if you see this video, it's just going to show you the slanted every sound areas.
Hold on. Could you just pause? Just pause for just a sec. I'm not sure who's running it.
Sam is.
Okay, so if that music is continuing, we cannot hear Joe.
Yeah.
If we can turn the volume down on the video. If that's the, the issue, unless you're not going to be voiceover, Joe.
I, I won't be voiceover. I'll, I'll let it run. It doesn't run very long, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can we, can we restart that video one more time, Sam, please? And what we, what we're looking at is just how steep the grade is, some of the access points, some of the, the vegetation, the trees that are along the way. And then we'll talk about that when we come to the other side. We can run that video one more time, please, Sam.
Uh, Sam, you're muted.
Were you able to hear Joe while that was running?
The music was, uh, over, was, was pretty loud.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you want me to try again without that?
Yeah, that'd be, that would be great. Thank you.
Sorry about that. First time trying this.
It was very fancy with the video.
Okay, there we go. Oh, let me share my screen. Oh, yeah, that would help, wouldn't it? Sorry, just one sec. Okay.
So if you notice the cars parked in the parking on the less, on the flatter side, this is coming towards the north end. And then, and then this is a really flatter, much flatter area. Also notice the height of the fence. This is pretty a pretty good example of what the top end of the wall is going to be along this whole running line. It's going to be a little bit different in some places, but for the most part, it's going to be about six feet high. So about what this fence is, is about what the top of the wall is going to be roughly. If you see some of the trees there that are going to be removed, a couple of those smaller oaks that are in the running line, and then that's the end of the video, unfortunately. We can go to the
Actually, before you leave that video, could you go back to the very first, say, ten seconds, some of it, because that's what we didn't see.
Yeah, so if you see how steep this is, this is really where the majority of the retaining wall is going to be. It is also where that access area, see that access area, the one closest to us? But just, just about across from that sign right there. So that's one of the access areas that they talked about during the P-RAC meeting. That's not really accessible and used by many people at all. The one, if we continue the slideshow a little, or the video a little bit, this one that's closer to the flatter park, car, where cars park is actually used a little bit more to access the picnic grounds. But it's by no means an ADA access. I mean, it's, it's pretty slippery at best and you, you need to have all your facilities to access any, at any of the access points along this fence line. It's, it's not ADA accessible. All right, we can go to the, to the PowerPoint now, Sam, please.
Okay, just a second. Figure out how to get out of that. Okay. Hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So just again, for this evening's conversation, we are looking for feedback only. There is no recommendation or approval needed or required because the settlement agreement is already in place and we are just looking at design elements and comments on some of those design elements that we will discuss this evening. I'll also walk you through the construction process so we can all understand a little bit about what it is and what it isn't. We will talk about some of the comments from P-RAC and the public comments and I will respond to some of those. And then at the end, we'll have a few questions. So with the next, we'll go right onto the next slide, please, Sam. So this is the site. It's laid out from north to south. You can see the parking spots in, in the running line of the retaining wall. So to walk you all, next slide, please, Sam. To walk you all through the process just a little bit, they're going to use a system called soldier piles and lagging. So they will take a drill similar to what you see. They drill a well with here in the valley. They'll drill a hole about six feet deep and they will put a, an I-beam into that hole vertically and fill that area around the I-beam with concrete. They will then, after setting those beams on the lineal fashion from north to south, they will place timbers, three by twelve Douglas fir timbers in between the spaces in the H-beam to fill those spaces and that will become the retaining wall. As I said earlier, the, the wall in, in, in for the most part is around six feet high. There are some places where it's going to be a little bit lower and some places where it's going to be a little bit higher. The deepest spot is going to be about six point four three feet or six foot five inches. There's going to be a natural stone wall similar to what you, what we see at the Napa Valley Lodge and we'll see examples of that. Overall, in terms of how much construction material is going to be removed or excavated, it's going to be a bit over twenty yards or two ten-wheelers, all of which will be used on the site to help with some of that sloped area that you saw, so that they can both save a bit on the in-hall of material and use the material that's onsite to get that grade up so where a car can park on there safely. There's no real excavation or off-haul of material. It's not hundreds of yards of material. It's twenty yards of material that's going to be excavated out by the drill. So I think they said there's, on, on, I think something in the neighborhood of fifty of these piles are going to be set in that running line from north to south. Next slide, please, Sam. This is the north end of the parking lot. So as you can see, the wall is solid. As I said, it's a, it's a three by twelve Doug, Douglas fir timber. It's a roll, really roll look. It's a rough finish timber. And then the H-beams are dark in color by nature. So this, this is the view as you would see it looking south on Washington. Next slide, please, Sam. I think this is the north end of Washington. There's, I, I think what's important to note here is there are going to be those trees that we talked about earlier, they're, they're going to be removed. And at this end, there's those three, what, where Sam is hovering over right now. Those are the, the oak trees that we saw. There are two much smaller maple trees just to the north of that, in between the entrance and the end of the park. They're two inches, I think. They're, they look like volunteers, something that just kind of sprung up and they're very young trees. Next slide, please. This is a view looking north. So I think there was a comment from one of the public comments was about crosswalk and, and as you can see, the crosswalk is in place and I actually have another picture of a, of a real-time shot of that same crosswalk. I think it's important to note that this, there's this crosswalk that's in place at the park path. There's also another crosswalk across Washington at Madison, that, that's about fifty feet south of this. So there are two crosswalks within fifty feet of each other. That's not typical, but because this is a park, I think that, that, that crosswalk was installed to help with getting the pedestrians onto the park path. Again, I think we need to look at the wall height from this shot. It, it's going to be closer to on-grade, so probably closer to the five-foot range as opposed to the six-foot range at some of the elevations where the grade drops near the drainage area at the center of the park. Next slide, please, Sam. This is a top view of that. So it shows the two access areas that they've created. Both of those, I think what we noticed and what Peter Went brought up to us during discussions about the access areas is people use these, will use these access areas to get into the park picnic area. So picnic area with all the redwood trees. And that's, and that's really primarily how people enter these picnic areas, both at this end and at the north end as well. So this is two well-constructed access points. If you notice, they have the steps coming up and then a ninety-degree turn. And that's similar to what we have now. I think there was a comment from one of the public comments that mentioned, had we considered safety and, and access on these access points. And these are constructed in the same fashion as the current access points. And we do have a a slide coming up that will show those and illustrate how they are, but it's made so that people just can't run out of the, a child couldn't just run straight out into the parking lot or out into the street. They have to navigate that ninety-degree turn and that's why they're constructed that way. Next slide, please. I think the other thing, go back that one slide, please, Sam. The other thing I think I neglected to mention was the streetlights and the lighting for this project. So currently there are three streetlights on this side of the street, one at each end of the street. So one here at the point and one at the north end of the park, at the, at Jackson Street, and then one about in the center. They're currently on a PG&E poll and the plan calls for three street, town standard streetlights to be installed during this project. They will not be energized until PG&E does the undergrounding portion of this project. That will be delayed a bit as, as PG&E works on their own timeline. The plan is to lay some conduits and prepare for a bit of the undergrounding portion of this project, but PG&E has their own design requirements and we're working to try to expedite this plan for the settlement agreement. So we, we are not adding additional lighting. We're not increasing the lighting. We're maintaining the status quo with the lighting, installing the town standard streetlights, which are nighttime, sky-friendly lights and they're based, they're what we see throughout town and, and we're very familiar with that lighting standard. So no, we are reflecting what we heard from both Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and from public comment about lighting and so in an effort to kind of make sure that we have a well-lit area and also something that addresses some of the concerns that we've heard in the meetings. Other lighting on the backside of the wall that would face the cars was not incorporated into this design. It's just the three streetlights that we have now. And then once the PG&E project gets through, it'll be the town standard streetlights that will take the place of those three streetlights. Okay, next, next slide, please, Sam. This is a view as you would see it from the park side of the wall. As you can see, the cars are backed in. The wall has quite a bit of greenery, shrubbery, although I will say what we have learned from past projects, both performing them as a, our parks maintenance group and also from our parks projects is that this drought-tolerant landscape requires a good bit more of install upfront in vegetation because it takes a little bit of time for that button up, those plants to mature and grow in. So we have definitely talked with the design team and Peter Went about planting more plants and vegetation and shrubbery in an effort to help screen and shade that wall a little bit and provide a bit more of the rural park-like element that we're used to seeing and, and not such a new install and avoid that, that kind of a situation. Next slide, please, Sam. So this is an elevation view of the park. And as you can, and I was talking about the the deepest part or tallest part of the fence and tall being what is going to be the highest part of the wall. And that's at that drainage pipe you see in about the center of the fence. And if you look at the center of the fence around the drainage pipe, just to the right, our right of that is a person standing there and that is about six feet tall. So as I mentioned, that wall at the drainage pipe area is about six point five, six point four three feet or six foot five inches. So just about the height of this, of the fences that exists now. The difference is going to be there's a bit of retaining wall with some natural Rutherford stone veneer and then the lagging Doug fir timbers on top of that. And as you can see on the left side of the, of the screen, the car backing in, there were some questions in public comments about, is the, is the fencing going to be high enough to block the lights? And the answer to that question is absolutely. It's about three and a half feet above finished surface for the top of the wall and that will shield both, most cars, SUVs and, and any trucks that may be a bit, raised a bit higher than the average vehicle. As you can see in the center of the picture, the person, they're trying to give you a sense of scale, both for the height of the veneer, about knee-high or a little higher. Somewhere in the neighborhood of three feet at the highest and, and that's only for the very center of the park and diminishes on either end almost to nothing. And then the top of the wall being right around six feet tall. Then that just gives you an idea of scale. And then the, the stone finish and the top of the wall, that kind of construct and how that's going to look. And then at the very bottom on the right-hand side, a shot of the Rutherford stone veneer, which is natural stone product. Again, answering that question that we had a public comment and Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and several members of the council. So just to confirm, it's a natural stone product. The Doug fir is a natural product and, and it should be a very kind of a look and feel to what we're kind of used to in, in our parks since, since I've been here for sure. Next slide, please. So I wanted to give you all a little idea of some of the comments that we had from Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and, and some of the public comment and, and just try to answer some of those questions and, and put some facts in front of what we know and have heard. So these are some of the current access points. I think one of the comments thought that there were six access points. There's actually four access points. The one here on the right hand of your screen is the fir, is the one that's the most southern of the four access points. And as you can see, it's calling that an access point is being very generous with that term and definition. It's really a planted area that people have used and, and we have provided some access because I think there was access there initially. And if you look down the shot, there's some trees that were or, or mature vegetation that was in the running line. And so when we built these fences, we constructed this access point to avoid having to remove additional trees or vegetation. uh avoid having to remove additional trees or vegetation, and that's the nature of this particular spot. Uh on the left hand side, uh you'll see uh that middle access point area that we talked about. Uh this is extremely steep. Not very many people use this one. There's one a bit further north, about twenty feet. Uh it's still in a steep area, not nearly as steep as this, but the access point is a bit more used because it's closer to the parking area. This is all no parking currently in this area because it's so steep. And as you can see, uh it's where the redwood trees are, it provides a lot of shade, and it's a well-used part of the park because of the shade feature. Next slide, please. Uh again, these are the this is just trying to show that southern access area and um and and trying to illustrate that it it's just it's it wasn't ever really uh accessible from for by very many people and certainly not uh ADA accessible. Next slide, please. Uh this is the current crosswalk. So we had that comment uh about uh installing additional crosswalks. We're always uh as engineers and design uh team uh and safety conscious uh reticent to put a crosswalk in the middle of uh of a of a road. Uh this is as close to kind of that line as I would ever want to get. Uh as I said, there's another crosswalk about fifty feet south of this that crosses at Madison and Washington. Uh but as you can see, this is a pretty narrow area. It it really is just wide enough for the two cars. Uh this is a typical shot of Washington Street during most times a day. There just isn't a lot of traffic here. Uh there isn't uh a lot of uh uh need for traffic because most people just go down Madison and twenty nine. Locals use this to access uh Highway twenty nine at times, and any parks users, of course, would be coming uh out of the park and using this to get uh into town or out of town using Madison or going out towards uh Yountville Cross. Uh next slide, please, Sam. Uh this is an example of the materials that we have been discussing this evening. So on your left hand side is a example of the Yountville Stone. And you can see it, it really is the type of stone that we're we have seen around the valley in various uh uh locations, in including right here in town. We have a slide coming up that will show you uh at the Napa Valley Lodge. It uses the same stone. Uh and it's it's a it's a kind of a lighter color, uh either beige, yellow, or kind of a light brown, depending on uh what part of the quarry they got it out of, but it definitely is something that we all recognize as being a local stone, a natural product. And then on the right hand side, there's a picture of the the timber, the Douglas fir, the three by twelve lagging, and then a picture of the stone sitting up against it, uh just to try to help illustrate and and uh give you all a real example as opposed to what you might think of in your head, which could be right or wrong, depending on your experience with this type of material. Next slide, please. Here is the Rutherford Stone at the Napa Valley Lodge. So as you can see, uh these are two different locations, and it looks uh like two different colors. It's the same stone. It depends on how the light hits it and where it came out of the quarry, and it's a natural product, so you're going to have some variations in color, but uh it it definitely matches uh what the what Peter Went, the landscape architect, has chosen, matches what is it already in the area, which we think is a good choice. Uh next slide, please, Sam. So these are the trees we were talking about. These particular trees on the left side is a liquid amber. Uh the roots are are always problematic with these trees. Um they are not the town preferred tree, so they wouldn't even be allowed to be replanted if uh if somebody uh remove this tree. It's not something that's on the list of trees to be uh used again. And then on the right hand side are the oak trees that are going to be removed. As you can see, there's three in the line here. Uh this tree has three splits coming off it, so at some point that would be problematic, but it these three trees are right in the running line. And as you can see, there's a fourth tree just past that white car. So this is five of the six large trees that are going to be removed, and by large, I mean around ten inches uh at breast height roughly, uh but they are directly in the running line of the fence uh and wall and uh need to be removed. Uh none of them are heritage, and the planning director was informed of this and agrees with our uh recommendation. Uh again, another shot of those same trees, as you can see, uh kind of growing on an angle and in and at some point, it would become problematic. On the far right hand side, you'll see that that's the redwood tree that's going to be removed, and you'll notice that there's uh the top of that tree is missing. If you recall last year hmm during a P S P S event, the tree uh to top of one of the trees blew off and was arcing across the power line. That was this tree. So uh um they PG&E topped it and it will really not ever regrow that top. It will continue to grow a bit taller, but this tree is going to be removed. Uh our harvest, I'm sure, would recommend the removal, but it's in the running line of the of the fence uh and wall. It needs to be removed in any case. So that's si- that's the six of the six large trees and then the two small saplings that we talked about that are two inches are at the northern end uh for a total of eight trees. Next slide, please. Uh this is the plant uh and tree portfolio. So these are the plants uh that currently make up the portfolio in the park. Uh they do well in uh the park. There is a climbing fig uh on the upper of kind of the middle section uh at the very top, right? Yep, right there. So that's what uh our landscape architect is selected for hoping to kind of uh shield the wall. It's a fast growing vine. It will uh help kind of shade and shield that wall, and in a couple of years, uh it'll look more like climbing fig than it will anything else, which would really be a nice feature on that side of the park. And then, of course, you are familiar with the rest of the palette. They're all plants that we use uh and have used in that park. Uh and and there's going to be some additional uh plants and trees as well uh to help fill in uh the vegetation and the landscaping as we discussed earlier. Next slide, please, Sam. Uh oh, my, I guess I thought I had another slide in there. So uh there was a couple of things that I wanted to mention before I finish up. Uh number one is uh we talked about the crosswalk and uh some of the traffic calming that uh has been mentioned. Uh we're going to ask the design team to narrow down the lanes a little bit with the striping. Once the parking lot is done, uh there isn't a whole lot of traffic that comes through there. We did discuss a speed bump. Uh that still is an option. They they also discussed the back end parking and how difficult uh that might be or impossible that might be. Uh we looked around quite a bit. There are several examples of back end parking. Uh there's one here in Windsor. They do it with great success. We haven't had a lot of uh negative feedback on the back end parking. Uh cars, the current model of cars all have uh cameras in the back of their car, so it makes it a much simpler evolution. Uh as you saw with some of our illustration, the wall is high enough to block any lights uh either from the taillights or other lights. It could come from uh the cars. The lighting itself uh is pretty much status quo with no uh wall lighting or additional lighting other than uh the three lights that are currently in place. The elevation of the wall is uh six foot four at its deepest point, but basically, it's about the top of where the fence is now. So in in real terms of how people are going to perceive it, there's not going to be a a lot of difference in uh in the wall height now or from the fence. The wall height to be constructed from the fence as it sits now. Uh but you I'm trying to look through some of my notes to make sure I covered uh oh, oh, the last thing I wanted to talk about was of restrooms. There was a comment about blocking uh restrooms. Uh it's our P rec uh meeting, and that's something that we will certainly bring back to discuss with P rec. Currently, the all of our restrooms uh are open twenty-four hours a day, um and that gives people access when they need it. Um and we will bring that item back to Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for future discussion uh to talk about installing locks on all the restrooms in all of our parks. Uh it's something that we can certainly do, uh but I think it's important to have a bit of discussion around that um and talk about the pros and cons of installing restroom locks and the other uh items that uh we were asked to discuss uh during this me uh meeting on the parking. Uh with that, I'm happy to answer uh any questions you have and get any feedback or direction you may have regarding uh the construction of the wall and the parking places on the east side of Washington at Yountville Community Park.
Thank you, Joe, and and you're right that uh any other elements of the community park as a whole don't have any bearing on this conversation. This is specific to the parking lot uh design and the progress that's been made there. So thank you for clarifying that. Can you go over just again very quickly uh the timeline? Uh you talk about it being fairly tight. I know that we basically set that timeline when we approved this project uh because we did not want there to be lapses in the progress. And uh certainly, it's an aggressive timeline, but could you, are there dates that you could give us as opposed to thirty days here, sixty days there? Uh where where we are expecting things to proceed?
So uh right now, we are in the re- the onus is now on the design team still. So once the design, once we settle on the design, the design elements and and finish this up, and we're very close to that now at this meeting, uh they will return that to us and the clock will begin ticking, and we'll have twenty-five, thirty days to return comments to them. So by the end of August, Mayor, we will have to have comments back to them. Uh and then and then they'll have uh s- sixty to ninety days to begin construction on the uh wall itself. Uh so it's a very tight timeline. We really, as you mentioned, we really don't have time uh to pause uh because of the settlement agreement. Uh it would probably and and Gary could talk to that if it's required. Um but as far as the construction and the timeline on the construction, we do have the RH uh Adobe uh civil engineer Casey McDonald here, and she can certainly talk to uh what it's going to take them in terms to construct the wall uh once we give them the permits.
Well, I'm concerned that uh this is our only meeting in August, and we don't meet again until September. I think it's first. Uh i- in which case, you're saying that you want uh final decisions made by the end of this month. How are we managing that? Is that as you answer or is that you answer?
Go ahead, go ahead. I think I think uh well, uh yeah, so um the right now, the onus is on us, Mayor, and by us, I mean the council, to provide comments, and we need those this evening so that we can provide that feedback to the design team. Uh because the clock is now ticking on our side of the ledger, so we basically have thirty days to issue a permit to them uh based on their design.
So I guess my point is uh you get feedback from us tonight. Um I certainly want to see uh based on whatever the feedback is, if changes are made, modifications uh that we see a final final that is being presented to them. Uh and that may have to happen outside of a regular meeting on the first of September then. Um Steve, what's your, what are your thoughts on that?
That would be correct. I mean, if, you know, depending on what your comments and direction are, you know, one, if there's some straightforward ones, we can send you the elements back to make sure everybody's comfortable with that and then proceed. If it is something that the council feels warrants an additional meeting, then we have a special meeting for you to uh finalize this. Um we have actually, as you know, we took the additional step of going to the P rec to try to get feedback. Found that very helpful, incorporated a a number of thoughts from P rec, including the odd space and some few other things, but we're really looking at if there's something really significant, you know, we need to be able to give um some meaningful direction if there's something that's missing from this, or if there's a design element or or functionality that is not there.
Right, thank you. Yeah, and just a reminder, we're not retrying this project. Project's been approved, and we're now looking at uh either accepting the design as presented or making some um adjustments to that. Uh so hopefully, we'll be able to keep our comments focused on that.
It's the engineering and the landscape design.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Dorn Becker.
Thank you. Um thank you, Joe. So I have a question about the orientation of the back end parking on um the west side there. And um I, in my mind, if I'm driving northbound uh on um on Washington, and I come through that intersection, I'm still going northbound on the west side of the park, and then I want to uh back into those parking spots. It seems to me that it it be sort of pulling out into the southbound lane in order to uh align up to get into those parking spots in the orientation that I saw on the, is that correct? Yeah, see, so you'd have to come up and then pull out into traffic so that you could back into these.
Uh well, I mean, I think that the the way it's angled right now, it would be um certainly, you you're going to be into the oncoming traffic in in some fashion, but for the most part, you're going to be uh pulling up and then backing right into that spot, uh basically staying in your lane uh with with a bigger car or uh maybe somebody needing a bit more room possibly uh using that additional uh the the opposite lane. But based on uh advice from our deputy director, John Ferns, and uh and and from the design team at RH, uh this they they and I agree uh thought this was the best design and the safest design for backing cars in. Uh and then the other part of that uh council member is when they're pulling out, now they're pulling out and heading uh away down south and 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 that also that gives them the ability to pull right out, head south, down uh Washington, out Madison and out twenty-nine and avoid going around into the park. Uh and and maybe possibly uh with the headlights and and the other annoyances uh that we've heard from public comment. So we're trying to balance uh the parking and 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 uh leaving uh along with the public comments about uh the the traffic and and lights of uh coming into people's homes along uh that edge of uh Lincoln there uh on the eastern edge of the park.
And I just really do want to emphasize that we took a lot of heart to the comments and are trying to figure out how to minimize this the the impact, and especially here, we're talking more about the employee parking at the and the potential positive side to the back end parking is that the employees do not have to negotiate around the park through that area affecting the neighbors. They back in, they pull out, and as Joe was saying, they don't circulate around the park. They get out and then they walk down. But I'm also going to say to you, if if this is something that you're not comfortable with, we flip the orientation, you lose a little landscaping on one end, pick it up on the other end, it's roughly the same. But I want you to all understand why we're recommending this. It really, really is all about hearing the feedback, trying to minimize the interaction of the employees with the residents in the residential zone.
Um my next question is um I really like the veneer, the stone veneer, but why will it not go uh i- is it on the interior side of the wall facing into the park all the way to the top? Or is that too just a, you know, sort of a small amount at the very bottom, and then the bo- the top of the of the wall looks different and more um industrial?
Uh yeah, the 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 stone veneer goes up roughly three feet. Uh and then uh the the timbers that you saw a picture of uh are basically uh about parking lot level and then up that the next three feet uh to shield the uh the lights from the cars.
Well, wouldn't it just um be more attractive and still shield the light to carry on that um the the stone veneer up to the top?
Uh I I think the and I'm uh the art, I'm unfortunate, the landscape architect isn't here, but I think the feeling and sentiment was that it's just too much stone. They wanted to try to balance that stone look with something that's a bit more uh uh rural and 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 that timber kind of gives it that feel. And then uh remember, we talked about the climbing fig that's going to be planted on that wall as well, so it's gonna but basically uh cover that entire wall at some uh point in the not too distant future, and that wall is basically going to be a a wall of ivy, for lack of a better term. That's kind of what it's going to look like.
Concerns were expressed that they didn't want to see, you you know, and and if you go to the very north end, you'll be seeing a wooden fence there. Um and then you're transitioning. So we heard from residents that they didn't necessarily want to look at, you know, they were calling it potentially a nine or twelve foot wall. So I mean, it's a it's a part on the landscape designer to break up so that it doesn't look like this monstrosity, and you've got different textures and and looks incorporated into it.
I think what they were concerned about, council member, was uh and the comments that we heard initially were they didn't want a big concrete wall. I think what they were concerned about, council member, was, and the comments that we heard initially were, they didn't want a big concrete wall. And so, the design team heard that and came back with something that wasn't a concrete wall. It can still act as retaining wall, provide the safety and engineering that you need for retaining wall with some of the design sediments that, that were, that we expect here in Yountville. So, this is what they, this, this is the design they came up with to get away from some of that concrete industrial kind of feel that retaining wall is usually associated with, or a block wall. This, this wall was a different approach to that retaining wall system that we're all familiar with.
And they, looking at it, are those the number of parking spots that, I mean, that looks very dense, having that incredibly dense line of parking spots along there? Is that what was agreed upon?
It's twenty-three spots for, for the builder, the constructor of the, of the lot, RH, and it's twenty-one spots for the town. So, that's a typical parking setup. That's what we have at the upper end of the park. It, it, that's, I mean, we're, it's not any less dense than any other parking that we have, that's parallel parking or slanted in, angled parking anywhere in town, council member. Whether it's that, in front of Stewart Cellars or at the north end of the park or now with this latest iteration on the, on this eastern edge of Washington Street in the right-of-way.
And then, on the access points, I think you said there were stairs. Should that not at least have one ramp to be ADA?
No, we prefer the ADA to be closer to restrooms and the playground and the path. That's a better location for them. So, we're going to construct the ADA spots closer to where they are now, either at the north end of the park where there's a couple of ADA spots. Or we, we only really need to add one additional spot. And right now, we're in discussion with the design team and they're talking about adding the additional ADA spot either right where that arrow's going or down near the restroom on Lincoln, right in front of the restroom where there's already an ADA spot. So, both of those are nice, flat spots that have access to the path and ADA access all throughout. It's a much better location, a much safer location, and much more well-set up for ADA access.
Did I hear that, and did I understand that you're going to be adding a restroom at the north end of the park?
We're going to be, you all approved with the last CIP, a restroom that's going to include an additional restroom facility where the, where the restroom is at the north end of the park. It's now a single restroom. We're going to add a two restroom facility up there to meet the demand of the park, at that end of the park where the playground is.
And on the lighting with the three town lights, that they will shine over where the cars are, is that correct?
The three town lights are going to act similar to what a streetlight does now. So, it's going to be similar to where the PG&E lights shine onto the travelway and onto that little gravel parking area. Now that those three, the town lights will shine onto the parking area and onto the travelway, that's correct.
And will they be positioned so that they look away from the interior of the park?
They, they, I mean, we can put some shields on them, but those lights are similar to the other lights that we all went out and looked at a couple of years ago where we went into somebody's yard and it was so dark, we couldn't even hardly see to get back to the street. So, it's a similar light setup. It's a nighttime-friendly sky, nothing above a hundred and eighty degrees, no light splash at all. And basically, after thirty feet out, there's not any real light. So, we were, we, we have that town standard light system and that's what we'll use. We can install shields and we can install a cooler light. And we have learned that for sure. So, we will, we will, we will do those two things. We'll install a little bit cooler light and put the shield on to help dampen some of that lighting.
And then, my final question is about the, oh, the lighting. Do we, is it really necessary to keep the lights on in the park all night long? Isn't that, I, I have heard over and over from some of the neighbors around the park that it just invites, you know, visitation in the middle of the night. And it's alarming, people get frightened by that extra traffic coming to the park in the middle of the night. So, I mean.
We're, we're going to, this, we're talking about the parking lot. We're not talking about the entire park. So, we need to keep focused on the elements that we're reviewing about the design of this particular parking project.
Okay, thank you, that's my questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dorman.
If I have to.
Steve, go ahead.
In answer to Councilmember Dorman, one of the things that we really heard from people, they did not want to see a fence that was similar to the block fence behind the community center. They felt that, I'm just, it came to me as you were having the conversation, that they didn't feel that was the correct aesthetic. And so, that's what's led to that. And to your point, Mayor, P-RAC is going to look at a few of the other issues at a regular, at another future meeting and will work on trying to improve the situation for everybody with those.
Yes, now Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Tagliabashi. So, let's start at the north end, please, excuse me, the fence that faces the cemetery. Could that remain hogwire?
There, there is some bit of retaining wall that's going to go in there. And I think the, the problem with the hogwire, council member, is it's going to allow lights to shine through. So, even if it's a backup light, we're really sensitive to the comments that we've heard about lights in the park and lights shining in the park. And even though it's a few hundred yards away or a couple hundred yards away from someone's home, the effort with that wall in avoiding the hogwire fence is to, is to help with the, the light and, and to stop the light from ever being possible.
So, I'm, I'm talking, sorry, I'm talking more about, and I can never remember if it's Lincoln or Jackson, but I think it's Jackson. The piece on Jackson, that faces the cemetery.
Yeah, we're not changing, we're not changing that, that.
Because one of the views, I think, showed it as a solid fur fence.
Yeah, that, that, nothing on those sides. The only thing that we're talking about tonight and the only thing that's changing is, is the parking area on Washington. So, all the elements that are in place now on Jackson and Lincoln are staying as they are, with the exception of an ADA spot that we're going to fit in either at that north end where the arrow is or over by the restroom on Lincoln. And that, that's the only change is for, for any part of that park. I can't say that enough times. We've had some comment on that. And that hogwire fence is going to stay in place. All those parking spots are going to stay in place. The restroom is going to change to a two restroom, but that was approved by council at, this year, with this year's budget. And there are no additional improvements for any part of the park, other than the parking we're talking about tonight.
Okay, and now, thank you. So, the, the height of the fence, I actually walked the fence line down in the park and outside the park the other day. When I stood down in the park, the fence was about my height. And I think I'm about five-four or so. So, are you saying that when you bring that grade across and I'm standing, because the bottom of the park is not going to change, I'm standing there. Are you saying that the fence will only be the same height that it is now? Or will it be three and a half feet higher?
No, it'll be, it'll be roughly the same height that it is now. I, the, the math that, that I, that was provided to us on the civil drawings shows at that pipe there about the center of the, of the park, that's the deepest part of the wall. It's going to be about six-point-four-three feet high, including the retaining wall and the fence. Top of the wall is going to be six-point-four-three, that's six foot, five and one-eighth inches.
And that's from when I'm standing in the park as it is currently configured?
That's correct. That's from, that's from current OG, what they call OG, original grade, to top of a wall. So, from OG to top of a wall, six-point-four-three feet.
Got it.
If I can, I'd be able to jump in. I think the, the question here, if I'm hearing you correctly, Vice Mayor, from the inside side of the wall to the parking lot side of the wall, will the grade be different? So, if you're standing next to your vehicle, are you higher than the wall? And if you're standing inside the park, are you at the height of the wall? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, if you're standing at your car outside of the wall, you're going to be higher than the wall. And if you're standing on the park ground at the picnic area, the wall is going to be, it's, it's, it's as tall as I am. So, it's going to be a little taller than you, but it's not going to be much taller functionally than it is now. I mean, it's roughly the same height.
From the parking spaces, it is shorter to the person standing there than we are in the park.
Okay.
There is a grade, there is a grade difference between the parking area and Washington Street and the, the ground in the park.
Perfect, yes.
That's correct. It's three and a half feet, council member, from the parking area to the top of a wall. It's about six, six and a half feet from the, from the grade in the park to the top of the wall. Just to give you a, a, that, to create that difference for you.
Thank you. And then, that is going to be, the way the fur is, it's just solid slats, right? There's no airspace or no?
It's, it's whatever airspace is in between the natural, I mean, you know, there, it's a natural wood product. So, there are going to be some variations, but it's not planned airspace, no ma'am. They're made to sit right on top of each other.
Is it possible, and I understand the issue with the lights, et cetera, et cetera, the taillights, I get all that. But is it possible at this point to say, we would like for the fur portion of it to not be solid?
No, because the whole point of the solid point, I mean, it would either be a solid fence or that lagging because of the comments that we've heard from the, the, the public, both public comments, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee comments, and just comments in general that are not on the official record about the, the concern with lights shining across the park. So, any gaps?
I, I get that, I get that. I'm asking if, because I am concerned that people do not understand what the cause and the effect. If they are concerned about lights, then they are going to get a six-foot-tall solid fence. If they would give some on the lights, we could put some space in there so that when you are in the park, you're not looking at a six-foot solid wall. I'm asking, is it possible, from a design standpoint, to seek that change?
Sure, I mean, we could put hogwire fence up there.
So, so let's, let's understand this and use what Joe has been explaining. It is not going to be a six-foot stone wall. It is going to be covered with greenery. It's, it's no different than what we've seen grow around the former Red Restaurant. Started out as wire fence, it's grown into a green fence. So, it will not be six feet of the stone veneer, it will not be six feet of wood. It will, in, in a couple of seasons, it will be three feet of stone on the bottom with about three, three and a half feet of greenery on top.
Not much different functionally from what it is now, council member. I mean, it's hogwire now, but there's a lot of greenery there. And, you know, it's, it's, it's just, there's not, it's, it's almost a distinction without a difference.
And there are going to be plantings not attached to the wall that are additional, providing additional softening in the foreground, I'd say, planting area in front of the wall as well.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I understood correctly, there's not going to be any lighting along the fence?
That's correct, that's correct. Completely eliminated that based on comment and feedback.
I'm not really understanding, why are we narrowing the lanes? Do we have to do that to make room for the parking?
No, to, to help with traffic calming, because people wanted traffic calming. So, we were going to ask, we did the same thing on Yountville Cross. It's not a real narrowing of the lanes, it's a slight narrowing of the lanes. And just that little bit makes people feel like, oh, I got to slow down a little bit because it's a little narrower here. It's just a kind of a trick of the eye. And it's, and it's something that we can do to help with traffic calming, because that's one of the comments we heard.
Okay, and then, on the trees that we're taking out, are they doing replacement trees for those?
They are.
And are they doing like our, like we discussed on the previous agenda item, they'll do in lieu, et cetera, et cetera?
We, we generally exceed that standard. So, where most would buy the twenty-four-inch box, we generally go out and buy the sixty-inch tree from Main Street Trees, so.
When you say "we," is that the town?
Town, yeah, the, the town.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't make my question clear. Is, is part of our deal with RH that they replace those trees?
Yeah, this project essentially, yeah, that's, that's, there won't be an in lieu, they'll plant trees. So, it, it's essentially, really, for all intents, this is our project and they're, and they're kind of paying for it. So, that's how we look at it, that's how they look at it. And they're planning based on our own guidelines and policy. And we meet or exceed the policy in every example that I've been here since I've been in town. So, like I said, we're, a thirty-six-inch tree might be the standard. We generally go out and buy a sixty-inch tree from Main Street Trees. It's a, she collects acorns and seeds from the valley, grows them from those seeds, and then we go out and buy them from Jean and plant them here in town. That's how we've done it, ever since I've been here. And they pay, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just wanted, that's a really, RH is responsible for all costs associated with the project. And they will pay permit fees, art impact fee, because it's a commercial project. I just wanted, that's a great question, Vice Mayor. So, I just want to make sure that they are responsible for all of the costs associated with the engineering, planning, permitting, and construction costs.
And they have been really, really cooperative, like really cooperative. So, I, I can't thank them enough for making this as easy as can be. We've had an awful lot of ask and they have met or tried to meet that on every occasion. So, they've been great partners to this point.
And the back-end parking, I guess, Mayor, that's really, I don't really have a question, but when we get to comments, I do have a comment on that. But that is the, those are my questions, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions from council members? I'm not seeing any hands. So, just to clarify, because, okay, Councilmember Mower, go ahead. You're muted.
Obviously, I cannot unmute and raise my hand at the same time. So, the possible speed bump. Why is, can you tell us a little bit about that? Some of those have a small hump and some have a big hump. Is the town recommending that? Or are you picking between the narrow striping and the speed bump? So, just, can you discuss that a little bit?
Sure, we're, we're just kind of throwing out some options. And honestly, there's not a lot of traffic on that road. It was just a, a, a suggestion and, and, and an offer to provide some comfort for some of the feedback and, and public comment that we had and some of the concern. I think it does help a little bit and, and it probably will slow down people a little bit. It's a relatively inexpensive install. And if it helps make people feel a little safer, then I think it's a good, it's, it's worth the price.
Do you think that narrowing the lanes with the striping would be an equal trade-off in your street traffic calming experience?
I, I think there's probably, probably arguments to be made for both sides. If it was me and, and, and we made that decision early with Yountville Cross Road, we narrowed it and seen this slow it down a little bit. I think we get bang for the buck on that. And if it doesn't, we can always install the speed bump later.
One thing, yeah, we could look at that. I think the real issue on the speed bump, it's not so much the going north from Madison on Washington, it's the southbound traffic on Washington coming from out of the county as they approach in to help negotiate them slowing down. That makes sense when they're coming in from the county up by the cemetery and dropping. So, but I mean, it's certainly one of those, if the council has a concern, you can make the suggestion that we defer the speed hump until we've had the project, seen how it's looking, go that route. That is certainly a, a very logical approach to take.
And then, a little more discussion on the back-end parking. So, has there been much analysis about whether that backing in is a safer or a less safe way of parking? Seems to me that if you are arriving at the park or arriving at work, you're going to take a little more time to back in. And, but then, when you leave, especially work, when everyone's ready to hit the road and go home, you're going to be able to pull out and they'll have, you know, eight hours of work behind them. And so, they'll be tired and that'll be easier. Does, does that, is that, or is it really six of one, half a dozen of the other, which way we do it?
It, it was, it's really driven by the comments that we heard about lights shining in, in people's homes. And, and we're making every effort to try to diminish that to the extent we can. And this was a solution that our Deputy Director John Ferns thought was a solution. uh, thought was a solution. The design team from RH agreed, uh, town manager, uh, thought it, and I thought it was a great idea, and, and that's, and that's where we are. But it does, I think you're right. It does make it easier to pull out at the end of the night. They're pulling out and heading right out of town and getting on Madison, uh, and heading on down twenty-nine. So I, I think that it, it kind of adds, there is some benefit to it beyond, uh, the lights.
And then, a final question on that topic. Uh, if the council were to, to make a majority decision to change that, is that like a big engineering? Would that have any other ancillary effects on anything else we're talking about?
I, 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 I would say no, but, uh, Casey McDonald from the RH Design Team is here, and she could answer that probably better than I could.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I could just chime in on that. No, it's from a perspective, whether, whether we do kind of the angled, you know, in or back in, it doesn't really make sense. I will say that I know we work with the town of Windsor, and they actually, you know, they said it took people a while to get used to it. But they really do like the back-end parking, and I, I think you end up kind of having the same turning movement. And it, it, it's helpful because you're not blindly backing out, but you can actually see when you're actually pulling out onto the street. And people, you know, people tend to stop as you, you know, if you pull up and back in, so it slows traffic down a little bit. But you can see, you know, you've got a lot more sight, you know, and you can see when you're pulling out, so I, I think it's a little bit safer. Um, but it, it, I think there's pros and cons. It works either way. But they do, they do like it in Windsor, um, and that, they, that's fairly new, because they've got it pretty often.
And I'll just ask a quick follow-up question, since we've got your attention here. Would you basically equate it to, uh, parallel parking? When you have people, uh, somebody signals to back in, the traffic has to stop behind them, and they back into the space. It's basically the same thing, but in a at a, at an angle instead of, uh, parallel. Is that, is that accurate?
It's, it's not as disrupt, disruptive, because you're, you don't, you're not really taking up, you're, you're kind of, you can almost make that without really, you know, going into the other lane. But yeah, they, they do have to stop to let you go in, so it is similar to parallel parking.
And maybe less likely to have people do it back and forth a half a dozen times to get close to the curb?
Yeah, you're probably not hitting as many cars.
Okay, uh, thank you. Councilmember Durham.
Can you, uh, Joe, can you speak to, uh, because a public comment was made as well. The amount of spots that are here in terms of density, are they not the same width as the parking spaces that are in front of Stuart Cellar? Is that correct or not?
Uh, I, Casey would probably be able to speak to that better than me, but, uh, it's my understanding that it's just typical width for parking. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what they've done.
It's not that we're forcing in a certain amount, it's the typical width for parking.
That's, that's correct.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Durham?
No.
But as a matter of fact, council member, they actually removed a couple of, at least one spot that was at the bar- very south end, that was parallel, where, uh, they were trying to maximize the use of space, and uh, both Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and public comments suggested it was, uh, not the best use of that space, and cut, probably should be left to landscaping, and as, as a result, uh, the RH Design Team removed that spot, uh, and put it back to landscaping. Uh, so it actually cost them a spot. So, uh, as opposed to forcing more spots in, they're actually using less spots than the pre, uh, the original design.
Thank you. And then how much asphalt's gonna be used for this project?
I don't have the answer to that.
Sorry. Joe, in your personal professional opinion of doing asphalt on every street in Yountville every six months, what is your opinion? What is your opinion, I will take as professional, on the amount of asphalt that will be used, do you think?
Uh, are you looking for a quantity? Are you looking for, uh, uh, something to kind of compare it to? Uh, I, I mean, it's.
It's a parking, it's a parking strip with parking spots in it, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. I mean, it, it's, it's a forty-odd spot, so it's, you know, yeah. It's, it's, it's not a small amount of asphalt, but it's not a huge amount of asphalt.
Very good. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Thank you. A follow-up question on the parking. Uh, the compact percentage, I noticed there are some compacts on quote the town side, some on the RH side. Are those, uh, as they should be? I mean, is everybody getting the, the split?
Casey, can you comment on that?
You know, um, I don't, I don't know that. There may be more on one side. That, but that doesn't mean that we can't, we can't even it out. I, I do think that there's probably more on the town side than there is on the, um, RH side, from what I can remember, but we, we certainly can, you know, swap those. It's just kind of, that's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
So, follow-up to that, uh, why are we doing any compact spaces at all?
It does help us with the width, um, to get a few more, um, spaces in there, because you, you lose a foot, so essentially, you know, you have eight compact stalls, or nine compact stalls, you, you gain another stall.
And you typically would put those at either end?
Uh, we, we've got them, we've got them in a couple places, um, specifically because of the, the poles there, so that those can go in with the power poles that are there now. Um, so that's, they, it was strategic how we, how we placed them. Um, but we could certainly look at, you know, shifting some around, it would only be, you know, two to probably get around a pole, because they, they're shorter too, so it helps us still get this, those stalls in, because who knows when that's gonna be underground?
Right, well, we certainly hope it's not, uh, very far in the future that it's gonna be underground, and it's one of the, um, most significant benefits to the project. Uh, let's also understand that, uh, compact parking spaces are rarely, uh, uh, honored. So, if they can be, I think it makes sense, as you describe it, that there's a, there's an obstruction that lends itself, if, if it's a power pole or whatever it might be, um, makes sense to, to shorten them there. But, um, you know, we see it all, all over the place. SUVs will park in a compact space, and that's the only option. So, that's why I ask about where they are strategically, so that they are, we're minimizing that squeeze that we see, and, and certainly in a lot of urban areas, we see it certainly behind the Wells Fargo Bank. Uh, nobody respects compact spaces when that's the last thing, that's the last option, so. But I understand what you're saying about, if it costs you a space or two, uh, then we, we should have some of those in there. Uh, okay, um, any other comments, questions from other council members at this point? Seeing no others, I think, uh, I've either brought up or will hold questions. Um, oh, just the, um, the, since we just did reference utility undergrounding, do we have any estimate at all? I know when you said PG&E, we know that that can sometimes be a delay. Any sense at all at, um, how we might be able to, um, schedule that?
Well, it's, it's, PG&E drives the bus on that one, and it's all, a lot of it is based on what they have going on at the time and, and where we get in the queue, so it's gonna be months, not weeks, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, all right, so I think that covers it for the comments on the staff report. Uh, let's get to public comments, so setting the show up here. I have four comments listed, Eric Knight, Holly Hanson, Pam Reeves, and then one from Lloyd Penrod, Debbie Wellborn.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor, and we have one more addition from even Miller that was submitted earlier. So the first one that I will read is Holly Hanson. "I actually oppose this arrangement which accommodates a scofflaw business, but it is already approved." "I am interested in hearing discussion about the back-end parking." Just a moment, I'm gonna mute somebody. There you go. Uh, "I assume that is to limit, I limit lights on people at the park, but would like to hear about that element as it might be harder for people to accurately back into those spaces without damaging other cars. "I would also like to see a more realistic set of architects' drawings of the various views. "There are no cars shown in the spaces, so it gives a misrepresentational image of an open, uncrowded area. "In reality, I imagine that this will look like a used car lot with forty-four potential vehicles cheek by jowl." The next comment is from Eric Knight, and it says, "Mayor and Town Council, first, "From my short review of the civil engineering plans and staff report, I am thankful that it appears "The wall is not as tall as I anticipated, but I am very concerned by the inadequate design plans "Presented to P-RAC and per council's discussion Tuesday night. I am in complete agreement with the P-RAC comments "In the staff report and do not think the council should take action until these questions have been "Satisfactorily answered by the applicant. "After reviewing the limited street and park views, I strongly recommend council direct staff to tell the applicant "To review and amend their proposal to include traffic calming measures and landscaping in the right-of-way on Washington Street "And to provide more information about their lighting plan. "Please consider removing one or two parking spots to add "At least two bulbouts in this area for limited low landscaping and possibly small trees "To reduce the massing of the asphalt and to provide a traffic calming measure in which "Cop- excuse me, a traffic calming measure as vehicles' traffic passes the park. "A bulbout with a crosswalk across from the Napa Valley Lodge "Will also provide residents and visitors walking on the west side of the street a safer passage to a park entrance. "After reading some of the public comments and my conversation with park neighbors, please have staff review the lighting plan, park rules, and sign it." "Lighting should offer safety for park visitors and the neighbors, but should not contribute to twenty-four-hour use around the park. "Please limit additional lighting. "Signage at park entrances, entrances should clearly indicate the park and restrooms close at an appropriate time after sunset. "This review can be done timely, and with reduced visitors in Yountville, there is time this summer for a complete review of the parking area "Impacts on the park and nearby residents. "As I mentioned in a recent letter, I do not support the approved lease agreement, because I think the town should keep greater "Control of a public right-of-way, but that is not the issue before you tonight. "In parentheses, please read this letter into the record if time allows. Eric Knight." The next public comment is from Lloyd Penrod and Debbie Wellborn. "Dear Town Council, while the overall parking plan design seems unobtrusive, "We do have concerns about the project due to past experiences that have not been resolved. "Residents along Lincoln Street are still being impacted by, impacted by the twenty-four-hour lighting and restroom accessibility. "The stretch of Lincoln from Washington to just past Monroe is lit up all night, affecting over a dozen households. "This lighting draws in traffic and noise after park hours and into the early morning hours. "We would suggest timers to shut off the lights or severely dimming them after a certain time. "The public restroom in the southern area used to have automatic door locks to lock it after park hours. "We is, we would suggest that once the proposed north restroom is expanded, that "They both have these automatic door locks. "Even if employees use the parking around the park, there is no reason to have a bathroom open and the area lit up "At all, at all night. It should not be a town responsibility "To provide restroom facilities for driver services and random visitors all night long. "While the town is moving forward with sound dampening for pickleball courts, "Which surely aren't used every night and don't go late into the night, the seventeen households along Lincoln Avenue "Deal with car doors slamming, car alarms, and noise from activity nearly every night at all hours of the night "Due to the lighted twenty-four-hour restrooms. "As for lighting in the new parking area, we'd again go back to the newer lights on Lincoln. "We were told that the light would cast at a sixty-five-degree angle, and it couldn't possibly shine in our windows. "What wasn't taken into account was that the base of the light sits higher across the street, thus changing the calculation. "As a result, we have light shining in all our windows facing the street. A detailed lighting plan should be included. "We would like the Parks and Rec Committee and the Town Council to address both our lighting "And open restroom concerns at a future meeting. "We would also ask that you remember these past failures to protect residents around the park when you consider these new changes. "Attention to the detail is so important to an outcome that works for everyone. "We also noted there are no details available regarding the proposed Wi-Fi, and with the way the RH parking "Was pushed through and voted on so quickly, there are concerns about the process and allowing time for public input." And the next public comment is from Pam Reeves. "Council members, I would like to comment on the parking plan for RH at Yountville Park. "Aside from the fact that this parking scheme will put the final nail in the coffin of the park, "This plan does not consider the residents around the park, and there are gaps in the information provided in the packet. "Number one, the renderings are very misleading with respect to topography. "The lower elevations in the park grass area and main picnic area "Will very much influence how looming the fence looks, especially at the south end of the park. "Number two, there is no indication of location for the new streetlights at the north and south end of the park. "What will be illuminated? The parking spaces or the street? How bright will they be? And what will the design look like? "Number three, lighting on the proposed wall along Washington Street. Will that only be downlight? How bright? "Number four, the direction of the slanted spaces effectively limits how people will feel "Safe to park in the back-end parking spaces. "They must be going north to accomplish parking in the safest manner, "Creating incentive for drivers to, drivers to circle the block to get the car going the right direction. "This will result in additional traffic on Jackson and Lincoln Streets, impacting those neighbors negatively. "Number five, backing is, backing is a skill not many modern drivers do not have. "This will create unnecessary stress and safety issues on Washington Street. "Number six, back-end spaces will not protect residents from light intrusion. "The red lights, backup lights will be just as obtrusive as the headlights. "Do the fence heights take into consideration the second-floor apartments on Lincoln Street? "Some suggestions, approve only straight-in spaces to make them accessible from either direction. "In parentheses, eliminating the pressure in the future of making any of the, any of the existing streets "Around the park one way. "Next, require a detailed lighting plan for the new work, which should include modifications to the existing lighting "To make it acceptable to neighbors. "In parentheses, perhaps installing timers and even relocation of offending poles. "Next, planting oaks on the western edge should be done to resurrect some of the former stature of the park. "Too much matching greenscape and trees that stay, quote, manageable, makes the park look suburban. "This park will now be a spot of green in the middle of paved parking "Rather than its former state as a more casual and natural expanse. "Soft, organic edge with some parking around it on the streets. "Those are two very different feelings, and it is sad that the council continues to do damage to this park "In the guise of, quote, updating. Pam Reeves. "And then my last comment will be from Stephen Miller. "And he says, he is concerned about the design of the parking along the west edge of Yountville Park. "I carefully reviewed the documents submitted for the redesign and hopped on my bike to look at the existing conditions. I have a couple of comments. "Firstly, as RH has demonstrated in the past, they are not sticklers for the accuracy of what they represent on paper "Or how that comports with reality, standard building documentation or local restriction. "The work submitted by their teams must be thoroughly reviewed. "When I look at their drawings, I notice that the sections are not called out on the plan, so it is impossible to gauge where the diagrams are referenced. "The two sections are representing areas where the parking level and park side of the retaining wall are much closer in grade "Than the greatest differential exists. This has the effect of minimizing the impact "Of this new proposed wall to divide the park from the parking that abuts it. "Without having surveying tools at my disposal, I was able to gauge the maximum differential at about three and a half feet. "The sections are at about ten inches and two feet, and so do not address this as the most crucial point. "Next, I do not think that the stone that they are proposing for the retaining wall would look nice. "Currently, looking through the fence that divides the two areas, we see the rogue shoulder, which is not we see the rogue shoulder, which is not as pleasing. I am concerned about how tall this wall will be at the lowest part of the park and how visible the automobiles, in parentheses, or underside of the automobiles will be from the park side. I think we need to address parking where we can. I hope that this parking will be open to all and not just a reward to RH for not being able to successfully implement the plan for parking on the property that was presented to the town of Yountville several years ago and their inability to predict the number of employees that would be necessary to anticipate and implement their, quote, "high-touch" and, quote, "high-level of service." Thank you. And I now have three comments that were just submitted at seven. Pam says she can't access our videos. Seems to be a problem. Pam Reeves, in this age of environmental heating, here, heating, wouldn't it be better to use a permeable surface or at least to add white material to reflect heat? And then Steve Miller, another thought. Since there is a PG&E plan for undergrounding and RH is paying, can we get some charging for EVs with this parking upgrade? Now that concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You've really been busy with public comment today, Michelle. Well done.
I'm tired. I don't ever talk this much.
All right. Well, it's appreciated. Thank you.
No problem.
Joe, your hand is up. Is that just by accident from before?
No, Mayor. I wanted to follow up. I heard from Deputy Director Ferns, and he said PG&E is about 18 months out based on their most current communication with us. And it's around 200 tons of asphalt to answer Councilmember Durham's question on how much asphalt. About 11,000 square feet.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we have all of our public comment in, discussion by the council. And I did note that many of the public comments we just heard relate to Parkerback Advisory Committee issues and general park issues. Some of them were specific to the project we're actually listening to and considering tonight. I'd like to remind council that we are focusing on this project alone tonight. So with that, shall I call on someone or is somebody ready to start the conversation? Okay, let's start then with Councilmember Durham.
So we've looked at, I've looked at plans for quite some time with the ZDRB and with the Town Council now. The information that I've gotten and that I've been able to look at, I mean, clearly states to me what's going to be going in and how this is going to be designed. The Rutherford Stone is used directly across the street. It's going to complement that over here. We added the wood element, so it wasn't so much massing. We're adding the green figs, got rid of all the extra lighting. I think a lot of the discussion this evening had the opportunity of taking the public comment that was received at Parks and Recreation Commission meeting as well as the public comments from tonight and be able to deal with those concerns and be able to answer them this evening so that this project can move forward. As was stated earlier, we directed the town to keep RH on a very strict timeline, and we're currently within that. I think we have allowed a lot of public participation. This process could have gone straight over the desk to the planning director and not been part of this meeting nor been part of the P RAC meeting. We saw the importance and the value of that, and we asked for that, and it happened. So here we are today with the designs that we agreed to participate with RH for public parking, for their employee parking management plan, which they're going to pay for the parking. They're going to pay for the employee parking management plan. And this is the design that we have with all of our input and all of our feedback, including a lot of the community feedback as well. You know, we have a situ- I don't know whether back-end parking is better than front-side parking. I use my backup camera. I, you know, and I Google it and you read reports. We have the town staff, we have the engineers to help guide us in that respect. And also, based on the comments that we've received from the ad hoc committee for over the past two years about parking in this area. So all of those considerations are being taken into account here. We've heard a lot tonight about the lighting, signage, 24-hour park, and that's something that we definitely can speak about in the future. That was a lot of the comments tonight. I, I, we, I've been talking about this for over a year now. We've talked to other business entities to help with this program as well. We have an opportunity with partnering with another business community to get parking out of the neighborhoods and getting a proper employee parking management plan implemented. And altogether, this makes for a very good project at the park.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker.
I think it changes, in my estimation, looking at it and looking at the renderings and everything, it does change the character of the park at the north end of the town. It's the rustic, you know, part of that park where we've had the Yountville days and all that for so long. I think it is going to change the park. And I understand that change is inevitable. I did not support, I still do not support a company that has not been straightforward with us, has not, you know, played by the rules with us. I don't support giving them the opportunity to lease for so many years a piece of our parkland or even though it's just the parking lot. But I think that with the design and when the creeping fig covers it up, it'll look a little better. But I think it's changed the personality of our park in ways that I find sad personally. But, you know, I know that the parking issue is a huge one for many people in our town. So since it has brought them into the fold of being part of the parking plan, I guess that that's the trade-off. But I really don't like it, and I really feel that RH has taken a lot of advantage of the town of Yountville. That's my two cents.
Councilmember Roller.
Hey, I'm unmuted. You know, when I saw the aerial photo of this park, the first thing that kind of came to my mind was, wow, I think it's now complete. And you know me, I love history. I also thought of George Yount. George Yount, back, well, by the 1840s, 175 years ago, set aside this park, we call it. He set aside a cemetery, and he created, you know, six blocks and the southern part of his Mexican land grant was Madison. This he created as our town square. Not long after he set aside the land, there was a church and there was buildings and all sorts of stuff around it. Over the years, you know, I remember doing a lot of oral histories and kind of heard that it was just a bunch of weeds. And at the time, they called them vagrants, whatever, you know, term is. That was one they used back then. And the Yountville Improvement Association came in and decided they were just a grump, a bunch of people before the town was even incorporated, and they wanted to clean it up. So they mowed the grass and they threw away all the whiskey bottles, and this is all oral history from a couple people, you know, I've talked to over the years. So then it kind of turned into our Yountville Park. So, you know, I think that George would probably be okay with that because it's all about community. So now we've got this. I think that we've really listened to so many comments. Some of them, I think they've made this a much better project. Some of the comments, I think, you know, maybe something else would have been better, but I am fine with the final design. I'm also even open at this time to straight-in parking, angled parking, back-end parking. So I'm actually kind of flexible on that design. I think it's a change. We've all seen lots of changes. And I think once we have this project, this will be a benefit not only to the park, but to Yountville as a whole. So those are my comments.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to take a different tact. I'm just going to talk about the design because I feel like that's what we're here about this evening. So it doesn't mean I don't have comments on what everybody has said before me, but I'm just going to try to stay this course. On the design, I am not in favor of the back-end parking. I do believe that at least 50% of the compact parking should be on RH's side since they ended up with more parking spaces than the town did. I frankly think they should take more than 50% of the compact spaces. I do like Mr. Knight's idea of adding some kind of bulb out or some sort of landscaping on the parking side, particularly if we're narrowing the lanes. That should give a little bit of room to put some landscaping on the street side of the fence. I do take to heart Mr. Miller's comments on the height of the fence, which is what I was trying to say is when I stood there and I tried to look across the horizon of where the grade would be, it seemed to me the fence would have to be taller than six feet. And so I would like for it to be, my comments are, if it's going to be taller than six foot one inch, it's a non-starter for me to begin to approve it right now. I also have some concerns about the massing of the fence. I like the stone. It's fine. I like the idea of the fur. I like the mixed media. I like the creeping fig. I think three inches across is pretty massive. Maybe they have to do that. Maybe they don't. I think if there's going to be creeping fig on it, then I think there could be some airspace until the fig grows in so that we don't feel so confined in there. So, you know, apart from the overall theory of it, those are my comments on the design presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So my comments, also, I'm going to stick to the project at hand. We're not adding any additional lighting. We are improving, I think, significantly. And I'm sorry, I cannot agree with anybody who thinks the current condition is better than what we're talking about. That is a severely sloped gravel area that is dangerous. It is still used by people. We've all seen it when we've had Yountville days, when we've had other events, community, resident events. This is not just about renting the park. People parking there, and the vehicles are at such a steep angle, you can't even get out or get in. And it's dangerous, and people still do it. And when somebody falls down, who gets sued? The town does. Not the residents. The town does. And so we have to make that a safer area regardless of this settlement agreement with a local business. We've talked about it. We would have had to fund the entire project, which is why we haven't done it yet. We did a very similar thing at the south end of town with a completely different local business, negotiating to have a unusable dirt, broken glass, weed yard turned into a functioning parking lot. And were it not for the sale of that business, we were on the verge of having an actual developed, safe parking lot down at the south end of town by the Catholic Church. We now have a similar opportunity here. I'm not going to revisit the history of what got us here because we have vetted that significantly in over many, many months. And the town and the residents of this town are getting significant improvements on this side of the park. We are getting, and I also, I will continue to disagree with those who try to claim the town was going to do this anyway, and why don't we just do it ourselves? We were not going to underground these utilities anytime soon. That is a significant cost, and we do not have those resources, or else it would have been done. It could have been done probably back in the early 90s or the 2000s when costs of that kind of construction were significantly lower. But they weren't. And it used to be that the aesthetic of the park in its natural habitat, its natural presence was okay. And over decades, it has gotten run down. And when we improved the picnic area to make it actually safe for people to get through the heavy, heavy, deep gravel that was non-compliant, we saw it again every Yountville days. People had a hard time getting through that. And we made improvements, and we were criticized for changing what used to be there. And I'm hearing the same thing in large part from the same people, that we have made significant accommodations in this project to satisfy, even in some elements that I don't agree with. We have gone out of our way to find more creative options for back-end parking to make sure that we can discourage as much as possible people using other public streets that surround a public park, and we've tried to accommodate. So we're being, I think, quite reasonable. I think the aesthetic is beautiful. I think we are controlling this entire project except for the fact that another party, a third party, is paying for it. And so we are getting all these benefits. I'd be fine if all the compact spaces were on the RH side. I frankly don't care because I don't think people respect compact spaces anyway. But sure, let's say we want to have the slightly smaller spaces on the employee-preferred parking side. I have no problem with that. I'm open to the back-end parking. I'm sorry, if you're having a hard time backing up into a parking space, then maybe somebody else should be driving. Because now with technology and cameras, we still see it on parallel parking on all of our streets along, you know, all the way down Washington Street. If somebody has a hard time parking, it doesn't matter if it's parallel or angled. This is a creative way to find additional space and to redirect parking down the main street. I do not support a speed bump at all. We will then just hear complaints about the bumping sound that is caused by speed bumps. We heard that conversation on Yountville Crossroad when we put in speed buttons that are still there. But people that live close by have to hear the ramble sound of vehicles going over that. I will not support putting a speed bump in. If there was space to put in a bulb out, I don't see there being a speeding issue there, to be honest. Yes, some people coming south on Washington do speed. But guess what? A lot of those folks live here. It's not just employees. So I think with behavior, with a new condition there, I like the idea of narrowing the striping. I think that is a successful traffic mitigation that has very little expense and is very simple and doesn't change the overall appearance. I think that steep slope is a hazard. It needs to change. We have an opportunity for, uh, that to change, to get safe parking, to, uh, provide more parking that is a distance away from the residents. So the folks are less impacted when people come to use our public park. And I think that, uh, changing some of those trees out, uh, makes sense. A couple of those look severely, uh, slanted, probably at risk of failure. Uh, the one tree already did fail, uh, had a tree, the, the top lopped off. Uh, that's not going to be a healthy condition going forward. I think we've been smart about that. So, uh, I think this is a project that should move forward immediately. Uh, it's long overdue to improve that, that part of, uh, the, the, uh, stretch of Washington Street along that stretch of the park. So I can support it. And it's, uh, to me, it's not about, um, ruining the, the aesthetic of the park. We have done nothing but improve the appearance, the functionality, the comfort, uh, of that park and many other parks throughout town. I think this is another step in the right direction. So, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion if there is one. Michelle, are you, you're not motioning, I don't think.
I'm not motioning. Um, I received a clarification comment from Stephen Miller. Uh, he wanted me to clarify that he does think that the stone that they are proposing for the retaining wall would look nice. He heard it differently and I just wanted to present that clarification or correction.
Thanks. Normally wouldn't take public comment during council comments, but now we have. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to be had on this item?
It's just feedback in, isn't it? There was no, there was no.
Oh, that's true. Do we need formal action? Do we need formal action, Steve?
What we're looking for, I, I think I'm going to say if you're all ready to take a motion to accept it, move on, then that would be helpful for closure. If there is something specific, I, I mean, we would like some affirmation. Um, I've heard mixed comments from the council on the backend, um, versus front end. As Casey has identified, really it's a, it's not going to fundamentally change the project. It, it flips the design a little bit, but I mean, we, we, to me, that's important. Um, I do think if it's helpful to bring closure, you know, a motion could be helpful or something specific on the direction.
Okay, so if, if the angle changes and people going north pulls straight into the angled parking, you know what we are creating is an illegal U-turn at the northwest corner of the park on Washington. But that, that will be the outcome. Uh, it probably won't be people driving, uh, to the right and going all the, the long way around the park because that's further distance. But we will be creating an illegal U-turn area at the north end. We are creating it by, uh, having people come out of the angled parking lot and crossing, uh, over. But it's, if it's not a double, is it a double yellow line there, Joe and Steve on Washington?
I don't think so. I don't, I, I'm not sure, Mayor, but we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we get it right when we restripe it.
I know in the, uh, rendering it was double. I've never seen that there, but if it's a single line, people pulling out of that can easily turn left legally, uh, and go south. But, um, knowing human nature, though that will be come a roundabout, a de facto roundabout at the northwest corner. And I don't think that's a very safe condition. I support the project as it's presented.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Muller, you had a concern or an openness to, uh, changing the backend parking?
I have, there's no specific changes that I am looking forward to tonight either. I, uh, would prefer a hundred percent as presented. And, uh, the, I, I also do like the narrowing the, the lanes with the striping, but, uh, that can be added later too. That's, uh, something that the, the town would do, but you know, so I, I say as is right now is fine.
Yeah, I think, uh, and we just saw it popped up on the screen. I don't know if that was a photograph or a rendering, but, um.
That was a photo, Mayor.
So if it's a W O line there, it, it would be illegal to turn left across that to go south. So we need to determine if narrowing the lanes impacts the double yellow. And is that required to be there for any reason?
Uh, I, I, I'll have to check. I don't think it's required. And, and if we have the, uh, angled parking, then we'll restripe that to make it match the California Muti, uh, rules, Mayor.
Councilmember Muller, I don't know if you finished or if I interrupted you about this striping.
Uh, no, I'm, uh, well, I guess one more question on the, on the striping is, is, is that going to occur at the end of the parking lot? Do you need to make that decision now? Is it going to be impacted by undergrounding? When, are you going to have to reasphalt and then?
No, it, it would not be impacted by the undergrounding because what they'll do with the undergrounding is the conduit will be installed now. They'll, and then they'll pave over and that will be installed in the parking area. And then what I would think is, you know, if a, you know, probably for the project, the narrowing and the restriping makes sense to include as the project. But it's a simple thing to do. Our, our public works team can design that. Casey can, you know, and will put that as part of a project. That way we do, you know, you have heard the comments from some of the, the folks that trying to do something to calm the traffic and.
Yes. And I, I think it's a.
I think that works.
It makes, it makes sense during the project, council member.
Okay, so I am, um, fine with the, the project as is and, uh, and the striping to, as a traffic calming measure.
The, the striping, the narrowing of the lanes.
Correct.
And then we just need to con- confirm about the, the double yellow. If that's a requirement, then that does impact, I mean, if you, it can still be backend parking, but then the backend parking to do it legally would have to go up to the.
Right. We can redo that. I, I think single, single striping is probably legitimately all right.
We'll, we'll, we'll put a skip in there or, or make it right, Mayor.
I don't know what a skip is.
Uh, the dash line.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
Why don't you just call it a dash line?
Yeah, they, they cost more when it's a skip.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Dornbecker, any, uh, additional thoughts?
Uh, no, I, in all honesty, I can't support this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Durham?
I mean, the whole reason we did backend parking, I, it's six of one, a half a dozen of the other. Uh, in my opinion, and I need to defer to the engineers and the professionals and I, I just need to, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Dorman, any last comments?
No further comments, thank you.
So it sounds like, uh, there are at least three, uh, of us that are supporting moving forward with this design as presented. There are additional concerns. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was waiting for the motion to actually vote, but yes, I would not be able to support. I am not able to support it as presented, just to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, did you want us to formalize this into a motion?
At this point, yes.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion, either Councilmember Muller or Councilmember Durham?
I will, uh, make a, uh, motion that we move forward with the design as, uh, presented and ask the town to do, um, let's, I have this up here, narrow, narrow the lanes be with the use of striping. Is that the right word? Okay, got that.
Skip striping.
Strips, skip.
Strips, strips.
Skip striping? I can't do that together. It's too late. Anyway, uh, that's my motion.
Thank you. And do we need to define the length of the street that would be striped as this project or Joe?
It'll go from.
Steve, go ahead.
It'll go from the crosswalk to the intersection up at the cemetery.
Okay. So we have a motion to that effect. Uh, Councilmember Durham, do you second that?
I second.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, are you clear on the motion with the addition of the striping, the, the street narrowing, striping and the distance? Okay. Uh, could you, uh, have a roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Thank you. Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
No.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
No.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. The passage, uh, three to two and we will move forward. So we may need to hear progress reports before our next, uh, scheduled meeting. We'll be getting those by email, I presume. Uh, and then if anything develops, uh, keep us posted.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to move on now to, uh, the next item. Napa County Urgency Enforcement Ordinance, Discussion and Possible Direction Regarding Urgency Enforcement Ordinance of Napa County Board of Supervisors That Has Declared Violations of Orders of the State or County Health Officer to be Unlawful and a Public Nuisance in Authorizing the Issuance of Administrative Citations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, one thing to note about the agenda materials this evening, there's a copy of the ordinance included that's unsigned and unnumbered. That was the copy that the county provided to the town and is available on the county's website. We have since, as of this morning, received a signed copy from the county. Uh, the town clerk has a copy of that. So if anyone's interested in seeing it, it is the same version that's included in the agenda packet. So all of the language is the same. The staff report's unchanged by that. Uh, but there is a signed copy now with, um, the town clerk, should anyone or a member of the public want a copy of that. So I'll go over the major provisions of the ordinance and what it does and what it means for the town. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. So July fourteenth, the county adopted an urgency ordinance. Similarly to the town, they have the ability to adopt urgency ordinances, takes effect immediately as this one did. And what it did is, um, adopted an ordinance that applied within the county limits and within the city and town limits. So it applies within the town of Yountville, just as it does in the unincorporated area. That's not typically the case for county ordinances. So typically when the county adopts an ordinance, it only applies in the unincorporated area. And then the town adopts its own ordinances within town limits. In this case, the ordinance applies within the town limits by its terms. There's a provision of the Emergency Services Act that allows the county, uh, and the town to adopt emergency rules and regulations. And there's authority in state law, an opinion of the attorney general, uh, that says when the county does that, it applies within the town limits as well. And so many counties have done this, either through an ordinance in one way or another, or through an, an order adopting rules and regulations, not as an ordinance. Napa County has decided to do this as an ordinance and that's what was adopted and, and is provided in the agenda packet this evening. So the ordinance adopts public health orders of the state, um, health officer and of the county health officer, and makes them the quote unquote law of the county. So any provision of those health orders that has a mandatory requirement, you're required to wear a mask, for example, or comply with the state health orders regarding masks. Those are now mandatory requirements within the county of Napa. That becomes a requirement under this ordinance. Automatically upon issuance, um, the ordinance also applies to future emergencies. So while this, uh, is currently the emergency regarding COVID-19 and the emergency we're in, it will apply to future emergencies and future health orders that are, um, adopted underneath those emergencies. So it allows for violations of those health orders. It holds quote unquote responsible parties responsible for those violations. This is similar to the town's administrative enforcement ordinance. The town also has responsible parties that are responsible for violations of its own code. And that includes individuals and entities and their agents. And it's listed there in the staff report for you. So it's a broad swath of folks who are responsible for, cause these violations of the health orders. In terms of who can enforce the ordinance, it includes a list of mostly county officers, but it also includes town code enforcement offers, officers and anyone else, um, designated by the town. And it also includes the county sheriff. The ordinance, uh, allows for fines of 25 to 500 for quote unquote non-commercial violations and for 200 to $5,000 per violation for commercial violations. The ordinance doesn't define those terms. So, um, under rules of statutory construction, the common meanings will apply. Commercial means engaged in commerce, intended to make a profit. So when a violation has to do with commerce or making a profit, the higher fine will apply. For everything else, the lower fine will apply. It's, follows a similar procedure in the town's ordinance. You issue notice of violation. Um, there's a period, a cure and correct period of, of two days under the ordinance, but that doesn't need to be applied if it's a serious, uh, threat, if it's a serious need to issue it, or if the enforcement officer decides that the cure and correct period will be futile or unnecessary. And then all penalty, penalties are payable to the local agency that issues the citation, but appeals of the citation go to the county. So that creates a slightly different procedure than what for other code violations that occur in town. So that is a broad overview. I'm happy to answer any questions or go into more detail. There's not any action required to the town council this evening. This ordinance is already in effect. It applies in the town. The county can also enforce it within town limits and there's really no action required. So this is an FYI and if there is any specific questions or, uh, directions from the council, we're happy to take it.
Thanks very much, Gary. Just a, a couple of things further. Steve and I are on calls at least every Monday, Wednesday and Friday with, uh, county officials and officials from all the jurisdictions. And there was a lot of talk about having uniformity with this ordinance. But also the county has made it clear that, uh, compliance, um, management, uh, is the responsibility of each jurisdiction. So it's, again, it's important that we, uh, are kind of unified in this. Uh, I, I don't know that there has been a commercial, uh, fine levied yet. Uh, I don't know if there's been a, a non-commercial fine levied yet, but there, there has been an effort to have consistency in enforcement, whether that be our own, uh, town staff, law enforcement, um, public health officials, uh, similar to how we handle whether it be restaurants, uh, and their health, uh, code requirements, for example, things like that. So, um, it has been in effect already. The, uh, the county has asked all the jurisdictions to, um, agree. Uh, this tends to happen. Each time it seems to have happened with either tenant protection or this ordinance, it happens on the Wednesday call right after we've met. And so it's taken us a while to get to it so that we can all kind of formalize our, our support for it. So that's where we're at tonight. Any questions from council? Uh, I think Councilmember Dornbecker is reaching for her mute button, so go ahead.
Yes, please. So I just wanted to find out, so if, uh, according to this, if the county health officer, um, states that everyone must wear a mask, um, outside and someone in Yountville does not, that is, that means that they can be held accountable for that. Is that correct?
Yes. And the county health order already applied within the town limits. This just creates an enforcement mechanism, a penalty that can be issued.
Thank you.
But I think specifically to your question, Councilmember Dornbecker, um, I brought up, uh, it's been several months now about mandatory mask wearing in public. And there was not support to do that when I brought that up, um, at the county level. And so again, in the interest of consistency, it certainly would be confusing and probably unfair to expect one jurisdiction having, uh, that type of more stringent rule and then enforcement mechanism like this ordinance over the others. So we have been trying to, uh, find a, um, kind of a negotiated position on something like mandatory face coverings. They're certainly encouraged by everyone in all jurisdictions. It's just the question of the mandatory, certainly they're mandatory, uh, in a lot of areas going into all businesses, for example, but just not out in public. Some folks would like that, some are hesitant to get there. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, so currently who is or are our enforcement officers and how is that determined or changed?
Under the Yountville Municipal Code, a code enforcement officer is a town employee designated by the town manager. The ordinance allows anyone else designated by the town to enforce the ordinance. And so there are current procedures in the Yountville Municipal Code for designating code enforcement officers, and that's the town manager.
And in this particular case, this activity is being coordinated by myself and the planning department. So we are communicating and we're taking a very traditional. So we are communicating and we're taking a very traditional, classic code enforcement approach to these issues. We work on the education first approach. With regard to the COVID nineteen compliance, we also report complaints that have come in and track and communicate to the county. Um, and then we have the ability to determine if uh, a further notice of violation is appropriate or not. Um, we also are, I want to be really clear, our deputies will document field conditions. And you know, an incident report and body camera, they will provide that information to us and then we will um, be the ones um, taking any cor- corrective or necessary action. Um, so far, I'm pleased to report that while we have a, work with a couple entities a little bit more. At this point, we are finding our businesses are, are generally compliant. We do occasionally get complaints that somebody thinks there should be a cop on the corner writing face mask tickets and that, that's just, you know, um, we, we have to be really cautious of, of that approach. I think you've seen us continue to work on our education awareness uh, doing that. But um, there, there is a fine line, much like a speeding ticket type situation with where that, a mask citation. But we do have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
There's also a hotline that the county set up for complaints. I know that um, in our regular calls, we get updates about that uh, to hear the types of activity because there, there's certainly a significant amount of activity that's happening in the residential uh, environment, not the commercial environment. And uh, it's very challenging to uh, enforce a one-time large party of extended family members coming together, their private residence, that doesn't repeat. Uh, maybe there are people that complain about the noise of the, or the gathering. And um, then the question is also, uh, are we comfortable with our town staff uh, being asked to respond to that situation, or are we relying on law enforcement? Uh, that's been a part of the conversation as well as how to enforce uh, the ordinance and uh, whose responsibility, not just jurisdictionally, but uh, whether it's Sandra or Steve or it needs to be a deputy for us, for example. Any other questions from council? This really is uh, basically informational, I think. I don't know that there's anything that we're being asked to change or really comment on to the county. Uh, they have extended um, the ordinance, uh, they were, they've also extended the other ordinance uh, related to tenant protection. And so these are fairly um, fluid uh, conditions that are, are changing. We don't get in front of them as timely as we would like, especially when we've been having only one scheduled meeting a month. So uh, there may be another instance of something like this before our, our September meeting and we'll keep everyone updated. Gary, did you have anything further?
Oh, that's all I had.
Thanks, Michelle.
I was just going to say, we don't have any public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. That's good. You're, you're out of breath anyway, right? Um, okay, so that's all we need for that item. Uh, I think you, you hear from the comments that we basically are supporting continuing to go along with the county's ordinance. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to staff informational reports now. Uh, summer camp update is first, we have a long-awaited PowerPoint presentation from, I think, somebody who's been masterfully uh, handling all of the Zoom activity here to support Michelle and especially Samantha.
Yeah, lots of power.
And you're already unmuted. That's, that's professional right there.
I'm ready to go. Um, so I, I appreciate you hearing me. I know it's a late hour, so this will be fairly brief, but I did want to share with you some information about our summer this summer with Camp Wyville. Um, in my twenty-three years in Parks and Recreation, um, which started in summer camps. Uh, this has been by far the most challenging summer um, of my career. Um, and without the amazing staff and team and the support, of course, of, of uh, Steve and the town council, um, we were able to to get this going this summer under a lot of um, very um, intimidating regulations and, and, and things that we've had to pivot to do. Um, so some of the changes that we made with Camp Wyville, as you may recall from some of the statistics I've shared in the past, we, we typically would have between sixty-five and seventy kids a week in Camp Wyville um, during our most successful summers. Um, this summer due to um, COVID nineteen, we had to make a lot of different changes in order to just get our doors open. Um, and most of those changes came through um, the state, the state of California, the, the Centers for Disease Control. Um, and they actually for day camp, uh, guidance specifically didn't even come out until the last week of May, uh, which we started camp on June ninth. Um, but what we did in preparation was we just followed the guidance that had already come out for childcare, um, so that we kind of knew what we were looking at. Um, so those changes included uh, group sizes of ten. Uh, those groups had to be consistent in, in the attendance and then also the staff that were assigned to them. Um, and that's of course to just limit the potential exposure if we did have a case, um, that we knew that it would be limited to that small group of consistent children and staff. Um, each group had to have their own designated indoor space, um, that was just theirs and also their own designated restroom. Um, we also implemented some new policies and procedures with uh, for our staff as well as our campers that had to would travel. Um, so if campers or staff traveled um, outside of California, um, or to areas that had a high incident rate of new COVID cases, um, we had a fourteen-day um, mandatory uh, exposure isolation where they couldn't come to the program or they couldn't work. Um, we also implemented a face covering. So at first, the guidance from the state was that children in childcare settings did not have to wear face coverings. Um, that quickly changed and we pivoted by week two to where they had to wear face coverings anytime they were inside. Um, or when they were outside and not able to social distance. Um, although, you know, still to now week nine, we hear ourselves saying a lot, you know, pull up your mask, pull up your mask. Uh, kids are super resilient and they did a, a very good job. Um, and then again, like those new policies and procedures, you know, one of them was that uh, parents were used to kind of dropping into our program and coming a week here, a week there. Um, we had a minimum four weeks, four consistent weeks that you had to sign up for. And again, that was just to keep it consistent so that we had less exposure. Um, we had no field trips this summer, no swimming. Um, we offered at first a priority registration process for people who were essential workers. And like I mentioned, we also had the scheduling limitation. So um, they had to come consistent weeks as well as um, they could only come five days a week or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday. So scheduling was not as flexible as it has been. Um, so I mentioned the use of space, um, each group having to have its own space. Um, we were unfortunately not able to secure any further rooms through Napa Valley Unified School District. Um, they did not um, open their campus to help us accommodate more groups. Um, we did continue to use our rented room onsite, which is actually rented through Napa County Office of Education. It's who owns our portable classroom there at the site. So we had one group there. We also used the community center heritage room, generations room, classroom. And we also use the boardroom as a break room. And then um, in the event that we did have an ill child, that was also our quarantine room, which we never had to use. Um, but one of the benefits, unfortunately, um, but fortunately of us uh, not having a lot of classes and programs and rentals this summer is that we were able to move the camp to the community center. So it helped us to be able to open those doors. Um, we spent a whole lot of time outside. Um, there, we have beautiful spaces here to be outside in Yountville and we fully utilize them. So the more time we were outside, the more the kids, um, the less the kids had to wear their masks and it's just overall healthier uh, for kids to be outside and moving. Um, so you see us here in Yountville Park and out at the lawn at the community center. Um, a blacktop at the school, um, and we also worked in the school garden this summer. So overall success-wise, I mean, we ran a lot of numbers in the beginning. This is one program where we really um, attempt to recover all of our costs. Um, the town, you know, is not, should be not subsidizing this type of a program. Although we saw a drop in registration, our revenue um, was not as far down as, as we anticipated. Um, we continued to serve, we serve a lot of non-residents in this program, but we did serve thirty residents. Um, several families that really looked up to us for full-time childcare this summer, um, which we were able to provide. Uh, but most of all, everyone was safe. Um, we are finishing the summer this week. It's our last week. We have not had any um, confirmed cases of COVID. We've not even had a sick child have to go home, um, which is huge. And that's really thanks to our team. Um, we did temperature checks every day and just had a really strong team of staff this summer. It took us, we had thirteen of our um, staff, most of uh, twelve of the thirteen were returning with Garrett leading that charge and everybody really just stepped up um, and helped us keep everybody safe and healthy. So um, that's kind of just the brief overview. I just, um, I'm really proud of what we were able to provide. And um, unlike the Boys and Girls Club, they didn't get going till the end of June. The City of Napa's summer camp didn't get going in, until July. Um, I think we really were prepared and ready um, and spent a lot of time preparing and getting ready uh, to open our doors and you know, we have had so many just amazing and really heartwarming comments from families that you know, we helped their kids have some sort of normalcy, some of them who were really, really struggling um, during the lockdown and, you know, not being able to go to school or have really any social outlet. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, and just again, want to thanks, uh, thank you for all your support in making that happen.
Thank you. It was also always uh, pretty fun and charming to see the, the groups as they would be holding their their loops, the loop on the rope, uh, to keep their distance and keep together. Yeah, that was pretty fun. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Dornbecker.
I just want to thank Sam and um, once again, deep accolades, your, your park and rec department under your you know, guidance is just so spectacular. Thank you very much. And I'm so impressed that you were able to come up with the amount of income that you did for the, for the parks and rec department. But I, I also saw the kids out there having so much fun all the time. And I saw Harrison um, as one of your kids who were, you know, working there. It's just what a great, a great park and rec department we have. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Yeah, we have actually three old ex campers who are, um, worked this summer as camp counselors. So it was really exciting. Yeah.
Great, great use of the spaces that we did have available. It was very fortunate that we had a good diverse uh, mix of outdoor spaces to use once the indoor was uh, shut down. I know that that's part of the challenge for some of the other uh, communities, but you really maximized uh, what we had available. So and like you said, top priority is uh, avoiding any, any uh, health issues. That's great.
Well, maybe next year Hudson will join the uh, the group there, Sandra.
Yep, we're already talking about it.
Well, Samantha, thank you. And for all of us, please pass on our great uh, uh, appreciation and such wonderful respect for all the commitment that our, our young uh, helpers and, and you and the whole, the whole official team uh, put toward uh, making sure the kids have really uh, special times even in the challenging environment.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have one more uh, report. We have Celia, as usual, patiently waiting uh, through, let's see, only I can't even add it up right now. It's something like five and a half hours. Uh, but we have a monthly, we actually have
Exactly how long it's been.
Yeah, we have a, we have a finance report. We have finances. That's worth talking about. Go ahead, Celia.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's hard to, you know, see Director Holland's lovely presentation and then transition to some boring numbers, but they are important numbers and we do have some positive news. So that's good. Uh, so this informational report accompanies the June monthly financial report that was included on tonight's consent calendar. Uh, and it allows for a bit more dialogue uh, regarding the numbers that you see in that report and provides an opportunity to address any questions you may have. So this will be particularly important as we proceed through the current fiscal year and are closely monitoring town revenues and expenditures as we manage the fiscal effect, effects of COVID. So this is a preliminary report for June. Um, as said in the staff report, we're still processing the closing of fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, you'll probably all recall that at the time of building the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget back in May, we lowered the amount of TOT and sales tax that we uh, anticipated collecting for fiscal year nineteen twenty. Uh, so the highlight of this report really is that the general fund will actually end fiscal year nineteen twenty with more revenue than estimated. Um, also departments within the general fund were able to generate some savings by reducing expenditures. Um, so what the combination of these two things mean is that we will need to use less revenue stabilization reserve funds uh, at the end of the year than we initially thought. Um, so that's, that's, that's really good news. Um, again, we'll have more concrete information regarding the end of the fiscal year after the audit is complete in September and we finalize the closing of fiscal year nineteen twenty. So are there any questions about the report that I can address?
Any questions from the council? Uh, I've said it before, I'll say it again, uh, such a challenging year. Uh, almost impossible to forecast anything. And thankfully, we have some positive news, uh, gives you a little bit of flexibility, not a lot. But um, we also know that um, as it sounds like we're going to have a better-than-dire close, uh, we're still going to be challenged going into the next uh, fiscal cycle. So hold on.
Yeah, let's hope for more positive news in the future.
Definitely. Uh, any other uh, questions or comments from council? Yeah, again, this is kind of like our budget. When we come to a, a year close and you know, get to tightly wrap things up and especially with some positive news. It, it feels kind of uh, underwhelming, but it's taken months of uh, hard work and, and some crazy mathematics and um, you've done all of that this year to get us here where we can kind of exhale a little bit for this fiscal and get ready for the next one. So thank you again very much for all that hard work.
Thank you.
And for sitting for five and a half. What was it, Councilor Durham? Five and a half?
Five forty-five.
Okay, well, uh, if we have any critical uh, council meeting reports, comments, um, now would be the time. Um, I, I don't think there's anything that was really that noteworthy. Uh, coming out of flood control, uh, I don't know that we have, I don't think we have a Napa County Transportation Authority uh, meeting report either. Upper Valley Waste Management, anything uh, critical?
Uh, no, we're not meeting till August seventeenth, I think, correct.
Or LAFCO? Any developments?
Just, we're wrapping up our MSR and the countywide water wastewater with the comments, and we hope to finalize it at October sixth.
All right. I'll very quickly um, leave California cities. Uh, we are um, we have a Support Local Recovery Coalition campaign happening right now. It's, it's a statewide attempt to get local funding. Uh, flexible and direct funding for COVID relief uh, expenses as well as economic shortfalls. Uh, the federal government has not been uh, showing any interest in supporting local government lately, uh, but we are uh, working with our National League of Cities uh, partners uh, and really trying to put some uh, pressure on both the state level, but also especially the federal level to uh, get support locally. Uh, the annual league conference will be virtual. It will still be happening October seventh through the ninth. Uh, so we will still be looking to register and participate online. Uh, there'll still be plenty of opportunities to uh, get some good quality education and training there. Also, I've been pushing um, not only at the county level, but with the state Office of Emergency Services. We have some local residents that have expressed uh, a willingness to volunteer as contact tracers. The state has what they call California Connected, which is a virtual training. The state has what they call California Connected, which is a virtual training academy. And we're continuing to work toward getting more contact tracers for COVID-19 positive case follow-ups. That's one of the, I think, the personnel that is really challenged to redirect county staff to provide that service. So we're looking to see if we have folks that could help fill in with minimal training in short order. Other council or the countywide tenant protection ordinance has been extended. There's still an effort to extend it beyond just rental assistance, but also try to find some landlord protection through additional rental assistance. I'll keep you posted on those. We, we've been meeting every Thursday afternoon by Zoom. Countywide Climate Action Committee did meet about a week ago. We had presentations from the Sonoma Regional Climate Protection Agency and the Marin, Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. And we're taking some of those best practices and looking to use those to create our structure in our kind of mission statement and area of focus for the, the Napa County Climate Action Committee. That's all I have on meeting reports. Any last reports or comments from council? Steve, you're not council. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Steve.
I did want to share that Celia and I, we had to do a little double checking, but we received a whopping $8,333 from the state of California, which is our first allocation towards our $50,000 of CARESAC money.
It's better than not. Yes. Also, Steve, maybe very quick, 30 seconds on the fact that the Napa Unified School District avoided going into a status that was going to cost us as a county a significant amount of federal or state dollars?
Well, the, there's an excess ERAP conversation that is still gonna be more broadly discussed. There are five principally Northern California high property tax-based counties, but you're talking about excess ERAP. And the situation here was that potentially the state wasn't going to, was how do I wanna phrase this? The excess ERAP is a challenging conversation, but that the state wasn't, was going to keep it and it would divert about 24 million from Napa County all taxing jurisdictions. So it was money that has historically been staying in the county. So with the school district staying where it's at in terms of its population status as basic aid, excess ERAP will continue this year. And the current delegation that we're talking Marin, San Mateo, San Francisco, Napa County, they're working with state officials to try to resolve and better understand the concerns that the state has with regarding excess ERAP, so that that issue doesn't get thrown on us at the last minute. Where it really created quite a potential challenge on top of the COVID-19 challenge for cities. When we were, we would have lost a couple hundred thousand, the city of Napa was looking at 20 million and the county, a large number as well.
It was, it was an example of something that was really behind the scenes happening that was gonna have a, a kind of a catastrophic financial impact on
It is, and it goes back
At the last, at the end of the budget season as well.
And it goes back to the state grabbed money 20-some years ago when it created the ex, the educational fund and moved things around. And now they were having challenges with the full implementation of it.
So the next time you have a chance to say hello to Senator Dodd and Assemblymember Agriar Curry, they both fought really hard with some of their colleagues to make sure the state didn't hold back that funding at the last minute. So just wanted to make that note also. I do think that takes care of our business for this evening. We have no closed session. So we will be adjourning to our next meeting, which is scheduled to be a regular meeting at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 1st.
Let me just, it may not, it will be on September. It'll be a 6:00 PM meeting if there's an ordinance implementation final. So let's, I'll make sure that we communicate that appropriately as we get closer to whether it's a 3 o'clock or a 6 o'clock start.
Once the agenda comes out, we will have that time nailed down for sure. So with that, everyone stay safe and healthy. Have a great rest of August. And we'll see you around town, but physically distanced and behind masks. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thanks all. Good night.